Good evening. If I can please have your attention. Oh, Councilwoman Mims is here, great. I was getting ready to say that we were waiting for another council member to arrive so we can begin the meeting. So as soon as she gets settled, Madam Clerk will begin the meeting.
Yes, Madam President. Councilwoman Cotton is here too. Councilwoman Cotton is right there. So we have six. We're good. We're good. When you're ready.
And I was just, I wanted Councilwoman Mims to get settled first.
Okay.
Actually, before you start, Madam BA?
Javier. 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 Joan.
Hey, Sonya. Sorry. Oh, should I give it to Joe Franco or just put it like?
No, give it to Joan. She'll hand them out when you get time for it. Yeah, just leave them in our chair. That's what they can do?
No, it's something else that Joe Franco's doing.
Good evening, everyone. On behalf of the Patterson Municipal Council, I welcome all of you to the regular meeting of this municipal council on Wednesday, July 21st, 2021. The meeting is now called to order. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, Madam President. Roll call for municipal council regular meeting, July 21st, 2021, at 7:00 PM. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb, Councilwoman Cotton.
Here.
Councilwoman Jackson, Councilwoman Kalik.
Present.
Councilwoman Mendez.
Good evening, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Mims.
I'm here, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Rivera, Councilwoman Velez.
Welcome to your house. My vote is yes.
Madam President.
Present.
Thank you. Madam President and Honorable Councilmember, this evening we have with us to render the prayer Bishop Alejandro Benjamin. He's the congregation rock of salvation located at Summer and Park Avenue. He will render the prayer. And Constable Daniel Vergara, Constable Delroy Clark, Constable Joshua Cruz, and Constable Jose Bermudez will lead us in the flag salute. At this time, I ask everyone, please rise for the prayer. Thank you.
Yes.
Can you please close that door? Thank you.
Inviting God to this chamber represented to me a very important event. I'm familiar with this chamber, but tonight I am very humble to be asked as a pastor and bishop of a church to come and invoke in the name of God with the respect of all the religious organizations represented in this chamber, with a God that loves us all. His name is Yahweh, his name is Allah, his name is Jesus, their heavenly Father. Gathering in your name, we ask for guidance, blessings, understanding, believing that he is God, that he is greater than us, is greater than our intelligence, greater than our degrees, greater than our power. Without him, we are not good in this planet. We pray for the city of Patterson, our lovely city, and all the people who guide them, the mayor, the city council, the people who have business in this city. Because, Father, if you don't guide us and you don't see us, we will not be successful. So we pray that you will be with us tonight. In your holy name, we pray. Hallelujah. Amen. You may be seated. Thank you, Councilman.
Please remain standing.
The constable could come toward the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We will now take a moment, a moment of silence for our troops as well as those who have lost loved ones. Thank you, you may have a seat. Madam Clerk, can you please read the statement of compliance?
Yes, Madam President. Statement of compliance with the Open Public Meetings Law 2021 to 2022, meeting date, July 21st, 2021, time, 7:00 PM. Adequate notice of this meeting was compiled and disseminated in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Law in the following manner. One, the annual notice of regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council was compiled for the year 2021 to 2022, Honorable July 1st, 2021. Two, a schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2021 to 2022 was duly transmitted, Honorable July 1st, 2021. Two, the North Jersey Herald News, the Record, the Arabic Voice, Italian Voice, Persei County Pulse, Dominican News, Criscator International, Ellis Special, the Patterson Press, the City Post News, and Tap Inter-Patterson, in addition to any other publication duly requesting such notices. Three, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2021 to 2022 was prominently posted in lobby of City Hall, first floor, in the place reserved for the announcements of this type. Four, the schedule of the regular meetings and workshop sessions of the municipal council for the year 2021 to 2022 was duly filed with the municipal clerk. Five, a copy of the schedule of regular meetings of the municipal council was mailed to any person who requested and paid the fee authorized by the Open Public Records Act. Madam President.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. Right before we begin it, I know that we have to take action on the first item on the agenda. I want to clarify something. Today's meeting was changed after the clerk polled the council. There was a request. Councilwoman Kalik, would you like to say?
Sure, sure. I would like to thank our council president and the council colleague for changing our regular meeting from yesterday to today due to Islamic holidays. I, as a, as a, I believe in the faith of Islam. I appreciate this good gesture, and thank you, Council President and my council colleague.
Thank you very much. And so I just wanted to clarify, there's been quite a few comments made, and I don't want anyone to get any misunderstanding. As a Christian woman, I was raised, okay, that we respect all faiths. In this city of Patterson, as I've said in the past, we are a melting pot, and my colleagues, a few of them did request, and Madam Clerk, I want to thank you, because it is through her that I was able to do this, because she polled the council. We had one member who was on vacation, and she was able to poll. Everyone agreed, so thank you to the colleagues. And she was able to put this notice in. And because of that change, we have to take item number one and vote on it since we changed the date. Okay, so, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Item number one.
Yes, Madam President. Item number one, resolution. Resolution to ratify amendment of the municipal councils 2021 to 2022 annual meeting notice to move the meeting from July 20th regular meeting to July 21st. City Clerk, resolution 21368.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to vote on item number one.
Yes, Madam President. Roll call and item number one for approval. Councilwoman Cotton.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just want to say to my council colleagues, especially to Councilwoman Kalik and to Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb, requesting that we change the date. My goal and my role is that we're here to work together. If a councilperson needs something done, and that goes with all of us, that we supposed to be here to do that for each other. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
And so I totally agree. We are a diverse community with over 72 nationalities. So when Madam Clerk called, I didn't even need to understand why it was being changed. Things happen, and we have to be adaptable to change. So with that being stated, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
Your line first. We compromise ourselves to work together, and we want to set an example from this side to the community and the community to us. So that's a beginning, and I hope that all this year round, we could do the same. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb, we're voting on item number one, that is the change of the date from yesterday's meeting to today's date.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Thank you, Council President. Thank you to the members of the council for making this change, but it's not more about myself and Councilwoman Kalik as Muslims, the entire, our constituents that are living in the city, that practice our faith and celebrate that holiday, cannot, their voices wouldn't have been heard for such an important meeting and issue. So thank you to my colleagues. Madam Clerk, thank you very much for adapting. Real quick on that audible, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Madam President?
My vote is yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number one is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'll entertain a motion for payment of bills.
Council President, I would like to make a motion for approval for payments of bill total of, one second. $5,451,744.91. There is no payments to wait management, also there is no payroll this week.
Shall I second?
Move. Second.
Okay. Moved by Councilwoman Kalik, second by Councilwoman Mendez and Councilwoman Velez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on payment of bills.
Yes, Madam President. Roll call and payment of bills in the amount of $5,451,744.91. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Madam Clerk, I need to rescue myself from this payment of bills, so will you please make that noted?
I will. Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Before I vote, I just want to say that the administration had to be a little bit more detailed when they do these emergency sewer lateral repairs, at least to give the location, so we could pass by there and see if they did a great job, place in the future. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Madam President?
My vote is yes.
The vote is six in favor, two absent. Let the record reflect that Councilwoman Cotton and her partner recuse herself from the payment of bills. Therefore, payment of bills in amount of $5,451,744.91 is hereby adopted. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'll take the consent agenda. Items 13 to 33.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. The items listed under the consent agenda are numbers 13 through 33. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on the consent agenda, items 13 through 33.
Yes, Madam. Roll call on consent agenda items 13 through 33. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Consent, agenda items 13 through 33 is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this time, Madam Clerk, I'm going to take the non-consent agenda. We will now do items 34 through 39.
34.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Item 34.
Yes, Madam. Just give one quick second. 34. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Item number, non-consent, I'm sorry, item number 34. And item number 34 reads, resolution honoring and celebrating the life of Prophet Sadie Lee Miles on her 98th birthday, sponsored by Councilwoman Cotton and co-sponsored by Dr. Lilitha Mims. City Council Resolution 21393.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Cotton, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, for item 34. On item 34.
Before, before we make the roll call, I believe she's 90.
Okay, so there needs to be a correction?
I believe she's 90. I was trying to look for her bio, but I don't see it in front of me. Can we just make sure that it is?
The bio said 98.
Okay, Corporation Council, can we just verify that and just if it's 90 to change it? Can we still vote on it? Okay.
Madam President? If I may, I recall seeing that attachment, and it was 98.
It was 98?
Unless it was a typo.
Okay.
But the bio had 98.
Okay. I thought it was 98.
We'll verify it by the time we're, yes.
Okay.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number 34 for approval. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would just like to say for Sadie Lee Miles, Pastor Prophet, the celebration of her birthday, she's a pastor, she didn't go into preaching until she was around the age of 40, but it's truly an honor. She preaches here in Connecticut, she preached in Connecticut, here and also in the city of Patterson. So with that being said, it's an honor to, to recognize people that do so many, that have done so many good things. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Before I vote, I just want to say that the administration had to be a little bit more detailed when they do these emergency sewer lateral repairs, at least to give the location, so we could pass by there and see if they did a great job, place in the future. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, I'll take the consent agenda.
Sure.
Items 13 to 33.
Yes. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. All matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the council and will be enacted by one motion. The items listed under the consent agenda are numbers 13 through 33. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by the request of any council member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter.
So move.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on the consent agenda, items 13 through 33.
Yes, Madam. Roll call on consent agenda items 13 through 33. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Consent, agenda items 13 through 33 is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this time, Madam Clerk, I'm going to take the non-consent agenda. We will now do items 34 through 39.
34.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Item 34?
Yes, Madam. Just give one quick second. 34. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Item number, non-consent, I'm sorry, item number 34. And item number 34 reads, resolution honoring and celebrating the life of Prophet Sadie Lee Miles on her 98th birthday, sponsored by Councilwoman Cotton and co-sponsored by Dr. Lilitha Mims. City Council Resolution 21393.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Cotton, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, for item 34. On item 34.
Before, before we make the roll call, I believe she's 90.
Okay, so there needs to be a correction?
I believe she's 90. I was trying to look for her bio, but I don't see it in front of me. Can we just make sure that it is?
The bio said 98.
Okay, Corporation Council, can we just verify that and just if it's 90 to change it? Can we still vote on it? Okay.
Madam President? If I may, I recall seeing that attachment, and it was 98.
It was 98?
Unless it was a typo.
Okay.
But the bio had 98.
Okay. I thought it was 98.
We'll verify it by the time we're, yes.
Okay. So.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number 34 for approval. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would just like to say for Sadie Lee Miles, Pastor Prophet, the celebration of her birthday, she's a pastor, she didn't go into preaching until she was around the age of 40, but it's truly an honor. She preaches here in Connecticut, she preached in Connecticut, here and also in the city of Patterson. So with that being said, it's an honor to, to recognize people that do so many, that have done so many good things. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Mims?
So just for a point of clarification, she is 90, Councilwoman Cotton. You're right, it should be 90 to Corporation Council. To Prophet Sadie Lee Miles, I've known her since I was a baby. I remember them having services across the street from my house. I know many of the members that are doing amazing things in the great city of Patterson, and she's been in ministry for a long time. They'll be celebrating her tomorrow night at the Venetian, which we will be there to help celebrate her. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
90 or 98, she was choosing from the womb of her mother to serve the way she serves. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Madam President?
Bless your life. My vote is yes.
The vote is seven in favor, thank you. Seven in favor, two absent. Item number 34 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 35?
Next item is item number 35. Resolution memorializing Addie Beatrice Bracy, sponsored by Councilwoman Lewis Velez and co-sponsored by Council President Maritza Davila. City Council Resolution 21394.
So move.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item 35.
Roll call on item number 35. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
I just would like to say, Madam Clerk, to Beatrice, you know, we always, always should keep people that have been good to us in our city and memorialize them. So to Councilwoman Velez and Councilwoman, Council President Maritza, you know, isn't, is, people needs to be recognized and always say, we're never going to forget them and all the good things they've done for our city. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number 35 is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item 35?
Next item is item number 35. Resolution memorializing Addie Beatrice Bracy, sponsored by Councilwoman Lewis Velez and co-sponsored by Council President Maritza Davila. City Council Resolution 21394.
So move.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item 35.
Roll call on item number 35. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
I just would like to say, Madam Clerk, to Beatrice, you know, we always, always should keep people that have been good to us in our city and memorialize them. So to Councilwoman Velez and Councilwoman, Council President Maritza, you know, isn't, is, people needs to be recognized and always say, we're never going to forget them and all the good things they've done for our city. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Before I vote, I just want to say that the administration had to be a little bit more detailed when they do these emergency sewer lateral repairs, at least to give the location, so we could pass by there and see if they did a great job, place in the future. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Before I vote, I just want to say that the administration had to be a little bit more detailed when they do these emergency sewer lateral repairs, at least to give the location, so we could pass by there and see if they did a great job, place in the future. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Before I vote, I just want to say that the administration had to be a little bit more detailed when they do these emergency sewer lateral repairs, at least to give the location, so we could pass by there and see if they did a great job, place in the future. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Madam President?
My vote is yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Consent, agenda items 13 through 33 is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this time, Madam Clerk, I'm going to take the non-consent agenda. We will now do items 34 through 39.
34.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Item 34?
Yes, Madam. Just give one quick second. 34. Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Item number, non-consent, I'm sorry, item number 34. And item number 34 reads, resolution honoring and celebrating the life of Prophet Sadie Lee Miles on her 98th birthday, sponsored by Councilwoman Cotton and co-sponsored by Dr. Lilitha Mims. City Council Resolution 21393.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Cotton, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, for item 34. On item 34.
Before, before we make the roll call, I believe she's 90.
Okay, so there needs to be a correction?
I believe she's 90. I was trying to look for her bio, but I don't see it in front of me. Can we just make sure that it is?
The bio said 98.
Okay, Corporation Council, can we just verify that and just if it's 90 to change it? Can we still vote on it? Okay.
Madam President? If I may, I recall seeing that attachment, and it was 98.
It was 98?
Unless it was a typo.
Okay.
But the bio had 98.
Okay. I thought it was 98.
We'll verify it by the time we're, yes.
Okay.
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number 34 for approval. Councilwoman Abdallah Zeeb?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would just like to say for Sadie Lee Miles, Pastor Prophet, the celebration of her birthday,
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Consent agenda items thirteen through thirty-three is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. At this time, Madam Clerk, I'm going to take the non-consent agenda. We will now do items thirty-four through thirty-nine.
Thirty-four.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Items thirty-four.
Yes, ma'am, just give one quick second. Thirty-four.
Yes, I can read it.
Next item on the agenda is our consent agenda. Item number, non-consent, I'm sorry, item number thirty-four. And item number thirty-four reads, "Resolution honoring and celebrating the life of Prophet Sadie Lee Miles on her ninety-eighth birthday, sponsored by Councilwoman Cotton and co-sponsored by Dr. Lillisa Mims. City Council Resolution Twenty-One Three Nine Three."
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Cotton, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, for item thirty-four. On item thirty-four.
Before we make the roll call, I believe she's ninety.
Okay, so there needs to be a correction?
I believe she's ninety. I was trying to look for her bio, but I don't see it in front of me. Can we just make sure that it is?
The bio said ninety-eight.
Okay, Corporation Counsel, can we just verify that and just if it's ninety to change it? Can we still vote on it? Okay.
Madam President? If I may, I recall seeing that attachment and it was ninety-eight.
It was ninety-eight?
Unless it was a typo.
Okay.
But the bio had ninety-eight.
Okay. I thought it was ninety-eight.
We'll verify it by the time we're...
Okay, so...
Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call an item number thirty-four for approval. Councilwoman Abdaliziv?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I would just like to say for Sadie Lee Miles, Pastor Prophet, the celebration of her birthday. She's a pastor. She didn't go into preaching until she was around the age of forty, but it's truly an honor. She preaches here in Connecticut. She preached in Connecticut, here and also in the city of Patterson. So with that being said, it's an honor to recognize people that do so many, have done so many good things. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Mims?
So just for a point of clarification, she is ninety, Councilwoman Cotton. You're right, it should be ninety to Corporation Counsel. To Prophet Sadie Lee Miles, I've known her since I was a baby. I remember them having services across the street from my house. I know many of the members that are doing amazing things in the great city of Patterson, and she's been in ministry for a long time. They'll be celebrating her tomorrow night at the Venetian, which we will be there to help celebrate her. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
Ninety or ninety-eight, she was choosing from the woman of her mother to serve the way she serves. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Madam President?
Bless your life. My vote is yes.
The vote is seven in favor, thank you. Seven in favor, two absent. Item number thirty-four is hereby adopted.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Item thirty-five?
Next item is item number thirty-five. Resolution memorializing Addie Beatrice Bracy, sponsored by Councilwoman Louis Velez and co-sponsored by Council President Maritza Davila. City Council Resolution Twenty-One Three Nine Four.
Move.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item thirty-five.
Roll call an item number thirty-five. Councilwoman Abdaliziv?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
I just would like to say, Madam Clerk, to Beatrice, you know, we always, always should keep people that have been good to us in our city and memorializing them. So to Councilwoman Velez and Councilwoman, Council President Maritza, you know, it's people needs to be recognized and always say, "We're never going to forget them and all the good things they've done for our city." With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Ms. Bracy is a pillar in this community. She deserves this, and my vote is yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Amen. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Madam President?
My vote is yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number thirty-five is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, item thirty-six?
Next item is item number thirty-six. Resolution honoring Mr. Juan Mitch Santiago for over thirty-five years of service to the city of Patterson and the community, sponsored by Councilwoman Velez and co-sponsored by Council President Davila. City Council Resolution Twenty-One Three Nine Five.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez and second by Councilwoman, Council President Davila.
Council President? Yeah. Before we move to vote, I just want to clarify last meeting. I mentioned that the resolution should reflect the word, the name Mitch in the middle of Juan Santiago. I know in the title is...
You want it in quotations?
Yeah. Where it says Mr. Juan Santiago, it's supposed to say Juan Mitch Santiago. I know she read it good in the title, but in the resolution had to be included.
Okay, very well. Madam Clerk, it was moved by Councilwoman Velez and second by Council President and Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item thirty-six.
Yes, Madam President. Roll call an item number thirty-six for approval. Councilwoman Abdaliziv?
So Juan Mitch Santiago, if you're watching this, I hope you enjoy retirement. You have given pretty much your entire life to the city of Patterson, not only as an employee, but also as an elected official servant in that capacity. Enjoy the retirement, relax, and God bless. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I can just say to Mr. Santiago, you've been around for a long, long time, member of the school board, all those other years, and you have played a big role in our community. Happy retirement, enjoy. You can still come to the city and help us do some work, because there's always work needs to be done. But I just want to say, congratulations on your retirement. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kalik?
Enjoy your retirement, Mitch, but my vote is yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, Mitch. I know you're watching this meeting. Congratulations, enjoy your retirement. A former school board member and a lifelong resident of the great city of Patterson, who has definitely done an outstanding job on his career with our city. So with that being said, my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Mims?
Mitch, thank you for your service. We always share our meals together at Tony's Bagels and Laughter, so this is well deserved. Thank you for all that you have done and continue to do in the great city of Patterson. My vote is yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
Mr. Juan Mitch Santiago was one of the pillar individuals in nineteen ninety-nine to rename what we have now, the Roberto Clemente Park. Mr. Juan Mitch Santiago was known in the community as Mr. Graffiti. Mr. Juan Mitch Santiago turns his life around and serving in the State County Sheriff Department, instructing juveniles and setting an example as a public service servant in the city of Patterson. So I'm proud to sponsor this along with my council president, and hopefully we could do this with a lot of employees of the city of Patterson moving forward. So my vote is yes.
Thank you. Madam President?
So when Councilwoman Velez, you know, and we were having a conversation, and he said, "You know, Maritza, you know, Mitch retired." And I was like, "Yeah, I know, I know." He says, "I think that we should do something, you know, not only for him working, you know, in our city, but, you know, for being so dedicated." And granted, he was one of those young men that, yes, he was known as a tagger graffiti artist. Okay, you know, enjoy your retirement. Don't leave Patterson. We still need you, and I look forward to celebrating with you. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number thirty-six is hereby adopted.
Madam Clerk, item thirty-seven?
Next item is item number thirty-seven. Resolution appointing Kyle C. Thomas as the Constable of the city of Patterson for a period of three years, sponsored by Councilwoman Mendez. City Council Resolution Twenty-One Three Nine Six.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Mendez, second by Councilwoman Velez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item thirty-seven for approval.
Roll call an item number thirty-seven for approval. Councilwoman Abdaliziv?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton? Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mims?
Yes.
Councilwoman Velez?
I want to commend any constable of the council board and get appointed, given their time freely, and thank you for your service. My vote is yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number thirty-seven is hereby adopted. Thirty...
Madam Clerk, item thirty-eight?
Yes, ma'am. Next item is item number thirty-eight. Resolution under Patterson Code Chapter One Twenty-Nine Bazaars, addressing a license for Bill McCoy Foundation to conduct a festival. Finance Resolution Twenty-One Three Nine Seven.
Second.
Move.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item thirty-eight for approval.
Roll call an item number thirty-eight for approval. Councilwoman Abdaliziv?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. On the last meeting, I decided to put this item on regular, because I asked, there was a few questions that somebody asked me from the third ward about the process of this and permit, and I did my homework through the clerk, and all the documents, everything's in order, all the permit and insurance, everything is correct. So I'm definitely supporting this, and I'm looking forward to have a great time with our Jamaican brothers and sisters in the city of Patterson. So my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims?
So this has been going on for years. I enjoy it. The food is great. The music is great. I've never won the car, so I'm putting it in the atmosphere for the car and my debut performance on Gospel, Gospel Day, that I can get an opportunity at the microphone and not in exchange for this vote. So I just want to make sure it's not a pay-to-play opportunity, but it is an opportunity to be a part of their great culture and community. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
As my colleague stated, this had been quite a bit time that this Bill McCoy Foundation have do this carnival bazaar in the East Side Park, well conducted. We haven't received no complaints at all, no call of service. They always put everything sharp in the paper. I commend the organization for bringing this spirit of Jamaicans and Jamaica into the city of Patterson. Trust me, one thing they took from Puerto Rico was the Tainos. My vote is yes.
Madam President?
Councilwoman McCoy, nice to see you. I know that you're here today because you wanted to make sure that this event is approved. But I must say, you know, as my colleagues have said, you know, this is an event that has been around for quite some years. I have been supportive of it. I've been part of it. I've enjoyed it, and you already know what I like to eat. Oxtails, festival. It's not about the food. It's really about the people. It's about the celebration. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. The vote is seven in favor, two absent. Item number thirty-eight is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, I'm not going to, I know I said item thirty-nine, but I'm not going to take that item right now, because that is an item that is going to take a little longer conversation. So we're not going to do thirty-nine. To my council colleagues, is Director Powell here? He's not here.
He's on vacation.
I understand, and I understand that there are two employees of the month. I believe, I'm sorry, that they are here, and they were employees of the month for the month of June, and that would be Robert Tuttudo from our traffic maintenance department, DPW. He was recommended by his supervisor, DPW Director, Mr. Rodriguez. And we have Araceli Calero, who has been working in the Business Administration's office and was recommended by our BA Kathleen Long. Araceli Calero, please stand. So at this time, I'd like both of them to come forward. You can just come forward quickly and... Congratulations. You missing me?
Yes, I am, of course.
Thank you very much. Great.
Council President, I just want to say that I was in here, sorry for that, Mr. Tuttudo, and I say hi to you always, everyone.
Madam Clerk, can you please collect the sign-in sheet?
Sure.
So council members, Madam Clerk, I know that it says here, "Public hearing." Number ten does not need a public hearing, am I correct?
Yes. Number ten, it's from Economic Development. We had it at the last correction, but it requires a public hearing, and then we adopt the resolution.
Okay, all right. So council members, item, item number ten, if, if you can, Director, just quickly, because I could give you a quick synopsis, that this is a grant, okay, that is being issued to the city of Patterson. It's a half a million dollars. There's no matching grants, and I don't see why we would, you know, I would say, deny any monies that we apply for that we're able to get to assist. So if you want to say a few words right before we take the vote, Director?
Good evening, Madam President, council members. Can you hear me?
It's on. I don't, can you tap it?
Great.
Tap it.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm Director Jean-Franco Work Committee of the Division of Historic Preservation under the Department of Economic Development, here this evening to present very briefly about this grant opportunity for the city of Patterson. There's a handout going on right now, and on screen, there's a short presentation. I'll just take five minutes to go through. It's like six slides, just to be in orientation.
Three.
So it's for the Colt Gun Mill. Colt Gun Mill is circled in this photo. It's on a site called the ATP Site, or Allied Textile Printer Site, in the Great Falls Historic District within the footprint of the Great Falls National Historic Park. It's a very important and historic building in the city. Most of us have heard of the Colt Gun Mill. It was constructed in eighteen thirty-six, and Samuel Colt made his first revolvers at the gun mill. He was done in eighteen forty-one, and then John Ryle, the father of the Patterson silk industry, spun the first silk threads in this building. We are working actually on the stabilization of the gun mill so that we can remove asbestos from a building that is right near the gun mill. On the slide, it's the Blue Building. It's the SSD Boilerhouse, the Colt Gun Mill. You can see how close by it is. We also have several underground storage tanks that need to be removed from the site. So we're beginning this kind of large-scale effort for the site-wide remediation. Here are some photos to demonstrate the boilerhouse, the asbestos in the boilerhouse, the Colt Gun Mill on the bottom left corner, and the boilerhouse are very close together, as you can see in this photograph. And we, the EPA has been here for many years, testing and finding different toxicity on the site, and we're cleaning it up. The ultimate goal is to stabilize the gun mill with this grant so that we can get at the asbestos, and the EPA will start a removal action to take it out. Here's some photos of the Colt Gun Mill. It started as a four-story brownstone building. It's now a pretty much a one-story ruin. The ruins are planned to be stabilized, as in the next slide. A little bit about the grant, there's no match needed for this half a million dollar grant opportunity. Patterson is uniquely qualified to win, win an award of this grant. It's for the stabilization and rehabilitation of the gun mill, which is the objective of it, in order to leverage the EPA's efforts to remove environmental contamination from the site. That's basically the roundabout of the, of the grant. We're going to be starting up on the Quarry Lawn Park, which is on the upper right corner of the ATP Site, which is seen on this side in the red boundaries. The Colt Gun Mill is clearly kind of in the middle as a kind of centerpiece of the site. And we also have a vision for the future, and a reuse planning effort will be underway this fall. Here are just some renderings from years ago, what we imagine the stabilized gun mill will do at the site as another part of the visitor experience at the national park. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, thank you. Can you please read the item? Number ten?
Item number ten, yes. Next item on the agenda is item number ten. Public hearing is required in this ordinance, I'm sorry, in this resolution. Resolution authorizing Department of Economic Development to apply for the Urban Parks Initiative Grant through the New Jersey Department and Environmental Protection. Economic Development Resolution Twenty-One Three Six Nine.
Second.
Second.
Moved by Councilwoman Velez, second by Councilwoman Mims and Councilwoman Mendez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number ten?
No, at this time, Madam President? There's a public hearing. If there is anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on item number ten?
Seeing no one move to close?
Second.
Seeing none move to close by Councilwoman Velez and second by Councilwoman Mims. Roll call to close the public hearing on item number ten.
Thank you. Roll call to close the public hearing, item number ten. Councilwoman Abdaliziv?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council President, before I vote, just want to make note, and I think it's a phenomenal presentation that was just made, but we just want to make note that over the past several years, every project that we've worked on that has consisted of necessity of remediation has never been completed. The project that, at the Armory Site, where this council approved an additional half a million dollars for additional work that was never completed, but yet it still was paid out through the Division of Economic Development. The Leader Dice Site, we all know that it wasn't completed, and I'm working on creating some legislation that will require all contractors to provide a full detailed list of expenditures, provide receipts of procurement materials and things of that nature, and before, this should be done at the fifty percent mark and at the seventy-five percent mark, so we don't continue to pay out, regardless if it's a grant. Nobody should just walk away with grant money without the work being completed. So I'm working on that as we speak, but as of now, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kalik?
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Jean-Franco, great presentation. I feel very pleased with the, with you, the performance. So I'm very excited about what we're doing in the third ward. We're putting a presentation to educate our historic district or homeowners about, you know, repairs and renovations that they should do and they cannot do without permit. So I look forward for that in our next town hall meetings. A great job. So my vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims?
So this is to close the public portion. My vote is yes, so I'll make my comments when we vote.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez?
I will follow her. My vote is yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. The public hearing for item number ten is hereby closed.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Roll call for approval on item number ten?
Roll call an item number ten for approval. Councilwoman Abdaliziv?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I know too, I see that they're removing oil tanks, and there's so many things that need to be removed to get this area stable with asbestos and oil tanks. And I said before, our city is filled with oil tanks, because houses was using oil before they went to gas. So I see more oil tanks being removed now in the city, because it's required. Before somebody can sell their house, they got to remove their oil tanks now. But if this, I think a half a million dollars still would not cover what's need to be done, but at least we can get started with that. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilwoman Mendez? Councilwoman Mendez here.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilwoman Mims?
So just to make comments, when it comes to these type of grants, one thing, one thing I like about grants, we don't pay them back. So when something is granted, that means we have to follow the requirements of that particular grant. We do our due diligence to apply. We find an area of concern in the community, and we find the money to get it done. So this is great for Patterson, taxpayers, and the city at large. I'm always going to make sure I support things that are granted and not where it comes out of the taxpayer base. So this, my vote is yes.
Yes. Councilwoman Velez?
So this is an application that we all understand that. I know they're looking for five hundred thousand dollars. We all understand that. When they get ready to honor a contract, hope it goes only in studies, and we see something moving forward in the site. Also, the same passion that this Economic Development Office has for the Great Falls site and surrounding, I would like to see it, that they make the same passion for all entire parks in the our city that are needed for recreation. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Madam President?
Thank you, Jean-Franco. My vote is yes.
The vote is eight in favor, one absent. Item number ten is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, how many speakers?
Thirty-four speakers.
How many?
Thirty-four, three-four.
So council members, if you may, Councilwoman Mendez has requested, you know, Councilwoman McCoy is here, and I know that she's probably number thirty, but I am going to exercise my right as the president and grant that, and I know that you signed up. So Councilwoman McCoy, if you'd come forward, say a few words. I know you signed in.
Yes, thank you, Madam President. To our newly elected Vice President, extend to all the council members my personal greetings. It's been a little while since I've been here with COVID and everything else, but as you know, we've sponsored the Jamaica Day Festival in East Side Park every year. Last year, we were not able to hold it. We're expecting to have an exciting time, great food, great activity, great music, great people, a family event for everyone to enjoy. So I hope that you will put that on your schedule. Both the Saturday and on Sunday, we feature what is known as Gospel Fest. We have this year Brother Gary, who is a radio personality in the community, and he will be our special guest and special performance. So the beauty about this is that it's free. All you have to do is bring your blanket or your chair and a few dollars in your pocket so you can buy something from the vendors and have a great time. So I want to thank you for being so gracious in considering our application, and we look forward to you being there. It's not going to be my last appearance. I'm going to try to keep up with you as much as I can. I've been enjoying my Tuesdays, but I'm going to begin to share some time with you as well. I know you have some very challenging item on the agenda tonight, and I pray that you will do that wisely, as I trust you will, and that everyone will be satisfied. God bless you, good night, and be well.
Thank you. Thank you very much. So at this time, as always, I'd like to, I understand that there's quite a few members that, from the audience, who want to speak. So Madam Clerk, first speaker.
The public portion is now open, and the first speaker is Mr. Corey Teague. Please state your name and address for the record, Mr. Teague.
Corey Teague, sixty-five Prince Street, Patterson, New Jersey. First, I want to come tonight to echo my support for the annual Jamaica Day Festival, which is going to be held August seventh and eighth. August eighth will be the gospel event. I want to highlight that, because I'm going to be on the stage as well that night, so I have to put that plug in, and we hope that you all can come out and join us. August twenty-second, there will be the Summer Gospel Fest, sponsored by Elvis Durham Outreach Music Productions. I will also be on that event, so please come out to the Redeemed Fellowship Center. There's flyers on my page, and you can definitely reach out to me if you need information about that. With regards to the item on the agenda, the pressing item on the agenda, you know, I'm coming before you tonight, not just as an elected member of the Board of Education, but also as an activist in the city of Patterson, as a concerned father and a parent who receives phone calls and text messages and inboxes all the time from parents who are dealing with situations with children who are either attempting to be influenced in the wrong direction in terms of drugs and what have you, or children who are already caught up in the system. in terms of drugs and what have you, or children who are already caught up in the system, or children who have overdosed, or children who are looking for programs to try to get out of what they're in, and even older children who started out when they were young. I truly hope that this council takes a stand tonight and says that they're not going to support legalizing these dispensaries in our city. I truly hope that you do that. This is not about politics tonight, it's not about looking good, it's about standing up for what you believe in. And we all know, if you do any amount of reading, you know that marijuana is a gateway drug. That's common knowledge. And where I live at, the communication that, or the community or the area that I live in, which is Grand Street, Prince Street, Main Street, the stuff that goes on in those areas, you cannot tell me about what does or does not happen when it comes to drug activity in this city. When you go up Market Street by the train trussel and you see all the stuff that goes on up there, when you go down on the First Ward, on North Main area, I can name all the areas where this nonsense is taking place. If we go outside right now, I can show you people that are laying on the street, right on Market Street across from City Hall, laying in the banks. And these, a lot of these folks, because I've spoken to them, you can say whatever you want, but I've spoken to these people and a lot of them have told me how they got started. And they got started with marijuana. Whether you want to accept it or not, a lot of these people got started with it. That's what they said and that's what they showed me. So we, as a governing body, we need to stand up and say that we're not going to legalize it. Whoever wants to do that, they need to be able to do that on their own dime and on their own responsibility, but they don't need to get an okay or say, well, we're going to legalize it, we're going to make it okay for you to do it legally, because you can just stand there and do it. You know what I mean? We need to start thinking. We need to get out of this, back and forth, and really start thinking about what's going to benefit our community and what's going to help save our children. Let's get some strategies on that board about how we're going to reduce the gun violence in the city. Let's get that comprehensive plan up on the board, let's have a conversation about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, Asayed El Abt. Please state your name and address for the record.
Is he here or?
My name is Asayed Al Atab. I am a victim of marijuana usage. Not me, it's my daughter. Because my daughter, she start using marijuana in high school, and I keep telling her, this marijuana is no good. She never listened to me. And every time she use marijuana, she look weird and crazy. So she start using for a while, and after that, after she start using marijuana, the marijuana, every time I tell her, stop using marijuana, she said she make me feel happy because I have some imbalance chemical in my brains, make me relaxed. I told her, okay, just be careful. After a while, I start see her mood changed, and the mood turn out from marijuana to another kind of drugs, and this kind of drugs is dope. And she, after she start using dope, she went from crack to needle to all kind of drugs to make her feel, because marijuana is not enough for her. And after a while, she start doing illegal stuff because she want to support her habit. She end up in jail, she start doing illegal stuff. I took her a couple of times from jail. I took her to rehab, and I went crazy for like four years, tried to control her, but I failed, and then she overdose and she die. Now, I have same problem with another two kids in my house, they start using marijuana because it's legalized. They use it, they said, the government said you can use it, no problem. My, I have two son, they sleep all day and they are awake all night smoking weed. They not functioning right, they are kids. And if I talk to them, they don't listen. They cannot do any job, they cannot go to school, they cannot live normal kids. I'm not talking about the old people using marijuana, I'm talking about the kids, the problem, it's not the big one who use marijuana to feel happy. I'm talking about the kids, because when they start, in new age, in the beginning of their life, start using marijuana, when they grow up, their brain going to be damaged. And this kid, if we don't put them in the right direction, they going to end up pothead. You know what's pothead? You know, not normal anymore. You're going to end up being not normal. You cannot do your job, you cannot do function, you're not normal. I'm always struggling with them to stop using, but I fail. Now, after they use, they said marijuana is illegal, they said it's over, I cannot do nothing. So I feel I'm going to another tragedy, my, another children, because the marijuana is controlled their life, and this family is scattered, destroyed. So I'm asking the council, councilmen, to please stop using legalized marijuana because it's going to destroy our case, and when our case is destroyed, the whole community is destroyed. And please, thank you for your support.
Thank you, Mr. Asayed. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, Hanan Al Harri. Please state your name and address for the record.
Hanan Al Harri. 1115 Slingle Land Avenue, Bucwannick, New Jersey. But I'm the president of the Egyptian American National Association, and also I'm a guidance counselor in the schools in Patterson. And first of all, I'd like to begin thanking the council president, Mary Zadevil, and all the councilor for recognizing the Muslim holiday Eid al-Athha and changing the meeting day from yesterday to today. Thank you so much, we really appreciate that as a Muslim community. Second, I'd like to discuss with you, I do understand the issues about marijuana, I do understand that Governor Murphy, he already legalized the marijuana use in New Jersey, but I'd like to remind you that unlike adults, the teen brain is actively developing and will not be fully developed until the mid-20s. Marijuana used during this period may harm the developing of teen brain, cause difficulty thinking, problems with memories and learning, difficulty in maintaining attention, and lowering, causing the student to have lower grades in school, poor education outcome, and also increased school dropout. We have to remember that when we vote for the marijuana. In addition, the high use of marijuana could increase the risk of mental health issues such as mood disorder, anxiety, panic, hallucination. In addition, the use of marijuana can lead to potential addiction. Researchers shows that one in six teens who repeatedly use marijuana can become addicted, which could withdraw from school, friends, and families activities. Patterson Board of Education said their word. They said that they have a zero tolerance for marijuana sales in Patterson, and I honor that, and we should honor it as well. Because these educators, who know and saw the negative effect of marijuana in the school performance of our students, made the decision. And I believe it's ethical decision and it's the right decision for this city. Our children are priceless. We should not, we should not put our children in a risk and add more problems to the city of Patterson. Finally, those who have caused, who have used marijuana end up with poor cognitive abilities, poor career achievements, and low social life, and we have to put that in consideration. In the end, I do understand there is a financial issue that play a role in the decision, but I'd like to remind you, there is other solution that we should focus on, maybe reducing the violence in the school, violence in the streets, maybe also solving the issue of shooting. In addition, maybe create more activities in the park of Great Falls or things in that nature. We should look for more resources of income than legalize the marijuana in the city of Patterson. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, next speaker, Sayel Kayed. S-A-Y-E-L. Is that person here? Please state your name and address for the record.
Sayel Kayed, 8426 Liberty Ave. Good evening, councilmen. I stand here in front of you, it's amazing, if we look 10 years ago, we wouldn't even be having this conversation about legalizing cannabis for recreational use. You know, my culture teaches us to keep our mind present at all times, and things that deter the brain's faculty is prohibited in our culture. And I see this, trying to make the legalization of having it for recreational use is going against that, and it's going against keeping our brain present. I've been around people who are using cannabis and they're not fully functional, and they're not aware, they don't want to work, they don't, they can't even do the most basic daily tasks. So I urge the council to not legalize the recreational use, because you're going to fill this city with shops all over the place. You will have more shops of cannabis than Starbucks and McDonald's. If you look at what's going on in Colorado right now, you have more shops for that than McDonald's and Starbucks. So I don't really, when you look at the positives and negatives, the money that you think you're going to make off of this, you're actually going to end up losing it because of what we're all, for all the rehab we're going to go through for our children and all the crime that's going to go up, it's going to be a wash, and actually, you're going to find that the city is going to even lose more money. And that's why you see these big companies, right now, we have to make a decision, are we going to side with these big corporations for cigarettes and alcohol, and now they're venturing into cannabis, or are we going to side with the people and our children? I don't want my kids to grow up in an environment where smoking and alcohol and cannabis use is normal, because this is what's been going on for the past 10, 15 years. You see talk show hosts laughing about it, laughing about how they use it, and it's become a joke. And now, you know, when you laugh about something, you see it constantly in the media, you start accepting it little by little. So this, to me, is really a no-brainer. You know, I don't know, people want to use it in their own closed doors, that's your business, none of my business. But when you go on record and make it public and make it legal in front of everybody to see, now our children start growing up thinking this is the right path. So we have to make that decision as a city of Patterson and the neighboring. There's a lot of towns that have rejected it, took a strong stance against this, and I urge the council as well to take a strong stance with the people, not with large corporations that are looking to profit off of our people. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk. Also, all the speakers, please state your name and address.
Okay. Next speaker, Mr. President, is James Brown.
My name is James Brown, 232 Jefferson Street, Patterson, New Jersey. I'm here to speak about the cannabis. I'm 100% in agreement with it. Some people come up here and talk, and they have a long lecture about some stuff, saying that this is about the money. No, this is about health reasons and the money. They saying that marijuana is killing their children, cannabis is killing their children. No, it's the drug and the cannabis that's killing it. The ones that's on the street selling it with the fentanyl, the percocets, the Xanax, it's all the stuff that's in it that you buy off the street. When you get some good weed from the cannabis that's coming straight from scientists, straight from cultures, straight from things that is natural, I believe it's better. Not that I smoke it, but I done every drug in Patterson, New Jersey. I've been addicted for 40 years. It didn't start with marijuana, it started with heroin. That was my first choice of drug. I'm just sharing my story with you. The kids is not killing because of marijuana, they killing because of the addictive adjectives that's in it. The fentanyl, the percocets, the alcohol, everyone to see that killing the people. When they drunk, they got laws. Cannabis got laws. When they go pop the pills from the doctor, they got laws. You know what I mean? But they still sell it to us. You know what I mean? It's still addict, so it's not, I don't care if you Buddhist, Christian, Muslim, Arabic, whatever you is, they smoke it. You know how I know it? Because I sold it to them. You know what I mean? Yeah, I'm sorry, I apologize, because I sold it to them, because I was that person that went all over doing it. Cannabis didn't hurt nobody, I apologize.
No, no, don't get too close to the mic.
Mike told me that.
They will not hear you, you know, at home on TV, so just don't get close to the mic.
Respect, man, that's you my man. Mike, you my man, everybody, you know, that I know, you know, y'all out there in the streets with me. So I'm just, you know, sharing that y'all doing the work. This is a economic thing that's happening. Patterson needs some money. I don't want it to go to South Patterson with all those signs up there that I can't read. I don't want it to go to Woolen Park, no disrespect to nobody, you know what I mean? I don't want it to go to Woolen Park that didn't want to be called Patterson. I need Patterson Recreation. I need some things for my community. I'm from the First Ward, Second Ward, Fourth Ward, the Fifth Ward. I traveled all over the wards, and I see what the fentanyl and all that stuff is doing, you know what I mean? The marijuana smokers, the young kids. It's not the marijuana itself, it's the chemicals that's in it. I'm looking for some jobs for the people in my community, you know what I mean? Not over there, over, in my community, in Patterson, in North Main, on 12th Ave, on Auburn Street, on Coward Street, on 17th Ave, on Park Ave, on North 3rd, on North 10th, on Belmont, on the Boulevard. You know what I mean? That's what I'm looking for. I need something to come to Patterson and get these kids off the streets. You know what I mean? You need to get some taxes, this is millions and millions of dollars. It's not about the millions and millions of dollars, but we need some road fix, we need our snow clean, you know what I mean? When it come deep, you know, there's not enough trucks, there's not enough this, you know what I mean? We need our grass cut in the park, when the wind come and the tree fall down, we need somebody to come and cut the tree out the park, not two weeks later, you know what I mean? We need some things to happen in Patterson, I'm getting ready to go. Not over there, not over there, we need it in Patterson. I'm a black man in Patterson, I've been in prison for weed, I've been in prison for drugs, I've been in prison for assault, I know all that stuff, but it's the fentanyl, it's the percocets, it's the Xanax, it's the stuff that these people on the street is mixing. It's not the dispensary.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, Linda Galishaw.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I kind of lost my train of thought after James Brown got to the mic, but I totally disagree with what he's saying. It's true, our community does need jobs, but we need jobs like cutting trees, we need jobs like cleaning the streets, we need jobs policing our community. We need those type of jobs. We don't need jobs that bring about a negative effect. We don't have to indulge in drugs in order to get employment. All over Patterson are signs wanted, all over Paramus, Elmwood Park, anywhere you go, they're looking for people who honestly want to work. We are taking the cheap route out. Same thing with economic development. This is not economic development, this is economic bull, okay? That director along with our mayor, Andre Sayre, which the Patterson taxpayers are about to launch a campaign against, Andre Sayres must be removed. There is no one Patterson, there is one pocket, and it's his pocket. I want the black community especially to pay attention to this, because at the end, he will push book bags, hot dogs, picnics, and free lunch at you, and you'll go right back in that booth and vote him back in. Don't sell yourselves out. Marijuana is not needed in our community in any form. Yes, it is a very medicinal drug that helps a lot of different problems that people may have. It is a very good medical solution, but we don't have to have the dispensary here. I'm asking you to do legislation that will disallow that. We already have too many people traveling in our communities now from out of town. Where is the quality of life? We can't control the traffic that we have. Everyone's double parking, and now you're opening the door to something else. Why must Patterson always be known as something negative? Do we not have enough to carry? Let's talk about some real change in our community. Let's talk about you guys actually putting pen to paper. When is the last time we had some real legislation? Other towns have already started to boycott the fact that they're not going to allow dispensaries to come into their town. Why aren't we working on that legislation? Do we not have enough problems here? Andre Sayre is just trying to lace his pocket with more money, that's it. Andre Sayre is just trying to lace his pocket with more money. That's it. And we are allowing it. Those who are endorsing with him, look out for your seats up there. Look out for your seats. Keep standing next to him as he crushes our society. Something has got to be done, and it's got to start now. And we're not going to vote until, we're not going to stop and wait until it's time to vote, because we all know, everybody gets good at the end. Open your eyes and pay attention. This mayor is not for us. He's causing nothing but division. We have $169 million in COVID. Why aren't we using that for community policing? The governor has already said we can use it for policing. Why aren't the constables on the streets? They have a relationship with our communities. Why aren't they being used? There's plenty ways to stem economic development, and I don't think that's one. And I'm asking you not to think the same, I'm sorry, to think the same, and not allow this to come into our town. If you do, put it on the outskirts. Nowhere in residential areas, nowhere. If you want these drugs clean and without fentanyl, you'll go there and buy it. You'll go there and buy it. Those who want it, will get it. But those who don't want it, as we don't want it around our children, we don't want it here. So please consider that. Again, if this money is not going to work towards the recreation and the encouragement of our children, we don't need it. And right now, with all these tax abatements, $80 million worth of projects have come back on board, and still, we don't have any money for our taxpayers. Taxes are going up.
Please wrap it up.
It's got to stop.
Thank you so much, Council President.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, David Cervain. I'm not sure if David is the first name or David. Is that person here? Cervain, C E R V A I N. Not here?
Next speaker.
Moving on. Next person is Amin Guamo. Amin? Not here? Next speaker, Mr. President.
Yes, next speaker.
Next speaker is Sophie Clavifa. Sophie? Yes? Not here?
Next speaker.
Next speaker, Rahid Oif.
He's here.
He's here? Okay.
Please state your name and address, sir.
34 Woolman Ave in Clifton. Good evening, councilmen and women. I'm here also again to speak strongly against all six licenses of legalization of marijuana. Last time when I was here, I was trying to pass a packet that has most important research has been done about marijuana and what it has done to our communities and to the states before us. That study was saying a lot of information from those eight states and very dangerous information. And I was not lucky to pass them out to you guys, but I'm going to say the most important point in this study, which is the increase of homeless percentage have increased since those states. I'm talking about the eight states that legalized marijuana. 18% for adults increase for homeless, and 50% increase for children. We're talking about increase of crimes 11 times. So if Patterson have, as example, 2, 3,000 crime every year, in five years, if you guys allow this to happen, you have to multiply it by 11 times. And also, we're talking about increase of suicide. Are we talking about, which is this is a very important point. As example, if we have, like what the governor said not too long ago, that New Jersey have over 3,000 people that died from drugs, over 3,000. If we allow this to happen, this is going to increase 49%, 49%. And also, beside that, you guys talking about that 2% taxes that's going to generate revenue. What about that 143% increase of a hospital admission related to marijuana? 143% hospital admission related to marijuana. And you guys still talking about 2% revenue. And what about also the increase of 62% in emergencies? And I wanted to talk also about Patterson. Patterson is one of the heaviest density cities in Jersey. We have almost 145,000 people live in the city. And you guys thinking about having a cultivation center. And I know some of the members have said that they have visited some dispensary, like Mrs. Cotton was traveled to Las Vegas to visit the place. You could have visited one right here down the street. The process and the cultivation, it's a huge problem to our community if you guys allow this. We're going to have a lot of problem with water. We're going to have a lot of problem with electricity, and we also going to have a lot of problem with contamination. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, Amina Kusant. Amina?
My name is Amina Kusant, and I'm a member of the Black Lives Matter Youth Council. We are here today because Spencer Finch is a danger to our community. We ask for you to do your job as elected officials, as people with a seat at the table, and terminate Spencer Finch effective immediately. As adolescents, we should feel safe walking outside of our homes. As residents, we should feel safe around police officers because their so-called job is to protect us. Spencer Finch isn't the first officer in Patterson to use excessive force, and if you continue to allow him to work, if you allow a criminal to wear a uniform, you open the door for other officers to weaponize their authority as well. Spencer Finch is a repeat offender. The May 26 incident isn't the first time that he's been caught using excessive force. In addition to this, he was caught tampering with the evidence of him doing so. This teaches the youth that it's not illegal to commit a crime, that it is only illegal to commit a crime as a black or brown civilian because we continuously see white officers being protected and held above the law. Today, we say no more. Defund the police and refund our community. Our school system doesn't even have enough money to buy good, up-to-date textbooks, but you have enough money to fund a police force who brutalizes us. On top of that, you pay them to stay home while they're under so-called investigation. It's shameful. People like to point the finger at the residents, saying that we're violent, that we need to be controlled, but you can't point the finger at us when you continue to uphold the corrupt system. We do not need more policing, we need more resources. Lastly, don't tell us that you're working on it or that one day things will be better. Make them better now. Actions speak louder than words. Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Mr. President. Next speaker, Elvis Durham.
Mr. Elvis Durham, 283 Broadway, Patterson, New Jersey. Y'all hear me? Okay, I just want to talk about part four, the downtown area. I seen, I finally seen policing in the downtown area. Just want to give thanks to Ms. Fisher and the administration. Now I'm giving y'all props. Thank you for doing what y'all need to do. I appreciate it. But I'm looking for the Patterson Police Department to walk in the downtown area, because people is afraid to come in the downtown area. I also would like to see some councils, council at laws, to visit the downtown area. Even the councilman of the First Ward, Mike Jackson, I would love to walk the streets with y'all, even the mayor, to show y'all what's the problem. The problem is drug addicts attacking people, especially around the first and the third of the month, when the senior citizens get their money. They ask for a dollar, and the senior says, I don't have it, and they attack these people, especially around Marcus Street area. And I just want to encourage the seniors, the seniors, the senior citizens, when you go in the downtown area, bring somebody with you that's a little bit younger to make sure that you okay, because we don't have policing, we don't have that much policing in the downtown area. Also, I want y'all to know, we have downtown Patterson is about to change, and we have a lot of young people. Y'all get y'all resumes together. There's a lot of jobs that's about to come, especially inside Center City Mall. See, the politicians don't want to talk about Center City Mall. I don't know why. But we have Bertetin Coat Factory coming, and they are looking to hire people. You could go on the computer and do the application. Bertetin Coat Factory is coming to Center City Mall, and it's a lot of other jobs. It's about to come to Center City Mall. I don't know why the administration don't support Center City Mall, but God see everything, and I will be praying for y'all. Center City Mall is the new landmark for the downtown area. Also, in the downtown area, right next to SNA, it's going to be a supermarket that's coming soon. I don't know who passed that, but I can't see a supermarket come right next to SNA. I don't know how the trucks and stuff going to load. Can somebody tell me that later on? Council President, how you doing? Look kind of tired. Oh, Council President, I'm going to talk, yeah, okay. Okay, I got the Passaic County Gospel Summer Jam coming, y'all. Passaic County Gospel Summer Jam. It's August 22nd, Sunday, August 22nd, at 4:30 PM. I'm inviting everybody to come out on 292 North 8th Street, Prostrate Park, New Jersey. At 4:30 PM, it's going to be Free String Corey T., Dwight Sutton, and Famous Ink Records and myself. I have the flyers right here if anybody want to see me. For more information to TV Land and YouTube, you could call me at 862-823-3895. God bless you and peace.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next speaker.
Yes, ma'am. Next speaker, Philip Reed. Philip Reed.
I'm going to try to be quick. I'm just going to read this off my phone. Good evening, Madam President, councilmembers. Is the mayor?
No, the mayor's not there.
Just for the record, you know, we don't sell to minors. You know, I'm not sure if everybody knew that.
Did you put your name?
Philip Reed. Philip Reed. I'm from 88 Lafayette Avenue, East Orange, New Jersey. Thank you for the opportunity to expound on my experience as an employee of Green Thumb Industries and give my perspective on the social impact of recreational cannabis. Currently, 19 US states have passed legislation allowing recreational cannabis sales. 36 states allow from medicinal. This national change of heart regarding cannabis has not only granted access to alternative forms of treatment for the sick, but corrected the archaic and degenerative practice of prosecuting cannabis possession. I've been an employee of GTI since 2018. My experience within the company has been nothing short of positive. Their dedication to compliance, diversity, patient care is a standard in the state. My role as security has given me a front row seat to the many efforts GTI takes to honor the privilege of selling cannabis in this state. We follow Health Department guidelines to the teeth, and we take our own further precautions to ensure breaches are virtually non-existent. Today, there aren't many brand-new industries emerging. Cannabis is a new industry that will allow individuals in my generation the opportunity to begin something at the ground floor. Patterson has the opportunity today to invest and partner early to support a viable and growing industry that will employ its citizens for years to come with livable wages. GTI makes every effort to ensure that not only their workforce is diverse, it's the most colorful bunch you can find, I promise you, but also supportive. I'm a firefighter, and GTI not only encourages my fire career, but ensures that they work around my schedule, something no previous second job has done for me. Prior to being a firefighter, I was in law enforcement for seven years, five years with the East Orange Police Department, and two years with the S County Prosecutor's Office and their Narcotics Task Force. I've worked in concert with Patterson PD and the Passaic Prosecutor's Office. In my professional opinion, cannabis is not a degenerative variable in the social fabric here in Patterson. It's just not. Never in my career have I seen cannabis fuel domestic violence or crash, a motor vehicle accident. Never seen it. In short, the city of Patterson loses nothing, allowing recreational cannabis. It gains a partner in the community, a compassionate industry for job employment, and the opportunity to be at the forefront of what is essentially inevitable. Thank you tonight.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam President. Next speaker is Mr. Greer, G. Mr. Greer?
G. Greer, you said?
Yeah.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker, Zelli Thomas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Zelli Thomas, Porch Ave, Patterson, New Jersey. During the past 13 years, Finch has been the target of four federal lawsuits accusing him of using excessive force against residents. How can we trust Patterson Police to fight crime in our communities when it refuses to fight crime in their own departments? When people do harm, they need to be held accountable. Victims of violence need justice. They don't need to become another hashtag. The community doesn't need hot dogs and bouncy houses from community policing. The community needs respect, accountability, and justice. Spencer Finch is one of four Patterson cops who are currently on paid leave while criminal charges are pending against them. Four. This is bigger than Spencer Finch. Not many of the public know about this. In 2007, Patterson Police Officer Manuel Avila was accused of raping a woman who was held in custody at the police headquarters. Though acquitted in 2010, Avila was placed on paid leave, not for one month, not for one year, but for nine years, and collected $900,000. The city ultimately paid $1.3 million for his legal fees and suspension pay. In addition to that, the city had to pay the woman a $700,000 settlement. In total, the city had to use at least $2 million of taxpayer money for this particular case. $2 million. The Division of Recreation's budget is $2 million, and we spent $2 million just on this lawsuit. This is bigger than Finch. The lack of accountability makes us all victims of police brutality. We all have to suffer from their actions. Continue with the termination of Spencer Finch. Terminate other officers that use excessive force. Remove the practice of paid leave for officers that's on suspension. We have a special opportunity to change normal. I have two questions. Corporation Counsel, what is the status of the termination process? And my second question is toward the Police Director Spiezial. In the world where we have injustice and systemic racism all over, you failed to make one black on promotion list in a town predominantly black. Why are you not doing anything, and how are you going to be able to fix this? In the promotion list, I'm talking about for the sergeant, you have failed to make one black on that promotion list. Why haven't you done that, and what are you going to do to ensure that a black officer makes that list?
Council President, very quickly, Brother Thomas, I totally respect and appreciate your sentiment, your 1,000% point, but that question needs to be directed at the BA and the mayor. They're the ultimate authority, and they are the ones, from my understanding, that's in the way of that promotion. It's not the director.
Please make sure that both of them answer those questions for us.
Thank you very much, Councilman Jackson.
Thank you.
I do concur with Councilman Jackson. I've had plenty of conversations with Director Spiezial, and clearly, the person who needs to be addressed is actually the BA, not Corporation Counsel. Corporation Counsel is not the hiring authority neither. There's recommendations, there's people on the list, and I can go forth, but you know what? This is not going to be a back and forth. Madam B- Madam BA, I think that, if you may, I normally do not do this, but I think that you deserve an answer. So, Madam BA.
Thank you, Council President, and thank you, Mr. Thomas. I think we have noted this before, that as an administration, we absolutely support promotions within. We follow a standard procedure that follows the list, the certification list. And as we're able to graduate candidates from the police academies, we're able to get up to our full TO. At this point in time, we have our last class that has entered into the academy as of July. We have always, until we have the full TO of 419 at this point in time, we have always had promotions that are open. So sometimes it's sergeants, sometimes it's lieutenants, sometimes it's captains. And it has never been an issue of who the people are on the list. It's been a matter of numbers. As we're able to graduate a certain amount of numbers, we're able to get a certain amount of promotions. That includes, this time around, for the last class, we're able to get the approval to have a captain, a lieutenant, and two sergeants. That remains, so that I think we have two sergeants that remain, as well as some promotional within, as those other seats are filled. And so, after, as we get to the full TO for academy graduates, that means we'll be able to do our full promotions. We have already made the request. There have actually been two additional sergeant retirements that are kind of within the mix that weren't, they weren't there before the academy class went in or as we were anticipating them. So we have made those extra requests for sergeant, for an additional two sergeants, because we still have some vacancies. We foresee that at, at the latest, it'll be November for the, for the full TO as the class comes out, and as we're able to anticipate all of the promotions before that graduation. We hope it might be before that. We are not standing in the way, so I would like to make that clear. There is nothing that this administration is doing preventing our, our homegrown Pattersonians to be on that list. We're following the standard procedure.
I know we can have, we can have, we can have more conversation on this. This is not the norm, please.
Council President.
If you can, because I know he addressed you, Director Spiezial, and I think that we clarified who the hiring authority is. But I am gonna say one last thing, and, you know, Madam BA, you know, understanding everything that you said right now, I've said this to you previously, that the same way that we push for other items in the city of Patterson, and that we go and we talk to DCA, we need to push. Because we have Pattersonians who have been on the list and that may miss the mark to be able to sign up for the next step, which is the lieutenant test. And so, you know, maybe you don't know that and know what those dates are, but I do understand that that is part of what has been going on as well. I'm not saying that you're stopping it, but I'm saying I need you to fight harder. I think that we can, we need to even increase, and you and I have had the conversation about even increasing a TO. Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk?
Council President, very quickly, Council President.
Councilman Jackson, I really wanna, we, we are...
I know we have, okay.
Please, because then I would have to allow the rest of the council to do the same. Thank you. Next speaker, please?
I'm sorry. Yes, Madam President. Next speaker is Dr. Alfred Kulik.
Madam President, thank you. Thank you for inviting me. And it's pretty important that everyone gets to speak. I can go more than three minutes. 1410 Ever Boulevard, Fort Lee. I always like to refer to that joke about doctor, you're a doctor, doctor, dentist doctor, PhD doctor. Well, I'm a doctor, doctor. In fact, I'm one of the biggest doctors for this stuff around, so you can really listen to me. I've been doing this for 40 years. Passionate father, last week wrote about his son who was in med school while I was treating heroin addicts before that kid was born. And if you're worried about Patterson before, with a dispensary, what was Patterson before a dispensary? Where did my brother buy his heroin? In Patterson. Every kid in Burn County got their drugs in Patterson. Okay, and I'm already starting to digress, because I wanted to just do a few of the disclaimers. I have nothing to do with, like, dispensaries, just, or drug companies. I'm the doctor, you know? I make a decision to prescribe one medication or another. The other disclaimer, which is actually more of a clarification, is there really is different types of marijuana. And in no way in the world am I like, peace, love, marijuana is a safe drug, let's just legalize everything. Oh, hell, no. There's some stuff out there that should absolutely be illegal. In fact, if you start to make these distinctions, you're going to free up resources to crack down on the bad stuff and support the good stuff. Just like with fentanyl. Everyone in this room probably had some type of medical procedure with anesthesia. So I'd never outlaw fentanyl or pain medication and say it's like heroin. Oh, my God, people dying of heroin. Now, I really would like to talk about the good things about marijuana. My cancer patients, my liver transplants. I have children. I have children with brain tumors. I do more children with brain tumors than anyone else. Kids with autism putting their fists through windows, getting kicked out of school. These, I would love to talk about the benefits, but instead, I gotta waste time clearing up misinformation, downright ignorance, and even good hearts. A lot of people with good hearts, but guess what? Garbage in, garbage out. If you got wrong information, even a good heart speaks incorrectly about something. Okay? Now, here's the biggie to get stunned out of here. Marijuana is not a gateway drug to heroin. End of story. If anything, it's a gateway drug out. Okay? We use medical marijuana to get people off of the opiates. In fact, it's approved, I do New York State as well, New York and New Jersey, it's approved to get people off opiates. And in all the states, yes, we have statistics of car accidents, this and that. Well, what's a great statistic? That opiate use goes down in every state where there's medical marijuana. All sorts of old news. The science? Yeah, mice and nicotine leading to cocaine. That's the studies. And the image? That goes back, you know, to the Mexicans crossing the border, and, you know, when Hearst wanted the lumber industry to beat out the hemp industry, and DuPont had nylon and wanted to knock out the hemp industry. And for decades after decades, just trying to stigmatize any particular immigrant group. It was a strategy to link them with imagery. You know, just like, lock up your women, you know, the black people are coming. Or, a woman can't be president because she's gonna have a menstrual PMS and, like, start a war. So a lot of it's just passionate hysteria, not based on fact whatsoever. Every single heroin death started on illegal medication, period. Now, yes, along the convoluted pathway of addiction, marijuana, which is available, is part of it, but that's even more of an argument to have medical, because nature it hards a vacuum. If we don't give the children, yes, save the children, save the children. Exactly, exactly, because they are dying. So if you only give them a bad choice, they're gonna take the bad choice. So save the children and give them the good choice. No choice, you got only one choice, which is no choice.
Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Next speaker, next speaker is Toni Bell.
Good evening. Toni Belli, 5-34 Ford Street, Fairlawn. Good evening, Council. My name is Toni Belli, and I am the General Manager of the Rye Dispensary in Patterson. I employ these beautiful, hard-working people right here. Like I mentioned, I currently live in Fairlawn. I've worked in the cannabis industry for the last three years. Prior to Rye, I worked in Manhattan with another company where my commute was long and exhausting. So needless to say, I'm extremely grateful for the opportunity and my really quick commute. When I saw that GTI was hiring in Patterson, I was very excited. One, for being in close proximity to my house, but also for the excellent reputation that GTI Rye has in the industry. And I knew that leaving one cannabis company to go to another GTI was just a really great career opportunity for me. Since February, I've already been promoted to the Paramus location, and we are now promoting our Assistant General Manager, Colette Ahmed, to the General Manager of the Patterson location. What also attracted me to GTI, though, most, is their commitment to community outreach. As the General Manager, I'm in charge of all operational aspects of the business, from training to hiring to cash handling and turning a profit. I am also responsible for reporting to the state, so I can speak firsthand that this is a highly, highly regulated industry. However, my favorite part of the job is the community engagement, an outreach we do and we want to continue to do for Patterson. I am happy to work for a company that encourages and supports their employees to become engaged and to serve the community. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker?
Yes, my next speaker, Cristo P.
Good evening, Council. Cristo Pereira, 253 Governor. The first topic I just want to address is just a few facts about medical cannabis. As we're speaking about, we're talking about medical cannabis, not the marijuana that is available on the streets. That is what we want to fight. We want to make available for residents of Patterson and those that want to visit the city to get their medication, to have the right to medication that is regulated, that is accessible, that is determined for their conditions, not what is on the street. A lot of residents, and I am a resident and I am a homeowner, have that concern about people in the street, and I can agree. And most of those people on the street, the drug addicts, the issues that we have here, they're not residents of Patterson, and their issue didn't start with marijuana. Now... We want to prevent that. We also want to do away with the stigma when people think about Patterson. And another thing that was brought up in the last meeting and also touched on this one that I want to just deter, is when people say, "Why Patterson? Why are we here?" Like it's a bad thing. Why shouldn't we be here? There are 19 dispensaries in this state, and only two of them are operating in impact zones. And since we opened December 2019, for those of you that they may not know that we are open in Patterson and business and cultivation, there has been approximately, and I'm not the numbers person, almost a quarter million in tax for this city that we have provided with the medication that we provide our patients. And that's just a small number. And I'm talking from my business aspect now, but not as a resident. My child goes to school here and I pay taxes. I'm not gonna talk too much about where that money is going. I do hope that it goes to the product, I'm sorry, the projected areas that residents want, such as housing and schooling. But we're here to talk about us being open, and that's what we want to do. We want to provide medication for patients, not just Patterson residents, but other people. And some people may feel as though medical cannabis, they're not for it, and that's okay. The same way that people have opinions on alcohol and cigarette, drugs, anything like that, gun control. You have the right to protect yourself, to medicate yourself, and do whatever vice you want that is legal already. Why cannot people use medical marijuana to cure their illness? Cancer, people with autism, anxiety, our veterans, people with fibromyalgia, people that just want to get through the day. That is why we get up every morning and go to work. It's not about the money. We don't make commission. It's about our patients. The people that are in pain, that literally have to crawl out of their bed so they can go get their medication. It's not something that's deliverable just so they can feel relief. That is why we're here for. Now, as a citizen and a resident here, I would love to be able to stay here and work in this company and provide not just that sales tax portion they're receiving, but medication for people that want to come here. And a lot of times, people think about our location, where are you located? And their concern is safety when they call, and we advise them, hey, we're in a great location. Patterson is a great city. Feel free to come on by. And if it's their first visit, sometimes they're a bit apprehensive, and then they come in, they see it's safe, it's regulated, the people are friendly, and they say, okay, wow, I really enjoyed my experience, and they continue to come back and make that drive. So I just want to advocate for that and the people that have a right to how they want to medicate, and just touch on the fact that we are very conscious at our store. You must be a patient to shop there. So for the parents that are concerned about teenage use, it is just unacceptable, and it just cannot happen. You cannot even approach the door if you do not have a patient card. Therefore, you must be a patient on the program, which means a doctor has cleared you to be a medical marijuana patient. So I just want to make that clear to you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please?
Next speaker is Khalid Ahmed.
Good evening, Council. I was here last week. I'm gonna be reiterating a couple things. So my name is Colette Ahmed, and I am currently the General Manager of Rye Patterson. I was born and raised in Patterson, and I've been living here for 30 years. I've been in the cannabis industry for five, worked at Rye for three years. And since we've been there, since December 22nd, when we opened our doors in 2019, we have not had any crime. We have not had to call the cops for any reasons. We have not had any suspicion of criminal activities near or around our premises. And since last week and today as well, I've heard concerns about children getting access to cannabis. And you've heard from our colleagues that we do employ ex-law enforcement, veterans. Our protocols are top-notch. We check every single ID that comes in. If you are not 21 years of age, you cannot get access to our buildings. So that, that concept of teenagers getting access, that's on the streets. That's not our location. I take pride, and GTI takes pride in the work that we do, including educating adults of health benefits of cannabis and guiding them to what we know, what would work best for them. So instead of worrying about children getting access and the criminal activity that might come with it, let's work together, let's find a solution. Instead of fighting against each other, working against each other, let's work together. Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, next speaker is Andrew H.
Good evening, Council. My name's Andrew Waylett, and I work at GTI. I'm the Assistant General Manager there, and every day I see people, about 150 to 300 patients a day, and they're average people, okay? They're just like you, they're just like me. They have various medical conditions where pain and anxiety are debilitating towards them. And they come here to Patterson because Patterson really is a gem, and I think you guys have an amazing opportunity here. Yes, they could probably go buy these drugs on the street, but the difference is, it's not regulated, and they're not compliant with that. In our store, customers know exactly what they're getting. They make their choices. And there's no hiding, and there's no shame that comes with their need for cannabis or the usage of it. I feel like it's a privilege to help these people, and I really hope you guys make the right decision. Recreation is the way to go. Lots of opportunities here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am. Next speaker is Mohammed. I'm not sure of the last name. Is there a Mohammed?
Is it, with a K?
Salaam alaikum, everybody. Thank you very much. Good evening. In the name of Allah, the most merciful and the most gracious, we pray to Allah, to bless Patterson, to bless all of your efforts to make Patterson better, especially for our youth, our children. 152 De Rome Avenue, Patterson and J 7504. I am talking, or I want to talk about my experience. I work with the youth, with the family problems every day, and I see the, the results of using the marijuana on the children, on the youth, on the family relationships. When, most of the time, when I face problems, I, the first question I ask, do you use marijuana? Do you smoke? Do you use it? Most of the time, when you have problems, you have marijuana involved in the problem. I am, I respect all my brothers who came from different places, and I think most of them are employees, and they, and they want to sell and to buy and to work. We respect that, and some people, or even some councilmen or women, think about generating money for, for Patterson or for the city. The lives of our youth, the lives of our children is more important, very more important than selling, buying, growing, trading, cultivation, or recreation, recreational use for marijuana. My advice, and I sat down with rabbis, with rabbis, all of them are against the recreational centers for, for the marijuana. I don't talk about the medical use. Medical use has to be researched by scientists and by scholars and by physicians. And we have some of, of researchers talking about the use, especially in three diseases that can be benefited. And this has to be only by hospitals, by not even any doctor. It's because we don't want to be misused even by some doctors, which we know the, the problem... Because we don't want to be misused even by some doctors, which we know the problem in the past. So we need, we need this issue. We have to stand up against any type of recreational use for marijuana. Not no cultivation, no growing, no trading in Patterson. And many cities, they refused to use that, and they wanted to be sent to Patterson. Why Patterson? Our children, the lives of our children, the future of our children are very valuable and very important. So I believe in you. I believe in your judgment and your wisdom. Think about it a hundred times. It is not money. It is the future of Patterson. It is the future of our children. We need schools, board educations, we need YMCA. We need, we need to work together, not to open places for our children to be destroyed. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam President. Louis Montes.
Who did you say?
Louis Montes.
Louis Andrew Montes.
Hello, everyone. My name is Louis Montes, 2818th Avenue, Patterson, New Jersey. I come from the Palmerance family, greater over here over seventy years. Now, I see a lot of changes within the city, okay? I understand the cannabis, the marijuana and all that. That's a new era of cannabis. The cannabis that helps treat the people who are in need, okay? But this is not the point I want to discuss about the cannabis or the marijuana. I want to talk about the heart of the city. And the heart of the city is that it's dysfunctional. And I see a lot of dysfunctional within the city, okay? And I'm not saying all use counsel people are great. Believe me, because Louis Valetz has always been there when things happen. And I make sure he's alert about that. The problem is drive-by shooting. What is this? Police siren everywhere. When I, when 18th Ave, all the tires have been punctured all the way straight down completely. Call the cops. Four hours later, they come. Where are the cops? Okay, there's less police in Patterson. That's what I find out. But there's no excuse for the cameras we have in Market in Madison to show who we could point. If there's no cops, put the camera. I know you have city budget for the cameras. Where are they? Why they're not installed? The cannabis, I understand the doctor here like myself. But let me tell you something. This city needs to be fixed right away. Everything is out of control. You see the trees that I call the people neighbors that wants to be cut, which is on the sidewalk a year? They want to cut because it's hitting their houses. There's no excuse. And there's no cover-up. But let me tell you something. I understand the cannabis and the marijuana is a cover-up, but that's not the point. We need to do justice, to fix the city the right way. You might have a vent here, but look what's happened in the rest of the city. That's not the point that we come here to talk about, oh, the marijuana and cannabis. We're here to fix our city, to protect our children. Every week we see people getting shot, or some of them getting killed. This is ridiculous. City Council, please, fix this problem for us, because I'm not going to tolerate. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, ma'am. Next speaker, Dennis Johnson. Dennis Johnson here.
Dennis Johnson.
Thank you for having me tonight. My name is Dennis Johnson. I'm the General Manager of GTI's Production.
Your address?
My address is 17 Main Street, Quanl, New York, 12518. So I'm the General Manager of GTI's Production and Cultivation Facility here in Patterson, New Jersey. I have extensive experience in a variety of manufacturing industries, including cannabis cultivation, manufacturing, production. I joined the GTI cultivation team in July 2020 and currently have, under my direction, forty full-time employees. This includes lab, packaging, manufacturing, and labeling technicians, as well as harvest cultivation experts and security and maintenance. The starting salary is sixteen an hour with full benefits and advancement opportunities. As we always seek to promote within, the facility is not only offering good-paying jobs, but career opportunities for many of our employees. GTI's technical training is robust and very specific to the task assigned. We do this in order to maintain GTI's national reputation as a leader in the cannabis industry. Currently, the Patterson Cultivation and Manufacturing Facility is undergoing a twenty-five thousand square foot expansion to be completed by the end of this year. This means approximately twenty to twenty-five more full-time employees with benefits offered by the company. I am very fortunate to have the opportunity to work for this company and be part of a very exciting industry. I hope the council members and leadership of City of Patterson see the importance of preserving and encouraging this type of industry and vote yes to the ordinance to allow adult-use cannabis in the City of Patterson. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Next speaker is David Jones. David Jones.
Hello, how's it going? My name's David Jones, 185 Parker Avenue, Passaic, New Jersey. I just want to take time to thank the Council and everyone for being here and hearing out what we have to say tonight. So I'm the Harvest Supervisor over at GTI at the Patterson cultivation site. I've been there for nearly a year. I supervise a team of three people in the harvesting and cultivation of the cannabis plant. So this process includes the harvesting, trimming, curing, drying, that whole process. So, leading up to this, I have a degree from Stockton University in sustainability. And for me, this job isn't just about cannabis. It's about agriculture and science. And the entire position that I've been given is just an amazing opportunity. In my previous job, I worked at the Marucci Research Center for Rutgers University, and there I was able to work on blueberries and cranberries, doing different research and experiments to further the agricultural industry. And I've continued that experience at my current job at GTI. At GTI, I get to work with state-of-art cultivation equipment and technology and have the rare opportunity to pursue a career in agriculture while living here in Passaic and working in Patterson. Cannabis cultivation is part of the exciting and expanding industry of urban farming and urban agriculture that offers so many different benefits to our inner-city communities. And it really provides a unique opportunity that isn't seen in other agriculture sectors. So I just wanted to share that with you. From my experiences, it's been a very positive thing, and I've gotten to learn a lot and build a lot from this job, and I really appreciate having it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam President. Next speaker is Ms. Eva Rezak. Eva?
Good evening, everyone. Eva Rezak, 388 East 35th Street, Patterson, New Jersey. I've been a resident of New Jersey for fifty-three years. I was here since two years old from Bronx, New York. I was kidnapped. That's how I ended up here. It's true. The reason why I am here is, Councilman Mendez, I have called your office a few times to address something that's been happening in our, in our third ward. And I know you've been busy and you haven't gone back, but there's, the reason I am very here is, okay, being a resident, you can tell when our neighbors are having issues. And if we turn the black, the eye to the side and don't acknowledge it, there's a problem, because we all need each other. The reason that I am here, sir, there's a lot of, well, in our street, 388 35th Street, it's a one-way. The cars in the weekend are coming from 19th Ave, zooming up. Like, if I was to stand there, I'd be rich. I'd be rich. Oh, yeah, I'm serious. I'll be rich, because they're there constantly, coming up and down during the day, during the night. Also, Mr. Mendez, council members, as a team, I, I'm really going to say this. I'm here because my neighbor next door, they've been there for forty-five years, if I'm not mistaken. She was a former teacher, which I was also in the Patterson Public Schools, but I just retired due to a health issue that I've been going through. But, Mr. Mendez, we need you at that ward, sir. We need you to focus on that ward and that street. On the days that we have to move our vehicles for street cleaning, it's, they're popped, the tires are popped, or there's poop on their glasses, or, I mean, it's, and that's not a bad area, because let's go there, and our, and the neighbors that are there, they've been there for many years, and they take care of their property. We clean. When street cleaning come, they don't even have to street clean, because we do it. I'm one of them that are there now. I'm not working, so I'm there. Also, I want to make this public, if we can all come into this matter. All black lives matter. All lives matter. We need to stick with each other. We cannot keep pointing fingers at each other and saying, "Well, you got to do this, you got to do this." We all need to do this. My neighbor next door had a stroke recently, and the caretakers for my neighbor, they're all super seniors. I need, if, I don't know, we can call, like, places to get donations or anybody who can really come out. And I'll be one of the ones to help too, to make a ramp for the, for them to bring the gentleman up into the house, because they're seniors. The ladies are all seniors, and they come from different parts. They don't live here, but they come to help. And, I don't know, we need help. We need help, Mr. Mendez. And, I mean, the signs there also, there was, a while ago, they had put the signs, Mr. Robert had put the signs for stop at the end. They knocked it down, I guess. It's a mess. We need also, I'll wrap it up real quick. We need a dead man thing there in the corner, because the, is it called the dead? That, that flat thing that you do when the cars come over?
Speed bump.
There you go, give it to me. A speed bump. Please, Mr. Mendez, I, you know, Ms. Evie's not the one to come up here to tag anybody or disrespect anybody, but I'm, I've been in this community, and I'm part of this community, and I want to keep being part of it. Even though I had to retire due to my, my issue, which I didn't want to, so it was kind of like a forced issue, but I'm still here, and I see that my residents in that area, they're seniors, and they need help. And some of them are probably even scared to say stuff. I'm not. I'm from the neighborhood.
So, Ms. Evie, let me, let me just say.
I appreciate it, Mama.
I, I, I will say, I know you're addressing Councilman Mendez, because he is the third ward councilman, but just know, we're a councilor whole. You have three individuals here who also are council people at large. That is Councilwoman Menz, Councilmember Rivera, and Councilwoman myself.
Madam President.
And so, just so you know, you're not going to just run out, we're not going to, I just want you to know that if ever there is an instance where Councilman Mendez is not available, we work together.
No, no problem.
So, so just so you know, because, you know, you can call the council office here.
I've called. Since June 6th, I've been calling.
So, I want to thank you for coming today and putting your concerns, okay?
I just, I, I know.
I didn't allow Councilman Jackson, I didn't allow Councilman Jackson to do it.
Just at the end. Stay there.
Stay here.
You can sit on the sidewalk also. Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Evie. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Next speaker, Jamelle Caraballo.
Good evening, Council. It's a pleasure to be here in your presence. Thank you so much for having me. My name is Jamelle Caraballo, 2818th Avenue. I have a couple of things to address to you. I'm a parent of two young boys. I have a ten-year-old and an eight-year-old. I signed them up for the recreational summer camp that they have going on. Beautiful. My child recently injured his leg, so he is wheelchair-accessible right now. Unfortunately, he is unable to go to these programs because they don't have wheelchair-accessible. And that is very sad for, for me, for my child personally. He's not being able to interact, to learn, to do other things. I want there to be more wheelchair-accessible for the recreation of Patterson. We need it. How many other kids are in this city that have special needs? And they, they don't have access to that because what the city doesn't have it? Why? Why is that not there? Okay, that was one of my biggest concerns. Market and Madison Street between East 18th Avenue, 21st Street. The gas station that's there. We have a lot of problems in that gas station. We have drug addicts coming from out of town. I can't go to the gas station with someone coming towards me pervertedly, offering me drugs. And another thing that I want to address is parking around that area. I sometimes work from the latest nine o'clock, and I have to look for parking for over an hour. And I don't know who's going to feel safe walking Madison and Market at nine o'clock at night when you're a single mother, you're thirty years old. Not to toot my own horn, but I, my own horn, but I, I am a beautiful young lady. And I do not want to walk to cities of Patterson feeling not safe. I don't feel safe at nine o'clock looking for parking, walking five blocks to my house after a long day of work. Okay, now that we addressed that. Thank you for your patience. So now I'm going to address the cannabis. I have two beautiful children. When my oldest has principles with, he goes to Phillips Academy, charter school of Patterson. Being a parent and being in the cannabis industry, we need to de-stigmatize that. We need to de-stigmatize that in our community, in our culture. I work in it locally and supported, and I support my family in the industry that I'm interested in. That's what I love. I love cannabis. I love the science behind it. I love that I'm able to help other people with whatever relief is that they need. Whether it's anxiety, pain, cancer patients, the list goes on and on. Cannabis for me is freedom. It's freedom. As a patient, for me cannabis is freedom, because that's one of the solutions for me, for my medical needs. Cannabis is not a gateway drug, and please, please, Council, educate yourself about cannabis before, about medical cannabis. I'm going to wrap it up. I want to thank everybody for me, but we want to, I also want to say Shakari Richardson. She said, "I am human." She's an Olympian. Let's talk about her. Let's put her on a pedestal that she's in, and let's support her as she has said that she smoked cannabis, because she's human and she's going through traumas in her life. So as she said, "I am human," and so are we in this room. Thank you so much for having me, Council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Yes, ma'am. Next speaker, Alicia. Alicia?
Good evening. I just want to say thank you to the Black Lives Matter Council for being here today. It really means a lot to me. Darren Wilson, Mike Brown's murder, Johannes Mercelli, Oscar Grant's murder, Nicholas Reden, Mackay-Bryant's murder, Rochester PD who killed Daniel Prude, Jameek Lowery, who in this very town was neglected and then murdered in Patterson, and now Spencer Finch. I am sick and tired of watching politicians in a bastardized system try to justify this because of the narrative hasn't changed. As long as you stand there and I stand here, you are my oppressor and you will never be my liberator. Much like you are incapable of firing brutal cops without the pressure of over forty community organizations and youth, I wonder who's going to police your actions the same way you police the people who live in these communities and suffer due to your poor actions. I wonder how much longer I will have to list names. I wonder how many more kids are going to go to funerals and graduations because you just paid for more police cars and these kids barely have good-standing schools to go to. And you think that this is about diversity? Forget about your diversity quota. People are dying and fearing. Why are you still not listening? Many of us are the voices that you need to act, but I also worry that they might be the voices you never hear. I always thought that the violence, that violence wasn't the answer, but what do you do when that violence becomes the only solution to a society built on it? But I didn't choose this. Black people living in Patterson did not choose this. I used to think that to lead it took courage, and I came to realize that it only takes salvaging a community of its resources for the benefit of a rich man while watching black people suffer, because you need to see how much it hurts us before you can finally let us heal. One thing I want you to remember to take away is not my anger, which is fueled because I want to see a better tomorrow. But to know that next week, we won't stop, the week after that, we still won't stop, because the hate you've given me will mess me, but remind me that I, why I fight. I don't have the luxury of going home and treating this as a dinnertime discussion and Instagram post in front of black people. I am living it, and I am not a joke for your mockery. I see Finch and every single police officer, and I can't live in a world where I am going to be easily commodified. I can't live in a world where police care more about what homeless people are doing wrong, instead of why they were hired for a job that they can't do right. I, I don't want more police training, body cameras, or police officers that look like me. An oppressed body in an oppressed regime is still a complacent oppressor, and I will never support it. I don't want hashtags or your empty wishes. I want you to listen to youth when they say like, when they say things like, "Invest in us and we invest back." I have spent eight years hearing names, and I am tired. I'm supposed to be spending my days wondering where I'm going to college, and this entire summer I have spent it organizing kids as young as ten telling me that the only thing they want is to live. Ten-year-olds, black kids living in Patterson should not be telling me that all they want to do is to live. I live, I live in a world where this idea is shoved down that black people in office will recognize me finally, but how will they recognize me and reconcile in a community with our people still in chains? I noticed that there's a picture of MLK, so I'm gonna quote him really quickly. He says, "The problem of racial justice and economic injustice cannot be solved without radical retribution of political and economic power. We must always remember that. And also remember, if you truly care about ending racism the way that you do, tear down the racist systems that exist, because if you don't, then you're not on the side of the people." Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam President. Next speaker, Carlos Bruno. Carlos?
Good afternoon, council members, Council President, Administration. It's a pleasure to be here with you and back in my hometown of Patterson tonight. Uh, tonight, I'm gonna choose to do something different and out of my style. Uh, I normally just come and "rawr," today I wrote down, because I have a lot to say for our cannabis industry. Uh, I am a Patterson resident, Riverside. Uh, I am a patient of cannabis, and cannabis saved my life. Um, tonight, I wanna talk about what Councilman Louis Velasquez was talking about, what Councilman Aladele Aziz was talking about yet last week, when I got here and missed putting my name on that, uh, paper. Um, I wanna talk about, to learn how cannabis legalization may impact our community right here in the city of Patterson, alright? We use public available information like Zillow and US Census information, among others, to explore the relationship between home value, adult-use legalization, dispensaries, and tax revenues that you spoke about. Um, we used multiple, uh, regressions, values, uh, and analytics to model the current trends, pretending, uh, future trends as well as patterns. Uh, between April of twenty seventeen and April of twenty twenty-one, property value raised, raised, ladies and gentlemen, seventeen thousand, one hundred and thirteen dollars, where there was cannabis legalization in recreational legal businesses in the city. Compared to states where marijuana was illegal and limited, we found that cities with more dispensaries are positively reg- reg- core-regulated, uh, with higher home value, suggesting legalization boosts jobs and economy growth. Uh, each new dispensary in a city added, property values raised five hundred and nineteen dollars a month, a month. Ladies and gentlemen, as more states legalize cannabis, there is strong evidence that legalization drives higher property value, particularly in areas where recreational marijuana was welcomed and, uh, retail dispensaries were allowed. I beg of not only the business administrator, but the Council President and the Council, to get together with leaders in the industry like myself, like Rise and other, uh, prospective businesses that are looking to come into the city and work with us, alright? Uh, we don't wanna be in the downtown area, we don't wanna be near School Ten, we don't wanna be School Eighteen. We're fine, we're going in the outskirts, we're fine with, um, building our community, um, and helping, uh, raise you guys some money to make our beautiful city great. I, I heard a lot of great suggestions last week, as I got here late, talking fifty percent for recreational, I'm all for it. I'm even willing to suggest to my counterparts at Rise and other dispensaries that come into the city to do great for our community, to invest in our children, to open up community, uh, activity centers around the city, alright? I, I personally have spat with Michael Jackson and discussed, uh, biodiesel. Our city uses diesel in our fire trucks, in our ambulances, and, uh, a lot of those DPW trucks that move on a daily basis use diesel fuel. We spent about a hundred and fifty-one thousand, from what your administration told me, and we could be doing it right here in the city of Patterson for free, for all these vehicles. I'm here to help, I'm here to build this industry, and, um, we should definitely, all of us, take a trip to Boston, take a trip, uh, down to Colorado and see how it's being done. There is no kids using cannabis in any of the legalized recreational markets. And before I leave, I'm gonna leave you guys with this. Uh, I heard a lot of the community here, uh, talking about our children. This, ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to introduce you to Cana Carcel. Cana Carcel is an active medication being researched right now, not only in Mount Sinai, but also in Puerto Rico, that I have been a part of for the last three years. This is actually what we're calling the cure for opioid addiction, and it's cannabis, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Carlos Bruno, cannabis patient, and I thank you all.
Thank you very much. Madam BA, she gave Mr. Bruno's number, I wanna know more about that diesel and saving money for, uh, our city. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Yes, Madam President. Next speaker, um, Guricua Salario, Salario T.
What is the name?
Can you repeat the name, please? Sorry.
Guarosolano Trinidad, two sixty-three and sixteen street. Alright, how has prohibition worked out for you? I've been smoking weed since I was fifteen, I'm forty-six. It's never taken me longer than about forty-five minutes to get weed in Patterson. So how has prohibition worked out? What are the benefits? Okay. Uh, who on the city council has ever walked into a room and had the light go out when they turned the switch on? Everybody, I think, right? How many of you stood there and cursed the darkness instead of just getting any light? Nobody would stand, none of you would stand in darkness doing something that doesn't work, knowing it doesn't work? Why would you continue prohibition if it doesn't work and hasn't worked? It's been illegal since nineteen thirty-five. It's never taken me more than forty-five minutes. I got an eighth and change there, and a couple wraps. I'm in your city hall. The farthest I, the closest I ever came to city hall to cop weed was across the street. It's never been a problem to get it while it's been illegal. Why would you continue doing something you know doesn't work? I know one of the city council member's best friends, he smoked. He's been smoking for years. Hasn't stopped him from progressing in his life. Um, I know some other friends and relatives of other council members. Every council member here has somebody who's been arrested, stopped, or been in prison related to marijuana prohibition. How'd it work? How'd it help them? Who walked out of prison better? Why would you persist in doing something that you know doesn't work? Why would you create, then turn around and, if you don't pursue that path, create regulations that keep the people who've suffered under those same old, out-of-date regulations, and keep them from starting their own businesses? If you're gonna vote to pass it, which you should, which is the only logical decision, make sure you do it in a way that the people who suffered under the old law can benefit from the new law. Don't set up the law to keep them out. 'Cause if you do that, you're gonna create people who do not wanna play fair. And we see what happens when people don't wanna play fair. The best example I could give you, January sixth. Bad decisions, bad policies, and bullshit don't lead nowhere good. Change the law, get up today. Thank you.
Next speaker, Madam Clerk.
Yes, Madam President. Next speaker, Keith Watson.
Good evening, Councilor Keith Watson. Uh, activist and Jamaican leader for over thirty years in the city of Patterson. Um, I'm just here today to continue, uh, denounce the evil action that the former councilperson or councilman Bill McCoy took against me, right here in the city council, when he pushed back against me on the same Jamaica Day event. He didn't want me to have, but here he stands proudly to say he's the president of it. Uh, allow me to... Uh, I thought that almost every politician in the city helped them to get elected, from Inglehart, come straight back up to Andre Say, and most of the council. I mean, I, I, I tried my best to elect who I want to be in office for the people. And I've never seen anyone of the council, nor the mayor, envy any city leader or anybody over any event. This is one time I saw it, and I would not allow it. Let me just read a scripture, 'cause, um, he was my friend. Uh, Psalms fifty-five and from twelve, it says, "For it was not an enemy that reproached me; then I could have borne it. Neither was it he that hated me that did magnify himself against me; then I would have hid myself from him. But it was Zao, a man, mine equal, my companion, my familiar friend. He took sweet counsel, we took sweet counsel together. We walked in the house of God with a throne. Let death come suddenly upon them; let them go down alive into soil; for wickedness is in their dwelling in the midst of them. As for me, I will call upon God, and Jehovah will save me. Evening and morning, and at noonday, will I complain and mourn, and he will hear my voice." That was David going through the same thing like I'm going through. One of his familiar friends did something to him, and he complained morning, evening, and noonday, that God would hear his voice. "I want the council to hear my voice." That this was an event that was started for the people, that I created on my own, with my own dollars and cents. And he was right there beside me when I shared a vision and a dream. And for him to now proudly stand in a hole in it to be the president is despicable to me. David was saying, "If it was an enemy, I could understand." Now we...
Mr. Watson, please wrap up.
He had the audacity to even run on a campaign on integrity and honesty, knowing what he did unto me. There is so many proof in this city that I can just go to, and they could say, "Yes, Keith, I was there when you started the event and the rest, the, the, the restoring of the cricket club." Mayors, DPW directors, city clerks, supervisor, but JFK said it right. It's not what the country can do for you, it's what you can do for your country. I've proven that. I've shown that I have done something for this city.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
I believe the council should now honor me for the good job that I have done.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Because if this was any municipality, they would have put a flag...
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Mr. Watson?
Thank you, Mr. Watson. Thank you, Mr. Watson. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Yes, Madam President. Last but not least, our next speaker is Tiffany McCoy. Tiffany?
Good night, Council.
Good evening.
Good evening. Tiffany McCoy, five twenty-eight fifteenth Avenue, Patterson, New Jersey. Um, it is an honor to be standing here tonight just to address the council and the city, um, in regards to what I believe to be an honorable event. Um, there is an African proverb that says, "A fool has to say something, but a wise person has something to say." I believe that our words are very important. The things that we say and the things that we do should align. And sometimes, for people who are misaligned in their words and their deeds, the only thing that they, they find expedient is to talk, to talk and to talk. And the more you say something, sometimes, to people who are unassuming, not knowledgeable on the subject matter, the more times you say something is, the more times they feel like it becomes true. But truth is truth. The truth is that the Making a Difference with the Friends of Bill McCoy Foundation has been sponsoring, spearheading, working within the community to provide a two-day festival for the citizens and the residents of Patterson and the greater community at large. A, an event that draws on the thou- upwards in thousands of people. It has been documented, it has been sponsored and, and acknowledged by many city officials, city, uh, entrepreneurs, residents, and people from far and wide. Um, the facts are that on August seventh and eighth of this year, Jamaica Day will continue. It will continue in pride, in cultivating culture, awareness, family, and, and, and truth behind what it is that, that this, this organization, this foundation is doing. My father, Councilman Bill McCoy, has, I'm thirty-four years old. I saw a group of young people sitting here advocating on behalf of something that is near and dear to their heart. There was a young man that was standing, sitting there, a teacher and educator, Mrs. Smallwood. I am a product of Mrs. Smallwood's work. The young people that you see that he's mentoring, he's been mentoring for decades and decades and decades within the city. He sat here quietly because his deeds speak for him. When your deeds are evident and present, you have no need for flowery words. You have no need to go on and on and belabor a figment of your imagination. Your deeds and your, and your actions speak for you. So true leadership, sound experience and proven leadership continues to be the flavor of our day. It continues to be the, the thing that we stand on and that we proudly represent. And I hope that you guys would join us on the seventh and the eighth in East Side Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
Madam Clerk, Madam President, I'm calling you Madam Clerk. There's no more speaker on the public portion.
Motion closed.
Second? Move to close by Councilman Mendez, second by Councilman Velasquez and Councilwoman Cotton. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the public portion of today's regular meeting.
Yes, Madam President. Roll call to close the public portion of July twenty-first, twenty twenty-one, regular meeting. Councilman, I mean, Councilwoman Cotton.
Council President, um, the roll call first, right?
I said roll call to close.
And then we'll talk after. The roll call?
Yes, to close.
Okay. Madam Clerk, um, my vote is no, no, my vote is yes to close the...
You don't wanna close the public portion?
Public portion, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, can you give me a moment and we'll pass?
Okay. Councilman Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I thought, I was in the public portion, I thought GTI was on the, on the agenda or something, but I don't see them on the agenda. Um, and also, we heard a lot of concern from the residents of Patterson. I urge my council colleague to do the right thing, do your research, and I'll have some questions when, uh, this item comes up. My vote is yes to close the public portion.
Thank you. Councilman Mendez?
Uh, thank you, Madam Clerk. So definitely before my vote, I would like to address some of the comment, uh, from some of the public. And I would like to start with the constituent that live on East Thirty-Fifth Street. Um, in the, a couple of months ago, I put an assessment together about all the area where we need four-way stop sign and a speed bump. I submitted to the administration, and also, we've been having that discussion with the traffic engineer. He refused some of the area, but I would like to let her know that East Thirty-Fifth- is on that list. Speeding is a problem city-wise. It is a problem that, you know, we're not enforcing. We put the four-way stop sign on Eleventh Avenue in East thirty. All the homeowners on that area, they're very happy, they're very excited, and you will see a lot more in the third world, but speeding is a problem. And I'm looking forward to make sure that we implement the speed bump or speed bump in some of those areas where we have a lot of senior and people have no respect. People with motorcycle, they're speeding, they're going through the sidewalk, and this is something that definitely need to be addressed, you know, through public safety. It is a problem city-wise, East Nineteenth and Third Avenue, Fourth Avenue. I'm getting phone calls day and night when it comes to that. You know, we have a very important item that we're gonna have, that we're gonna start the discussion very soon. But it's important what the community, you know, all the concern that they express today. You know, when we hear the community talking about the shooting, the amount of shooting that we're getting in the city, the lack of services that we're getting, the homelessness situation, and people, they're not feel safe. And that's the biggest concern that a lot of the resident has with this item that we're gonna implement it. We all know that it's against the law to smoke in the park. We know that it's against the law to smoke, but are we enforcing those laws that we have in the book? That's the biggest question, and that's the biggest concern that our community have right now. And that's something that definitely need to be addressed, and so I'm looking forward to have that conversation. And I collect my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Mendez?
So I want to commend all of the speakers on tonight. I know it was elongated, we had thirty-four speakers, but I think it's always important that we hear from the community. Although thirty-four people, they were all not residents of Patterson, and it does not represent the entire base of Patterson. It's always a great thing to see anyone come out of there or come from their busy schedule to come to the council meeting. So I commend you first and foremost, so I applaud you for that. I want to thank every speaker for their concerns, whether it's their input on cannabis, whether it was street issues, whether it is events, Black Lives Matter, our youth coming out. There's a lot of concerns in the city. I don't think we need to continue to talk about it or to see photos. We live here, so we see everything that's going on. We have sent those requests. We're demanding, we're advocating, we're demanding and advocating tirelessly. For the same matters that concern you, they concern us. So we're actually, we're doing the same thing each and every day to this administration to ensure that you have a better quality of life. And so we have cannabis later. I'll give some input later as to my feelings and concerns, and some good pieces to it as well. But I think it's important, after listening to the community, that we have, you know, our dialogue. So before I vote, I just want to put it on record that I am hosting a town hall with the community. We have some time between now and then for a vote, and I want to hear from the community at large what their feelings are as it relates to us voting on this item that will affect or impact the entire city of Patterson. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes to close the public portion.
Thank you. Councilman Vellis?
Yeah, today I've been so patient, listened to more than a dozen individuals coming to the public portion. Made a little bit notes here. Some of them impacted me, some of them suffered us. And the reason I'm saying this, I don't know the name of the doctor that was over here in front of us, but I'm gonna call him Dr. Oz. Not only because people don't agree in your medical technology or your opinion of medical cannabis situation, you need to call those individual ignorance. They are not ignorance. They are residents that are concerned of the quality of life of this city, and it's disrespectful that you don't live in the city and you talk about pockets. You probably fill in your pockets and spend it in another city. But we stay with the problems in our city. Let's keep that in mind. To call our resident ignorance and to educate their self, they read, they pray for our city, and they work for our city. I would not set no one to come into these chambers and call us in ignorance or ignorance to the community when they defending Patterson and the quality of life. Regarding Mr. Montes' concerns, it's loud and clear that he stated, "I'm always there." But it's also loud and clear that this council, this body, have gave a hundred fifty percent the tools to this administration to address the quality of life of the city. A lot of people come to the chambers and they pointed to the council that, "What are we doing?" Ask that question, what the mayor is doing and what the administration is doing to bring the taxpayer money in effect in the quality of life. We hear your voices, we hear your concern, and we deliver those to the administration. To Mrs. Garaballo, her concern regarding the gas station, I talk to the owner every once in a while, and I request them to put even private security to control the quality of life in the area. And also, I've been promoting, in the city of Patterson for the longest since 2011, to implement a residence parking permit citywide to address the parking issue that everybody knows that our city is overcrowded and it is overcrowded with vehicles. But if we, if the community want us to make the right decision, we not against the medical marijuana. They spoke about the quality they give and how they conduct themselves because it's restricted, but we're not against that. But let's see what the, this conversation will bring forward. I know the Councilwoman Listemis stated the same. We want to hear the concern of the community and make the right and wise decision. And yes, please go to the Jamaican Day Festival, Foundation of Bill McCoy. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Abdulaziz, we're closing the public portion.
Thank you, Madam Clerks. Unfortunately, many speakers that came here tonight are now no longer here with us for us to address some of their concerns. And one of the big topics that we have at hand is the cannabis issue. And one of the things that I look further discussing with my council colleagues, and I was hoping that people stay here, this is not a debate about legalization or illegislation. This is not a debate of what's good, what's bad. As I stated last meeting, cannabis is legal, and this is a new industry for the entire state. And whenever a new industry comes in, you have to have proper planning and procedures and protocols put in place. And that's what the council has in front of us, right? We can't say, "Yeah, it's legal, let it everywhere." Not everything that's legal is good for everyone. We have one shot at planning and making sure we do it right, and making sure that we're not locked in for another five years before we make any other changes coming through. So I just want to make sure that the public is aware of that. I know I've spoken to many of my residents and my constituents. We have to plan and properly plan to make sure we roll out this new industry if we decide to do that. Because what I hear today is people justifying the use, justifying the need, justify... That's not the debate I'm looking at, and I can only speak for myself. Cannabis is here, it passed overwhelmingly throughout the state of New Jersey, it passed overwhelmingly in the state. But it also doesn't mean open up all doors and allow it and open it up anywhere. We have to properly plan for this rollout. We have to properly plan and make sure we do what's right. Very similar to alcohol. Alcohol is legal. Does that mean we're allowed to open up a liquor store in every single corner? No, there's zoning that was put in place years ago, and this is an opportunity that is a new industry that this council has to really make sure we're fine tuning and not having knee-jerk reactions and working and meeting the middle, and put the debates to the side. What's right, that's gone, that debate is gone. We have it, we have a choice to bring it into our city for the purposes of selling, cultivating, and all the licenses, or ban it. But once we get together, let's make sure we do it right, because you can't make any more changes for five years. And that's what I ask, is put the motions aside, put the debate of what's good and what's bad. Let's start talking about how we're gonna plan the rollout if we decide to go there. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and I appreciate your patience. So to the residents, please grant me one moment just of your undivided attention. We had a lot of discussion, tonight was a packed house with people with many concerns, and we all need to be concerned about this. You know, my eyebrow-raising position is, I wonder if Johnson &amp; Johnson was to come into the city and ask to open up a pharmaceutical company that has proven to have done a tremendous amount of damage throughout all communities, would people have this much concern? And not to say that I'm in favor and/or against, I'm just talking about parity. So right now, we know that cannabis, marijuana is illegal. So any person who is standing on a corner can have a certain amount in their possession, they can distribute it, but much like the gentleman talked about earlier, are there any regulations in place? Are we, can we guarantee the purchaser that there's not gonna be crushed up Xanax and/or some type of opioid to create a long-term addiction? So what this council needs to do is be responsible, and what I'm witnessing happening is the usual antics, the irresponsible behavior, not only the administration, but now this council. The council is the body that's supposed to legislate. It's not supposed to be legislation that's presented so we can vote on behalf of and/or make suggestions. That's not how this works. So just in observance of the various employees that came through from the already implanted company, they had a great deal of people who don't live in this community. So some of the things that we should be ensuring is the attestation or the guarantee and the proof of the Patterson participation. That I do not see in the legislation that's been created, that's been presented. When we talk about, the young lady talked about the amount of taxes in almost a quarter million dollars. That means, based on that number, they've generated almost three point seven million dollars, and if we have taken the allotted two percent, that would have been close to a hundred thousand dollars. I'm wondering how much sponsorship has this entity granted to the community? Have they provided outlets for our young people? Have they sponsored teams? I mean, I've never done three point seven million dollars in a year, and I've managed to sponsor dozens of teams for thousands of dollars, including some of our high school programs, the Midget League programs, and we are sitting here allowing for people to come in and make money off of an industry, off of our community, without them placing forward a guarantee that our community is gonna see a benefit. And that's the bottom line. Corporation council, I gotta tell you, brother, I'm extremely disappointed, extremely. I had very high hopes. We had many conversations on your entry. We had a conversation right out there in the hallway when you pulled me to the side. Councilman Jackson, we need to have a conversation. Let's guarantee or talk about black and brown inclusion. This specific piece of legislation has absolutely nothing about that. I forward it not only to you, but to every council member, to the BA. Last week, while I was on vacation, spent two days researching, drafting, taking language not only from other municipalities, but from the state, to make sure that we put in place guarantees, specific guarantees, that if we're going to do this, let's make sure that there's a certain guarantee that Patterson residents, and particularly those individuals, those communities that have been negatively impacted by it. I don't see it in the legislation. There was not even a response. You told, you did respond to tell me you received it, but no response in the communication of whether or not there was any disagreements, but yet and still, nothing was injected into. We're still being asked to put in place, where from my perspective personally, and I'm not sure how the council members feel, we already have an implanted company that has had their ground started already, much like through slavery, how there's been... And not to say that this is this, please don't mistake this comment.
Councilman Jackson? Councilman Jackson, I'd like to start, I'd like to vote to close so I can start the cannabis discussion. And I know that Councilwoman Cotton did request, she actually asked if we can speak when we were closing, and I said no, and it ended up that when it came to Councilman Mendez, there was a conversation. So if you could just wrap up, please, and we'll continue.
I'll try to do that very quickly.
We'll continue the conversation when we start.
Okay. So I mean, I can delve more back into that, but just to make the, I don't want to end on that point and have people on the cliffhanger. You know, when companies get a head start on other people who have not had an opportunity, it's not fairly and equitably distributed. If there's going to be a position where recreational is gonna have a position, we should not allow the company that has been granted the medical to have a uneven or unfair start on some of the other companies, that we should be looking to guarantee a certain measure of minority and Patterson ownership, not just employees. I hate to see that people come and, you know, gloat over the number of employees that they can have. But anyway, I digress. If you'll allow me just two more minutes, Council President, very quick, sixty seconds. Madam BA, I'm not surprised, it's par for the course, how there's a consistent measure to disenfranchise and/or mislead a great deal of people. When we're talking about the level of parity, I requested last week, Council President, also copies of both TOs. With the fire department TO, we have two hundred and seventy firefighters. We have seventy captains, which is the lower-ranked entity. So captains will be equivalent to sergeants in police department. We have sixteen chiefs, sixteen chiefs, two hundred and seventy firemen, sixteen chiefs, and nine deputy chiefs. We have over four hundred officers, we have two deputy chiefs in the police department, and we have sixty-two permitted sergeants, of which there's nine vacancies, nine vacancies, and which, if you do the laws of percentages, because they talked about parity, you have twenty-six percent of the fire department that has ranking officers that are chiefs. Only fifteen percent in the TO. We're not talking about what's present, because remember, we're short on our TO. So with that being said, the fact that they are stopping at, and you know, I'm trying my best to make sure that we at least maintain where this is not a racial thing, but Patterson residents, all of which from number three all the way through twelve are all Patterson homegrown residents, if we have more leadership in the police department...
Councilman Jackson?
Yes, Council President.
I ask you to please vote to close the public portion.
My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Councilman, you said you voted yes? Oh, thank you, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. Madam President?
My vote is yes.
Thank you. The vote is eight in favor, one absent, the public portion is now closed.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Cotton, I did say that I will give you, please, if you could just briefly, because I'd like to start with item number two, which I'd like you to read into the record, which is concerning chapter one seventy-two entitled Cannabis Licensing and Operating. Councilwoman Cotton?
Yep, thank you, Council President. I just want to say to everyone that came out here tonight to voice all type of concerns that's going on into the city. You know, I got stuck on Route twenty with about twenty motorcycles, like I couldn't, they wouldn't let me get through. Like I had to like put my brakes on over and over. So there's a lot of issues here. I don't know how we're gonna be able to solve some of them. But I just wanted to address the gentleman who mentioned my name. Yes, I did go to Nevada, but it was Reno and not Las Vegas, where I did visit a dispensary. I did visit a cultivating center, and I tell you, I think that even to vote on issues, you needed to be able to see with your eyes what things look like. If you can't see with your eyes, you can talk to me all day long, but I need to see a picture. You need to see something to kind of understand what you're doing. And there's a lot of things that's happening, and we're gonna talk about that, you know, that's going on in the city with the parking, with people disrespecting neighbors, neighbors are not getting along. I have never in my life seen so many neighbors filing complaint, filing court complaints against each other. And I can't, it's just beyond me how you live somewhere and you can't get along with your neighbors. But for everybody who came out and voiced all their concerns, for the young people for Black Lives Matter, you know what? There's so many federal laws and state laws that need to be changed. They're so outdated, and it's like you've got these elected officials in the state and federal level, we need to change a lot of these laws that needs to be, they're so outdated. With that being said, I'll talk more about my cannabis, my experience, what I've... seen, I've gone to countries, and I just want to say one thing...
Councilwoman, we'll start that conversation.
Okay, we'll start, but I've gone to countries, and you'd be surprised what they make their money from, their capital money. I went to the country of the Philippines, you know where all the employees work, raising chickens, raising cockfighting chickens. This whole country, you've got fields of chickens, and they use them to fight. I just, you'd be surprised, I'm just, it's just beyond me sometimes, some of the things you see. Council President, we'll talk some more, but...
Thank you.
Uh, with that being said, thank you, Council President.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman Cotton. Madam Clerk, item number two, can you please read it into the record, first reading? I'm going to do, I'm going to go in order, so let us do, actually, wait a minute.
Number two.
Hold on.
It did number one already.
Yes, Madam Clerk. Can you please read into the record, item number two?
Yes. Our next items on the agenda is a first reading ordinance, no public hearing is required. Item number two, item number two for first reading, an ordinance creating Patterson Code Chapter 172 to be entitled Cannabis Licensing and Operating Administration. Their motion?
I'll move it.
Moved by Councilman President. The second?
I need a second for, to have a discussion.
Second for discussion.
Okay. Madam Clerk, I moved it, and second by Councilman Abdelaziz with discussion.
Thank you.
Beginning with Councilman Abdelaziz.
I'm bad, I'm bad, leadoff? I'll go first, okay?
Well, no, you seconded, you said discussion.
So, okay, yeah, so...
Unless you want somebody else.
You can let me go.
No, no, Council President, I'll go first, because I do have many issues and concerns with the ordinance that is in front of us. As I stated in my closing, I am not debating what's good, what's bad, the public has spoken. You want to utilize cannabis for recreation medicine, that's not my problem. The issue in front of me now as a legislator is how I can protect the city, how I protect the city and my constituents, and how we properly plan and execute this rollout. My colleagues, I just want you to look at a couple pages into the administration or Corporation Council, where me and you have been going on. I apologize for texting you at 4:54 in the morning, I wish you a happy Eid first, then I sent you my concerns about cannabis, but this is something that's been, that's a true story, so this is something that's been, I've been really diving into. On page two, you'll see, I'm sorry, on page, actually, on page five, if you have it, council colleagues, this is to our CFO, and just a question that I may have, and just something that's there. We need to be open and transparent. I just heard Councilman Jackson said that GTI did approximately 3.7 million dollars for the tax that they gave out. My math, this is why I'm bringing up this confidentiality on number three, on number three, Councilman Jackson, I think they made 12 million dollars at 2%, it's 240,000 dollars, so it wasn't 3.7, it was 12 million dollars for the tax revenue that we got back. And this goes to my point. Section three says, "The returns filed by the taxpayers, which are the cannabis license holders, shall remain confidential, and the CFO is the only person that could see those tax files and tax returns." Am I correct, Corporation Council? Where's the transparency on that? I'm on page five, my council colleagues.
Number three, confidentiality.
Yeah, section E, number three. Dive into that a little deeper, we need some transportation, right? So, when they file their tax returns, these companies, we may not have the same, and better yet, forget about the council, I'm not going to be here my whole life. When we're passing legislation, this is for years past us, right? And if we, the residents need to know what's really coming in. It shouldn't just be a two-way thing, the confidentiality, I don't know why it's staying with the CFO, I don't know if that's accessible to the council, or you guys are just going to tell us, like you said, they gave us 240,000 dollars. Why can't we see their books? Why, where's the checks and balances with that? So, that is a star that I put on my notes over here on page five while I was reading this legislation. And just right now, we had, and Councilman Jackson, I don't mean it in a bad way, he tried to figure out what was their income based on the revenue that came in, and that should be given to us. When they give their, this is what their quarterly reports are, this is what they have, that will be some more transparency and making sure that the residents are getting, and even should be open to the public if it's Oprah of requests. On page, Madam President, might I continue? I know you want me to wrap, but there's more notes that I have to the council that I could make...
Well, you know, we have Councilman Mendez, and then we have Councilwoman Mims.
Uh, page, no, there's, I just, maybe they could hear that they didn't spot out in the legislation, just like the confidentiality. On page five, to my council colleagues, and to the administration, and I see Osner and Legal there, distance requirements and zoning, that is the most important item I feel that this council has to protecting the planning purposes of this rollout.
What, what page?
Page, now I'm on page six, distance requirement zoning, A distances. So, if a license holder shall only be 200 feet from a place of worship, a school, so look at that, a school, right, or of any legal residence, 200 feet, I'm going to use, on a smaller scale, properties, right? Most properties are 50 feet wide, but we're going to say 25, like the minimum.
What is that?
Oh, yeah, I don't know. I'm going to just give the residents a visual. On a smaller scale, right, when your lot size is 25 feet wide, which is small, you go to a third ward, they're more like 70 feet wide, you know, they're big houses over there, but say 25 feet, that means eight houses from you are eight, that's 200 feet. Eight houses, there could be a cannabis facility. More importantly, what we've heard here, a retail facility. What makes it more, which is like a slap in the face here, and I was just diving in here, check the distance, the next one, distance between retail licenses, right? You got to be 800 feet away from them. So, we're protecting the companies, we want you to make money, so I can't open up a company, you got to be 800 feet away. But you can only be 200 feet from a house of worship or a school. What are we looking at here? Should be 800 feet across the board.
Councilman Abdelaziz, so is that a recommendation that you, if that can be a consideration, 800?
Yes.
800 feet?
Yes.
Okay.
Because what I'm looking at is if...
So, one second, one second. I think, in order for us to do this and do it right, I think if we went section by section, okay?
Council President, this is a regular meeting.
Councilman, Councilman Colique.
Yes.
You are correct. This is a regular...
And I suggested we have a, we have a meeting on this item only, like a workshop last week.
I agree.
If we keep going line by line, we'll be here all night.
Okay.
Council President?
Madam President.
We should vote up and down.
One second, one second, one second, one second, because Councilman Mendez actually asked for the floor, and I allowed Councilman Abdelaziz, okay, so I don't want, I have an order here.
Okay, I'll wrap it up.
If you could just wrap up, I'm going to allow, and then...
I'm just giving some visuals and highlights at the council colleagues. I'm sure these are some of the concerns that you may have also. I'm just giving some visuals to the residents. What we're saying is, we could open it 200 feet from your house of worship, our school, but for competition, they got to be 800 feet away. So, who are we really protecting when we go there? That's what this ordinance states. And lastly, on section B, and I got a big circle there, and this is the zoning. Please, 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 to my council colleagues, zoning, if you look at any area, any town that legalized it, they legalized it in certain zones in their municipality. What's in this ordinance right now is I-1, I-2, mixed use. On my counting, right here on this map, that's over 20-plus zones. Now, look at the towns next to us, Heldon Borough, they just approved their zones. Guess where they put it? Next to Patterson, next to Patterson.
Heldon.
They didn't say, "Let's put it on the other side," they put it next to Patterson. We should, the, Council President, I sent you an article also early in the morning, the town of Booton, down 23, not too far, when you go to Willbrook Mall, town of Booton's close by, they legalized retail, and they made a corridor just for retail. They didn't say put it all around the town. This is what I'm talking about, proper planning. Right now, with the ordinance in front of us, it's allowed in 23-plus districts, our zones.
It's terrible.
And that's the counting I had with this colored map. So, the residents, go online, and you'll see these zones, the gray areas, the purple mixed-use areas, which many residential areas are in there, in many of the wards. We need to be strategic, we need to create what most towns created, a cannabis overlay district. Let's do what the other towns are doing to us. Let's put them on the outskirts of our towns, where the people are not coming into our neighborhoods, right? And it's on the outskirts, and what's in front of me right now, you can't do that. I've asked for a zoning map, it should be an overlay district. GTI stated they have no issues, because they're not, they're not by any residents.
Okay, Councilman Abdelaziz.
Thank you, Council President.
I know we're going to revisit you again.
Thank you.
Believe it or not, I will say this, which is a conversation that we had when we had the meeting, the first meeting that we had before the workshop, and, you know, which is something that I agree with, you know, we have to be strategic, and, you know, I believe that outside corridors would, if we went that route, that at least, and limited, limited, so. Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam President. I think that, you know, at the workshop, and Councilman Colique, you're correct, we have a very extensive discussion, but we also have a lot of recommendations that we put in place, and I'm just going over in the body of this legislation, what we have to see, if they implement it right now. And I start my discussion with this item, and I'm on page seven of 12, law, number A, local licensing authority. I start my comment at the last workshop with this, and it say that the Economic Development Director, or his designee, is hereby designated to act as the local licensing authority for the city for all cannabis classes of license, under all circumstances which is...
Councilman Mendez.
Why?
Councilman Mendez, one minute, you're not reading, you have, do you have...
No, I just have, this is the new one that I have.
This is a new one?
This is a new one that I read.
Which section are you reading?
I'm on section, page seven of 12.
Page.
172, number six.
Okay.
Number eight. So, and it say, the exclusive authority for receiving such communication and granting such approval for any class of license should be exercised and through the director only. I see that as a big, as a big problem, because nothing personal against the director, but the director is an employee of the administration.
He don't even live here.
That should be...
Councilman Mendez, page 10, if you look at it, you remember our discussion?
Mm-hmm.
The authority will be the council for 100%.
So, why number A is here?
If you look at page 10, the council would have 100%, we, the council, will approve the licenses, not the Economic Development Director or the department.
Number 12.
So, you are correct in the recommendations you were making, it's just, it's on page, page 10?
So, 10 of 12, section 12, council approved by resolution required for all new cannabis license. That was one of my recommendations. The second one was that a company that is holding medical or the license should not apply for, or be granted with another license. I just want to put that on record, I see a lot of those big companies advocated for that. They're already operating in the city of Patterson, they're already doing business in the city of Patterson. I know Rice moved AT&amp;T to another location, now they have the full facility. I'm hoping not to see recreation or any other license for them, because I'm not talking, I'm not going to talk about how legal now, marijuana, cannabis legal in the state of New Jersey. I think that our responsibility is to put together a legislation that protects our community, number one, and to help our residents in the city of Patterson. So, that was my recommendation. Now, my fight with this legislation, and I specified that last week, was to make sure that 50% of the revenue of this go into recreation. And I would like to, I would like to entertain a conversation with Corporation Council, because in my, and this is my position, I'm only one vote, but we all talking about the youth, what's going on with the youth, and let me just let you all know that the reason why it's easy for a young teenager to get lost in the city of Patterson, there's nothing for our children. You go to, you go to any other municipality, and there's so many activities, so many programs, so many recreational programs that they could go, we don't have, we don't have a Olympic pool, we don't have a water park, we don't have those activities that our children need. So, in my position, and this is the, the only position, in order for me to be able to say, you know what, we got to make some change, at least, let's see, what can we get? Because based on what I see, they have the amount of vote for this to pass. But Corporation Council, I need to know about this, how can we, on a resolution, how can we frame this, and holding the administration accountable to make sure that 50% of the revenue go into the recreation? Because quite honestly, myself, I have no trust in the administration, I know there's millions of dollars in this, and that's the reason why everybody fighting for this. It's already, it's already in the state of New Jersey, but if this revenue go into the general fund, I'm not, the community will not see what we're expecting, which is the changing in our community and the service that we need.
Okay.
So, I would like to ask Corporation Council, by my position, in term of that portion of the money, to the recreation.
So, Councilman Mendez, and Corporation Council, before you answer, because that was a recommendation, actually, there were quite a few council members here who wanted to see that there, and I, Councilman Colique and I, we spoke that meeting before the workshop concerning percents, and that we could see, you know, we don't know the dollar number, but we know that we were, we wanted recreation there, you know, I know there was some type of tax release that, this ordinance that Councilman Abdelaziz has been talking about, to give tax release, so that would be a percent, and then, you know, I'm also big on public safety, you know, so those were three items, and, you know, in your conversation, you stated that we could do a resolution that would be, after this ordinance was approved, that we can draw up a resolution to state that. So, I don't know if you have an answer for Councilman Mendez, because if I know how to do math, I know that Councilwoman Mims wanted 50%, or at least, I don't remember if you said the percent, but she wanted DPW in there. I know Councilman Mendez wanted 50% for recreation, and Councilman Abdelaziz wanted 50 for tax release, that is more than 100%, so that is something we can do, and we get it. We all know how to do math, right? So, I'm the type of person, I want to be as fair as we can, and, you know, we got to come to the middle. It can't be, you know, well, if this is the way, you know, in terms of the body, the legislative body, we are the legislative body, so we can say what we want, right? And there should be some type of, at least coming in the middle, in terms of when we're talking about these percents, all right? So, I don't know that Corporation Council is the person to ask, I think it's probably the BA, in terms of what Councilman Mendez indicated about that 50% for recreation.
Point of order, Council President? Point of order.
Why?
Councilman Jackson.
The council is the body responsible for budgeting, it's not the administration.
That's not what I said, Councilman, if you hear what I said, is to answer his question pertaining specifically to his recommendation last week, in last week's meeting, he said he wanted 50%, so he's now asking, where are we with his recommendation?
But again, the council doesn't ask, when it comes to budgeting, we don't request and/or ask the administration how we budget the money.
Councilman, Councilman, and that's the whole point of this, in our conversation, we wanted, if I just said right now, you had three council members last week that said 50, 50, 50, that's 150% of the money.
I didn't give a percentage.
I know, but you wanted, you wanted a certain amount to go towards DPW. So, what I'm saying is, in regards to the conversation, we're looking at this ordinance right now. We ask for recommendations, right? We are the legislator, so we will be the ones to determine the final say on this ordinance. So, I just want an answer, what did we do in terms of the recommendations that were put forth? One second, Councilmember Vera.
Thank you, Council President, it's a good question. I did speak with you and some of your colleagues regarding the funds, and a reso would be an appropriate way to go, once the ordinance is passed, in terms of the council deciding or expressing their intention on how these funds should be allocated. or expressing their intention on how these funds should be allocated.
I know that rock, Councilwoman Davila, so let me just put it back on record, I know what that rock means. Let me put it on record, I didn't give a percentage. I know there was conversation in relation to, for recreation, public safety, a recommendation on owner-occupied residency, and I did mention the fact that DPW should be included because they are the lowest paid some of, because there's other employees in the city that are a part of that low pay of the city, approximately 457 employees of the city fit into that category. But I do want to say this, when you go through the item, I did see, let me go through what I can identify first. So, the hours it says from eight to five are the hours in section, page six, the hours are saying from eight in the morning to 10. We need to, I think it should be regulated, should not be from eight in the morning till 10 o'clock at night for this particular item. I do agree with Councilman Abdalaziz, when you look at the zoning map, it is definitely just way too many, and it probably goes into that, when they were looking to do the zoning, I think an overlay would be definitely the way to go. But when you look at the zoning map, the zoning, by doing it in I1, I2, and MU, mixed-use, the reason why they did that, because they were trying to accommodate the six classification areas to get to that 36 number. So, the distance needs to be definitely looked at. I did see the piece where it talked about the council at large being a part of that entity. There's only three council at large, and I think it needs to include all three, and not just one or two, it's only three. I think all three council at large members should be a part of that block, when it's in the language about council at large being included in that process. I think all three council at large should be included, whoever that may be, because we're not talking about for now, this is for years down the road, and it may change. Also, when you go through looking on page eight of 12, it says, section B, reduction of fees. So there are fees, classes 1, 2, 3, 4, and 6, which are the different classifications, the charge is only 60,000, and class 5 is only 20,000. But if you meet certain criterias, it is stating that you will get a reduction. For example, minority businesses, any business that provide a minority business enterprise certification from the state will get 25%, right? So if you take that off, so that's 25%, so say someone gets that, that knocks off the 60,000. Then if they are a woman business enterprise, and they have certification, they get another 25%, right? So now we're down to 30,000. So you got 15, 15, now we're at 30. Now if the business employee Patterson resident, if they have proved that only a third of the employees, I think that needs to change, there needs to be at least 100, or 75 to 100% of the employee base are residents of the city of Patterson, and not only 33.33%. It needs to be, if it gets approved, for those that will be voting for it, it needs to say at least 75 to 100%, not 33%. And then it says Patterson shall be entitled to a 50% reduction of the fee and the annual licensure. And then you go on to other stuff. But here's my concern, right? And I can go on to so many other pieces on here. When it comes to the decriminalization marijuana bill, this bill came into play, and I go back on the record by saying, of Senator Ron Rice, and others came along with him, sponsored, co-sponsored this bill, because a lot of black and brown, men and women, were in prison for elongated periods for marijuana. He fought tirelessly, to the point sometimes, on a solo tip, as they would say, by himself, to ensure we got to this point. Any legislation that we put forward should make sure that the black and brown community that was the most heavily impacted are a part of the priority of whatever the legislation looks like. And if that is not what's here, that's a, is a serious concern. But when you only say, we're gonna give you your, this licensing, right? We're gonna give it to you, and you could get 25% here, 25% here, 25%, to me, that's still not enough. That's still not enough, because there's over 300,000 people that have applied to get their expungement. There's a three-step process, vacating, expunging, dismissing. Out of the 300,000 that have applied, only 88,000 have been dismissed. That's not even including people that are still incarcerated for marijuana, people that still, they have not gotten the opportunity for a pill, or the second chance program, and so forth and so on. So when we go to consider, when this is being considered, that should be at the forefront, because a lot of people are still paying the price for this. There's a law that is passed, I do recommend, if legal or anyone can make sure that the council gets copies of the bills that are passed, so that when things are before us, that we're not trying to override the state law that's already been in place, that there are some things that can be in alignment with that, so that we don't put something in place and have to find out later that we can't do it because the state has said X, Y, Z. So I just recommend that for all council members, if you have not looked at the bill, that you take a look at the bill that is already in play. There are some other regulations that have not even been in play, they're still on the desk, on their desk, so, I mean, a lot of stuff may even shift even after our vote. So we have to make sure, and I'm gonna continue to say it, that if this legislation does not put at the forefront the black and brown community, it is another slap in the face to our community. And I also want to say this, because I highly respect Mr. Osner Charles, I really highly respect him. And I worked with Economic Development on that committee, but you know what's sad? When they did Hinchcliffe and these other projects, they didn't allow Osner to come forth. I would have loved to hear from Osner, he's brilliant. But they waited for cannabis, and allowed you to be the speaker for cannabis. And that is really sad, to witness it. I'm just putting it on record, it is sad to witness the fact that they have you here representing cannabis, when there were other great projects that you were working for the city, and they never allowed you to come to the mic. So it is a sad occurrence, and I wanted to duly put that on the record, that let this not be the last time that you bring Mr. Osner Charles, the Associate Director of Economic Development, forward. It's almost embarrassing to say, well, let him introduce cannabis, and where are the others?
Councilwoman?
Where are the others? So I just want to make that clear and put it on the record to the Patterson community that has elected me to make sure my voice is heard, and I'm gonna definitely continue to speak truth to power. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Councilwoman. I called on you just to say that I wish that Osner Charles would have been employed by the city of Patterson when we were discussing Hinchcliffe, okay? That I will say, I'll put that forth, because, you know, I don't, I don't, I don't want to mislead, but I do understand what you're saying in terms of him being the person, you know, but I think it's because this is one of the tasks that he was given as the Assistant Director. And I don't want to talk for the administration or defend, this is not it, but I like to be factual, and I will say this, I wish you would have been here, maybe I would have had a different position with Hinchcliffe.
But just, Council President, it wasn't just Hinchcliffe, I mentioned other projects, I'm just making the point of clarity, because it wasn't just Hinchcliffe. So I don't want the community to say, well, Council President, it wasn't, no, uh-uh. Let me make it clear, that's not what I said. I said there were other projects, and I know, because I was the Chair of Economic Development, Osner was here, because we had many discussions, I'm saying...
Councilwoman Mims, I'm with you, I'm with you.
I know, but I just want to say, because...
That's why I...
But I didn't just mention Hinchcliffe, so I want to put it on the record...
The other thing I wanted to address, the other thing is that Corporation Council, you made a statement, and he said it's here, but you didn't ask him where in the pages when you said to mention about, to make sure that black and brown, that it's written here, and he said it's written, but you didn't acknowledge that he said it's in the legislation.
I didn't hear him say that. Where is that written?
Where is it?
Where is it? Because I'm reading, and I've read the entire thing, so I want to know where it is stated that, okay, if it's written, where does it state that the revenue that will be generated will go to the black and brown population? Where is that written?
Oh, no, that's not written, that's not written.
Okay, well, like I said...
I'll just point out quickly, and, you know, I didn't say you overlooked anything, but just in case, while you were going over it, you said preference for black and brown people. There is a part of this that does say on page nine of 12, point nine on that page specifically says preference for award of licenses, and it says the director shall consider and give preference to the following criteria in awarding any class of licenses, hiring of minorities, women, and veterans. The applicant's demonstrated commitment to diversity in its ownership composition and hiring practices, including a plan to hire residents of Patterson, and whether the applicant entity or its parent company holds any certifications as an NJ minority-owned, women-owned, or veteran-owned business. And then it says current or future business interest in Patterson, and it goes on to also lay that. So there was certainly an intention here, and I will just also say that we also looked into whether or not you can say a certain class of people can only get licenses, and we in the Law Department don't believe that's legal. So this was something that we came up with, that helped give preference to not only Pattersonians, but also minorities in Patterson, and that's why this clause is explicitly here. If you have further ideas, and I like one of them that you said, in terms of increasing the hiring from 33 to a greater number to ensure a reduction in licensing fee, I thought that was a good suggestion. I'm happy to hear any other suggestions that we can add to this to ensure and greater focus on Patterson residents and minorities without skirting the law, because the last thing we want to do is include something in here, think that it gets our goal accomplished only for someone to challenge it in court, and it be struck down. So, I'll leave it at that.
So Corporation Council, I will definitely reach out to you. It amazes me how we say some things will be struck out, but we still have minority written. So we have to be clear, if we're gonna do something as it pertain to those communities that were heavily impacted, that it is written. We cannot masquerade it or facade it, it has to be definitely defined as such. So we can have that conversation, which can be brought up bigger, but on tonight is before us, I don't even think we're ready for vote, but, I mean, it is before us on tonight, but this definitely needs some more teeth in it, and then that definitely needs to be more clearly defined.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Mims. You know, you know that this is not the norm for our regular meeting, okay? Everyone has some great points, you know, this is not a discussion, I said it last week, you know, we had a presentation, we had quite an amount of community, the community come out to talk for and against, okay? And it was a workshop, and this is exactly what I wanted to do in our workshop. And although there was some recommendations, we still needed more. So, Councilman Kalik, I'm gonna allow your next, no, 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 he's next, he's next, and then, and then you, okay?
Thank you, Council President. When there's a big project comes in city of Patterson, we like to use our kids as an excuse, like Hinchcliffe Stadium. It's for the kids, it's for the kids, $90 billion project. I'll see, I hope I live to see how our kids use the stadium. Besides that point, is, we're talking about recreation, use this money for recreation. Okay, put 50% of the money to recreation. At the same time, what administration gonna do? They're gonna take away from general budget. So at the end of the day, it could be a squash. Besides that point. Also, from our discussion, what I have got the information from the administration is that if we don't act right now, we have to wait five years to get back into the cannabis industry. Is that correct? What happened if we opt out right now?
If we opt out, it's five years.
I have the ordinance from my...
No, no, I'm saying if we opt, I need to understand the question, you said if we opt out right now, then we have to wait five years.
We don't have to wait five minutes.
No, 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 if we opt out...
I mean, five years.
Council President, may I, Councilman Kalik?
No, I, wait, wait, wait. Councilman Kalik, what was your question?
I'm asking a question, that's all.
I know, what was it?
I just need clarification from the administration.
I understand, what was your question?
My question is, if this council decided to opt out, do we have to wait five years to get in? We could walk in anytime, we could opt in anytime, correct? So, since we could opt in anytime, there's an option on the table for us, let's do more research, roll out correctly, why so emergency? It's not an emergency right now. I know we have to act before August 21st, but let's opt out, then do our research, do the ordinance correctly, then we opt in when we are ready, we are fully ready. We don't want to rush into this.
I agree.
That's, that's one of my, one of my recommendations, and my council colleagues had a lot of recommendations tonight. I think we'll be here all night if we go line by line. I suggest that we table this item tonight and bring back on another day, have a thorough discussion. At the same time, we should entertain opting out. So we can, we couple of months down the road, when we are ready, we opt in. We don't have to wait five years, Council President. And if we vote on it now, we have to live by it for five years, I believe. That's how it is. That's how the ordinance is written by the state.
No, 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 I'm sorry, no, 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 there's too much conversation here. If we decide to opt out, and the law says it, opt out, we have to wait five years.
No.
No, you're incorrect, Council President. Council President, you're incorrect.
No, no, but hold on, hold on.
That's what was...
Let's, can we get Osner, can we get Osner, can we get Osner to come to that?
Council members, ask Corporation Council, what is he here for? I'm sorry, I didn't want to, you know, wanted to speak without the floor given to me, but we're calling everyone to speak except Corporation Council.
Okay, Corporation Council, please clarify to me, because I recall you saying, if we do nothing, right, and we opt out?
Five years.
Okay, then we have to wait five years. But if we at least take action, we don't have to, for example, we could do everything and not do retail, right? And then we can come back and just, and just, just come back in September and decide, you know what, we want to do retail now.
That's misinformation.
Thank you, Council President. If you do nothing, and the 21st comes and goes, you can't do anything for five years. If you opt out, you can certainly opt back in thereafter.
Okay, so, okay, so council members?
Council President.
All right, well, Councilman Kalik put a motion to table.
Taken.
Okay.
Well, I thought he was making a motion to opt out.
Second, second, there's a motion.
He said he made a motion to table this for more discussion.
Second.
Well, I just, before we, before we...
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Councilwoman Cotton?
There's a motion to table.
Hold on, I understand, but you know what? She's been trying to put in the word, let her put in the word.
That's right, everybody had to have an opportunity to talk, I waited, I waited. Everybody gotta get a chance.
Go ahead, Councilwoman.
We already gonna opt out. I went through this, through this paper, and there's so much stuff here that I thought was totally already wrong. I mean, they wanted us to issue six licenses, that's 36 licenses, and the city of Patterson, now, they said what? No, no, I'm just saying, I definitely cannot go with 36 licenses. I just, you know, six-foot cultivators, six-foot manufacturing, to me, that's totally out. They need to change those numbers. I cannot, and then when you got imposing a tax, you left off delivery and wholesale. Is somebody writing this now? Is somebody writing it? I'm hoping somebody's writing it.
Councilwoman, whatever recommendations, when you speak, Councilwoman, we have our clerk who writes down all the notes, and we have someone who's taking notes up there.
Okay, and I have to go along with, you know what, when I looked at his map, and when I looked at the map, you know what, with 36 licenses, which is a streamy, a lot of licenses throughout our entire city, there's some things that we can't, we can't take care of now. We can't take the law into by the liquor stores, we can't do standing on the corners. So if I'm gonna have a retail shop in my ward, in the fourth ward, and then if we can't handle some of the, most of the stuff that we have now, how are we gonna handle? I gotta go along with the outskirts. I gotta go along with the outskirts. But in the middle of residential, 200 feet from here, you know, that's, to me, that's not enough. And I'm saying that also, they have the, they said the city council will, then the city council members will do the licenses. So I can go along with that one. Now, my only question is, and I don't like it at all, because you're telling me that somebody can come in here and only hire one-third. I am not for that. If you don't make it 75%, I'm not going with it. I'm not going with you hiring, you got 100 employees, and you only gotta hire 33 people from the City of Patterson. The other 69 or wherever can come from somewhere else. That rate has to be a lot higher than that. I'm saying at least 75% of the people has to be Pattersonians living in the city. Also, to me, and I want you to take a look at it also, about the first offense. First offense, $500. No, 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 no. We're going with $2,000. When they don't want to do right, we gotta go with $2,000. Second offense, $1,000? No, $3,000. You know, we gotta make sure that we have stuff in place that, because they know they're gonna come here sometimes and not do the right thing. And we have to make sure that we have things already in place when you do come in and you do not do the right thing. But the two things is that, like I said, I have visited in the state of Arizona, the state of Nevada. I believe in some of those states, their residency requirement is not one-third. It's more than one-third, that they want their residents to live there. But I don't, and I also don't believe in giving them, they had given them a discount if they hired X amount of employees. You know, I can give them a discount if they have 100%. They ain't got 100%, you ain't getting no discount. If you have 100% employees of the City of Patterson, Pattersonians, I can give you, that I can give you that. But those are just some of the issues that we can't, like this, you know, they said hire women, hire minority business, hire, you know. There's so much stuff that needs to be changed. But I know personally, 36 licenses is a lot of licenses, and I can't, I can't go with 36 licenses.
Okay, so let me tell you what I'm hearing, which, again, you know, to our viewers, this is not the norm on a regular meeting. But I am gonna say this, this was needed, okay? This was needed. This is something that we discussed. And, you know, I did have everyone, and I did say, please reach out to make sure. And when we got our packets, even I read, I said, some of the stuff I asked for is not here, right? And then there was some recommendations even today, you know. And I will say that one of these individuals was Councilmember Rivera, who was on it, and I had great phone calls today at the state level with having conversation. I'm gonna say this. If I decide that this is something I want to support, I want to do it right. And I'm gonna tell you right now, I'd like to be an Amazon. I'd like to be an Amazon, okay? I don't want to be behind the eight ball, okay? But I want to do it right and the rollout. And I've been saying this, and I've been saying it for the past, since Ju- July 6th. What's the rollout plan, all right? So again, everyone's points here are well taken. Councilman Jackson, you are next. I am going to ask for this because, you know, there was a motion. There was a motion that we could ultimately say, you know what? If you want to support that motion to table it, we can take the roll call, say your piece, right? And then we close, because we should not continue the discussion if all we're gonna do is table it. So we do have a few more items. So I would prefer to just take that action, right? And we come back. So there's quite some recommendations. And I know Councilmember Rivera, Councilmember Velez have things to say, and you will be able to say it when we're closing, you know, to, so we can do a roll call with the table and the, and the...
Motion to table.
I have a motion to table by Councilman Colique, and I had a second by Councilman Velez. Madam Clerk?
Yes, Madam President. If we're tabling an item, we have to set a date or... It's for first reading, and this is my suggestion.
August 4th.
We don't have, we want to do it for a special meeting of August 4th?
Yes.
So we have a motion by Councilman Velez.
So, so Madam Clerk, remember, one second. Remember that that day is...
Workshop.
That day is a workshop.
Right, but we have a special meeting.
Correct, but that's what I'm saying. Like, I'd like to put it so we can have the discussion, okay? And we can, I'm sorry, we can have the discussion, and then we can have the...
You want to have the discussion at the workshop, and then at the special meeting at 8 o'clock, you would like to take action.
Correct.
Of course, and also, there's a lot of amendment. There's a lot of amendment on it, so it should be adopted with that motion, that's why. For example, for example, Councilman Adelazee requested to be 800 feet. She requested this, she requested that. Now, if I go with Councilman Adelazee's suggestion about 800 across the board, let's look at the ABC regulation that is 1,000 feet from school, churches, and the other one, and the other one. So we cannot put that one above the ABC.
Council President, if there's a motion to table, I think the administration has heard the concerns. They need to, they need to bring a whole revised item back to us.
That's what I'm saying.
Okay, so the clerk has spoken, has stated that we needed a date. I gave a date, Madam Clerk.
Yes.
The date will be August 4th. Roll call to table this item.
Yes, Madam President. Roll call to table item number two to a special meeting to be held on August 4th, 2021 at 8:00 p.m. Councilman Adelazee, the table.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So to the administration, this gives you two weeks. Corporation Counsel, Osner, Madam BA, this gives you two weeks to get back out there, have some dialogue with some of the council members, and bring us back an item that's gonna look different than what's here. Council President set it perfectly. If we're gonna do this, we gotta do this right. I don't want somebody sitting here 40 years ago, just like Councilwoman Cotton said, how did all these liquor stores pop up in this city? I don't want somebody saying that 40 years from now, that council back in, what year, 2021, 2061, saying, look, the whole city's where cannabis, and they're gonna be questioning this us, right, Councilwoman Cotton? We have to do it right. I've suggested a cannabis overlay district that will not spread it out throughout the entire city strategically planned, outskirts, in-house, so the quality life of our residents are not hindered, but we capture the revenue to give tax relief or creation, whatever we're gonna put there that would help our general budget and some of the other things. Corporation Counsel, you know, we'll be discussing, you have my phone or number, we'll discuss more. And any council colleagues, I promise you no 5:00 in the morning calls. My council colleagues, please, let's discuss this further. More things may come up, and let's see what other towns are doing, right? Because we don't have all the ideas. Maybe some other towns do that we can bring in here before we do this right. Councilman Colique also brought up something. We have options. We have options. Let's not put this back to our wall, all right? Let's be strategic. Let's do it right. Let's work together. And just let's remember, during negotiations, not everyone's gonna get what they want, right? 1,000 feet, 200 feet, 800, but we're not gonna get it all. We also have to be pragmatic and understand that we are nine individuals that may not get everything. My vote is yes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Cotton?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I hear what everyone's saying, but, and Councilman Al said it best when I, people complaining about the liquor stores, but it was done 40 years ago. Hope those people, city council members are not even living anymore, they're gone. But I just want to say that there's a lot of things in here. I know for a fact I cannot do 36 licenses in a city of this size, even though we're eight square miles. But 36 licenses, a lot of licenses. With knowing that we can't do some of the things that we need to be able to do now with the problems that we are having with some of the liquor stores that are in the city. But you know, heard everything, you heard all of our comments. You know, I'm for more than one-third percent Patterson residents. You gotta go at least 75%. I think that if they truly want to come into our city to do business, and I believe that they will, they're gonna want to buy by what we put out there, you know. And then one of the things too, I see that, especially, I don't want people to get here and they start transferring licenses. You know, they're quickly easy to do that. They'll take somebody's name off, put another name in there real quick. Not even a Patterson resident, not even, you don't know where they coming from, California, wherever they coming from. But they do that. So we gotta really take a good look at that. The fines should be at the maximum they could be, because when they're not gonna do right, they need to make sure, you know what, you don't want to do right, $2,000. And they'll think twice before they do something that they shouldn't be doing. So with that being said, there's so much that I think that we needed to do. And like I say, you know, it's just, it's just how you want us to vote for something that we just saw three days ago and expect us to vote. It's just like, it's just, you just can't do that. We need more than three days. We need a workshop like today, which we wasn't, had the chance to do that. So, well, stuff's gotta be talked about and mapped out and discussed and changes. And I'll make a copy and give you all my changes, because I got a lot of them in here. I'll give you a copy of them.
Thank you.
With that being said, we're voting to... No, my only other question is, what date do we have to make sure we opt out? By the 21st, right?
Yes.
Well, who gonna put that together? You? Who gonna put that resolution together that we...
We should, we should.
No, he gotta put something, we gotta vote on it that we're opting out.
Corporation Counsel, we are voting right now, Councilwoman?
No, I vote, but he gotta put something together that we're opting out.
Corporation Counsel.
Thank you, Council President. I'm sorry.
You know what, people need to have patience. That's all you gotta do is have patience. People need to have patience.
Councilwoman?
Because we all got the right to talk. All of us got the right to talk.
Councilwoman.
I'm just saying to Corporation Counsel...
Councilwoman Cotton. What I need to tell you is, okay, you are correct that everyone has the right to speak.
Right.
But there is a process to do so. So you ask for the floor, as, we're in the middle of voting. There is a rule in place, which I haven't heard anyone today, and I've allowed it only because this is important to all of us in our constituency. So, but what I'm asking you is, you're asking questions, so I wanted aiming to just answer quickly, and you vote.
Yeah, that's all, that's what I said, but he looking at me, he didn't say anything. When do we vote to opt out? That's all.
Council President, may I?
There were roll call.
Corporation Counsel.
That's why I didn't answer, because I was waiting to be recognized, Councilwoman Cotton. So we can prepare and opt out, and I will say, you know, for the record, that we did at the workshop, we had this on for the workshop, and we had an opt-out as well. So that was already done. We can do that again, I guess the way forward is...
To bring it back.
Yeah, so that was already done in the last workshop.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Okay, the table. Councilman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome, sir.
You apply for a job, don't understand the role. Like, this is the legislative body. We write our own legislation. We don't need to turn to the administration. I'm imploring all of council members, please, we should put together a retreat. And we go out, we can take elements of this, do your research, and it is the council body that decides what the legislation is supposed to look like. It's not the administration. We don't wait for them to write legislation to tell us, oh, here, approve this. It's not how it works. We don't make recommendations. We tell them, this is how it's gonna be done, here, now go out and do it. There's not one piece of economic development that this Economic Development Director and/or Department has brought to this community. This is a slow pitch, just throwing up for somebody to hit out the park. Everything's been placed on their lap. I'm the person that introduced the person who bought the stadium, recall? Prior to the mayor being elected, I introduced him. They didn't bring one piece of economic development to this community. So with that being said, I'm not gonna labor this long. With regard to the 200 feet, that's how you know this is an absolute ball drop. You already have state legislation in place that talks about 1,000 feet drug-free zone for schools. But yet, we're gonna say, oh, you can be 200. That's ridiculous, because people who wrote this don't live here. Their kids don't go to school here. They don't give a damn about you and/or the circumstances that your people have to live in. And Corporation Counsel, with all due respect, brother, I'm sure you classify yourself possibly as a minority, I know some minorities don't. But when you're black in America, you understand that the sacrifices by people, and you could suck when or you want to, Madam BA, but it wasn't, it was black people that was hung on trees. It was black people that was castrated. When you check the numbers of incarcerated persons within the penal system in this country, it is black people that lead those numbers. Secondly, to Hispanic people. So if you're gonna generalize and talk about minority and women and all this other thing so other people can continue to benefit off of the backs of the people who was whipped, who was burned, who were castrated, who were hung, who were buried alive, you need to take into consideration the sacrifices that are made on people of this community. And generalizing like this is another insult. So yeah, brother, guess what? Carrying the torch for this, you had a choice, you had an option to say no. So all of that stuff about, I feel for him, and, no, you, nobody holding a gun to anybody's head? Making cause on behalf of, oh, I'm carrying this torch, bro, let's hook this up. Where's the hookup then? Where's the, where's the preferences for black and brown people? It's not here. It doesn't exist. And it was no intention. So I thank you, Councilman Shaheen, for being, for doing the due diligence, because yes, this needs more thought. It needs the council, those of us that have a stake here in this community, to sit down, put our differences aside, put our heads together, and come up with legislation that's gonna be beneficial to our community, not people that don't freaking live here. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Colique?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I do agree with Councilwoman Cotton. We need to have both ordinance in front of us on the 4th. Also, I want to thank my council colleague, Al Abulaziz. We had a long discussion today over the phone, and he's the one who bought me that ordinance from the state. He actually takes me the copy of it. So I give him credit for it as well. And my vote is yes to table this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Mendez?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Before I vote, you know, when I finish with my two minutes, I would like to excuse myself and my colleagues and to Patterson resident. I will take, I have to take a plane in a couple hours. I'll be out of state. I'll be in contact by phone if anybody need to reach out to me. Consistent, you all know my number, 973-930-1436. But I just want to say before my vote that this is a, that's the reason why I stay, because this is a very important discussion. This is gonna impact our community. On the next workshop, I would like to, you know, ask her to be, to be more active, because, you know, there's a lot of question, and you're very knowledgeable when it comes to this. There's a lot of information that you might be able to correct some of the colleague in term of why, the reason why you guys putting the type of language that you're putting. My biggest argument last week was the giving the authority to the council. I see that, I saw the changing now. Now, my formal request to the Corporation Counsel is to put together for the next workshop a resolution, you know, explaining and making, you know, with the 50% into recreation, integrating the 50% into recreation. I'm gonna keep fighting for that, and I'm just gonna tell you the reason why. The biggest concern that people that own Patterson resident has is that they see that our children are getting lost in the street. They see that our kid, there's nothing for our kids. You see our children playing basketball in the corner of Russell Park and Governor. You see that our kids in the corner playing sport. I mean, there's nothing for our children. And if we're gonna be able to do this, we have to make sure that the benefit go directly into the community. The resident of the City of Patterson, in my personal case, I don't trust the administration by putting all this money into the general fund and waiting until the budget for us to say, no, put that money. Nah, I mean, we, as a legislative body, we have to take action and making sure that that money goes straight into the line item that we want, into the department that we want to impact the community on a positive way. That's my position. I know that next week, we have to be responsible and come back with this item. I know Madam Clerk has all the notes and Corporation Counsel, so make sure you make all the changes. And next week, let's have a little bit more open dialogue with the expert there, because I know he could answer a lot of the question that is being brought into this governing body. So once again, good night, Patterson. My vote is yes. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mims?
So enjoy your trip, Councilman Mendez, and Omar can't go. So before, um, I vote, there's, there's a lot that has been stated. Um, I think I stated my case on last week. I do agree with Councilwoman Cotton and Councilman, uh, Council Vice President, uh, Colique that stated that both, number one, we had a discussion last week, and there were recommendations that were made, but not to see them tonight was a concern. But I think next week, we need to see, uh, the, the information or the recommendations included in that, in a reso, or whatever, uh, commentary that's made that can fit, and we talk about it, as well as the opt-out. I think sometimes things get lost in translation, because we're not sure of what you can do, what you can't do, because from the original onset, it was stated, you can't, the assumption was you couldn't opt out at all, because it was a five-year window and you had to go, but we understand that you can opt out and make a decision later, and that's what a lot of the surrounding towns have done. There are a couple that said, we'll do two out of the six, and then some that said, maybe we'll do one or whatever the decision, but a lot of them opted out. So to see, um, I think the overlay is a great idea, because it's on the outskirts where people are not really coming in, but if we don't do it that way, then all those other towns that opted out will come into Patterson. So I go on to, we talk about the Patterson having three times over the number of liquor licenses, I go even further. I talk about, when it comes to all of the programs, which are great, they come in for their treatment, but there's no exit plan. So we have the effects of them on the tracks, we have them on the steps, we have them on the porch, um, and there's so many things that you see every single day up and down Broadway, side streets, residential areas, and I think that's the biggest part of the community's concern. What will happen with enforcement when this comes to a place where it's voted and allowed? Enforcement is key. That needs to be heavily highlighted in, inside of, uh, uh, this language, because we know RISE has their security, but when you start opening it, now it's gonna be a huge concern, and we see the spillover, um, currently. So, uh, the town hall, based on the date, is now the fourth. Uh, I would like to do the town hall, um, next Monday. Um, I will be sending the dates out to all those individuals that have said they would like to be a part of it, and I will also, if you would like to be a part of the town hall discussion, please reach out to me. I wanna hear from the community, your concerns, your thoughts, and then I will consolidate them and give them over to Corporation Council, as well as allowing the council colleagues to see them. Madam Clerk, my vote is yes to, um, table the item.
Thank you. Councilman Rivera?
So, uh, council colleagues, uh, I heard a lot of recommendations, um, regarding recreation, DPW, and tax relief. We're the council body here. We could allocate funding anytime into those three areas. For example, recreation, we have been increasing every year. For example, this year, we increased, I believe, 25% the recreation budget. I don't believe in allocating funding through legislation, because I don't believe in throwing money into a program without a plan. For example, if a grow, if a program has a plan to spend $4 million, why would you throw five into it? That's not the right thing to run, that's not the right way to run a city. I know it sounds good to the public, oh, we're gonna, you know, grab some of this money and it's gonna go into recreation. We're the council. If the administration didn't put some, doesn't put during the budget process, some of that money that is generated into recreation, we could always change it as a body, right? We could always change it as a body. Same thing with DPW. DPW, oh, we're gonna throw more money in DPW, okay, where? Without a plan? You cannot, it, the things doesn't work that way. Now, tax relief, that we need to put into legislation, because legally, we cannot just decide to give only certain homeowners some type rebates in tax relief. So that we have to put in the legislation. But I don't believe in, in allocating through legislation funding for programs without a plan, it just doesn't make sense at all. So what I would do is, like, Councilman, I don't know what percentage we're, you know, we're planning on doing, but if we decide to do 50% tax relief on the owner-occupied, um, properties, right? Um, which, you know, people are crying out there regarding, you know, the, the increase in sewer, this is a way to give back, legally give back, because we cannot give back rebates through the budget. So that, I would only entertain legislation that will give back to owner-occupied, you know, property owners. Now, when it comes to recreation and DPW, I ask every year, the administration, submit a plan, we'll work with you to get the resources together. Recreation, the same way. You need more money in recreation, submit a plan, tell me what you need, what you're gonna do with the additional money, and we'll find a way, work with the administration to get the money. But I don't think it should be tied up with legislation. I know it sounds good to the public, it'll make a good article, but that's not how the process work. It shouldn't. Um, my vote is yes to table it.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
Thank you, uh, Madam Clerk, Council President, my colleagues. You know, as Council President stated, this has had been a unusual regular meeting regarding an item. Do I have quarrel? Oh, okay, okay. So, so I know that we, I did a motion to table with my colleague, uh, Councilman Colique. I believe, uh, co, uh, corporate council could testify on this. Late May and beginning of June, I sent a draft from legal municipality to opt-out, to opt-out out of the six license. And yes, he presented it at the last workshop for discussion, but we never got to it. Okay? I still have it, the opt-out. Before we started discussion about this, I moved fast, presented to legal to draft a opt-out, and had been ignored across the board, that opt-out, and I have it here. He supplied it to us at the workshop, and we ignored it. We entertained two items, and then we ignored this. So I'm in favor to opt-out, I'm in favor to table, but there's a lot of discussion, and still, one meeting will not address all the concerns. One meeting that we do next week is not gonna address all the amendment that we wanna put on the table to approve or not approve. I'm focusing to opt-out, and then when they get everything together, then come with a real plan. But if still we're gonna receive a, an ordinance with customized amendment, I'm not gonna be comfortable with it. For example, it's only gonna be permitted in I-1, I-2, and mixed use. I don't have I-1, I-2 in my ward, but I have mixed use. So in other word, they hiding it to stick it out different way. And I get insulted when they try to insult my intelligence. I got here, it's not, I got head for carry here, but it's not for being stupid. I know how to read and do my discoveries in paperwork. Ladies and gentlemen, I'm happy this is gonna be tabled, but first of all, I gotta say, one meeting is not gonna get it right. We got a lot of wish lists on the table, and I cannot legislate for something and put it easy when we have ABC laws that are more important and more stronger than the one they put in, in front of us. Recommendation for the next meeting? Let's discuss the opt-out into this administration, forget about filling up the pocket and thinking only in the money, and think on the residents of Patterson that really are crying for quality of life and making sure that Patterson, change that word I say, that Tom Rooney says, whatever goes in Patterson, everything goes in Patterson. And we had to prove our neighboring town that we are smarter than them. The same way that they created burden with the sewer situation, they're gonna create problems with this ordinance. And I listened to everyone to come to this podium, and I balance where you sleep, where you wake up, where your kids go to school, I bet you 100% that those individual leave Patterson and say, let Patterson deal with it. We're gonna carry the money in our pocket. Meanwhile, the residents of Patterson, those that voted for us and voted for this mayor want something better from us. Resident Patterson, you could get something better from nine council members here. I don't guarantee the administration's gonna get something better for you. My vote is yes to table.
Thank you, Madam President.
So... All of the points are duly noted, and, you know, I have to stand with the council, as I am one of nine. We have had conversations, we haven't had enough conversations. Um, I think everyone here had some great points. One of the things that I will continue to say is this. Now I actually got clarity, and actually, Councilman Colique said it, Councilman Abdalaziz sent me the legislation. Lot of, a lot of pages, right? And there was an area there where I was confused, and even when I asked the administration, even today I asked, so if we opt-out, we can't do anything for five years? And no, we have to take an action. If we take an action of opting out, September 1st, we can come back. I want us to do it right. Now, I said it before, I don't wanna be behind the eight ball. I don't want to, you know, I, I, I heard a reference from, I think it was from our director of, uh, of police, I think it was he who stated, you, you were in that meeting. You know, we have to do something. We just can't say, well, let's just opt-out, right? It is here, there's a black market, we're getting absolutely nothing, and if we do nothing at all, we're still gonna have the issues. Do we need to regulate? Absolutely. I understand, and it is my understanding, that it was up to six in each category, as the legislation read, up to six. Well, maybe we can change that, so we can be set, right? Not do the up to six, because as Councilwoman Cotton said, that looks like it's 36 licenses, right? When the reality is this, and something that some of my colleagues, I don't think they realize when they speak, the state of New Jersey will be the ones to dictate and to accept applications and the fees, and they will issue the licenses, not the city of Patterson. It will be the state of New Jersey. There's only 150-something plus in the entire state. It is the council here, and I wish that if we decide to accept, that's the action that we're going to take. No, we do not say so. When I hear some of my colleagues say that it has to be, you know, women, that it has to be black and brown, the state is going to determine, not this council. Please do not confuse yourself, because it can be confusing. The state of New Jersey, it is legal, marijuana is legal, the council is not legalizing marijuana, it's already legal. Second, the state will issue the licenses. We, the council, what we're doing in this discussion is specific to say, will we regulate? And that's what we're doing in terms of taking action. I stand with my colleagues to say that, you know what? It needs to be done route, right? This rollout is really important. Councilwoman Mendez, I have been, when you were speaking, I put my hands up, because you said enforcement. Have I not been saying that from day one? Enforcement, okay? We're gonna be treading some waters, unknown waters, and, you know, we need to be, uh, ahead of the line. So, um, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, to Corporation Council, who is not here, or he's over there, uh, but he's not listening to me, but Madam B.A., you've heard a lot of what has been said here. I think you will be able to gauge and to see and understand, right, that as long as each one of us has felt that, you know what? We are the legislators, this is what we want, and we're able to have that in that legislation, I think that we can have a compromise, because I've been talking about that. I believe we can compromise. But I will say this, that up to six, that language, 36, and I know we're not getting 36. Listen, I, I, I just know it. The state of New Jersey is, is, only has 150, and, and, and there's already applications that are in. So some of my colleagues are not listening, they're not sitting here, they're, they don't know what I'm saying. I hope that next week, I don't have to repeat myself, but I will say this to you, I wanna take action, but I wanna do what's right for the community. And what Councilman Rivera stated in terms of the budget, you know what? He is right. After listening to what he said, you know, this is why it's important to have this dialogue, because he is right. We do not have to use these monies, because we already have that authority within our budget. We have that authority, and every year now, um, I'm, I'm, I'm almost, Councilman Abdalaziz is not listening to me right now, but I have to say that what he's stating in terms of, you know, giving that, that rebate, because we can't say, oh, reduce your taxes, we know that, we're a transitional aid city. So, um, I just wanna thank everyone today for the dialogue. This is actually what I wanted us all to do with the administration, uh, prior to today's meeting, but it was healthy, it was good, and I just wanna thank you all. So Madam Clerk, with that said, my vote is yes to table this.
Thank you, Madam President. The vote is nine in favor, none against. Item number two will be tabled to a special meeting to be held on August 4th, 2021 at 8:00 P.M.
Thank you very much. So Madam Clerk, I'd like to, um, also table the next item over.
No, that one could move, I gotta tell you why. I gotta tell you why. That, that one could move, because the reason is there's a smoking act. Even that the state approved recreational, we could restrict the public use and put it as the smoking act and this and that.
So, so Councilman, the, the reason why I'd like not to move with that and put that for our next with the same with August 4th, is because we don't know where we're going with this resolution.
The Council, Council President, have a corporate council that, even that we don't take action in the opt-out or the one to, uh, upset the retail, whatever, this one could get in place from this point on, move it to second, because it falls on the provision, like the liquor, you cannot drink in public, you cannot smoke in parks.
Okay.
So this one could be moved.
So, Madam Clerk, let's take that next item.
Madam President, next item number three?
Number three, Madam Clerk.
Okay. Next item is item number three for first reading, no public hearing is required, an ordinance banning cannabis use in public places, amending and supplementing Patterson Code, Chapter 113, Article 2, entitled consumption in public, sponsored by Councilman Velez, Administration.
Move.
Second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number three for first reading.
Is that second by, is that Councilman Colique?
Yes, second by me.
Motion by Councilman Velez. Roll call on item number three for first reading. Councilman Abdalaziz?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Colique?
Yes, for first reading.
Councilman Velez?
Thank you, colleagues. My vote is yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor, four absent. Item number three hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading will be held at the next regular meeting of August 17, 2021 at 7:00 P.M.
Council President.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, um, I see that we have, uh, Director, oh my God, I was gonna say Ortiz, Director Cruz, so I'd like to take, um, item 11.
Yes, Madam President. Next item is item number 11. Item number 11, and it requires a public hearing. Resolution ratified and adopted in the 2021 Budget of the Downtown Patterson Special Improvement District Finance Resolution 21370. I have a motion.
Move, second.
Roll call, Madam Clerk. Actually, there's a public hearing?
Yes. I'm sorry, Council President. Move by Councilman Velez, second by?
Councilman Colique.
Colique.
Colique? Okay, yes. You can open the public hearing.
The public hearing is now open for item number 11.
Senator One, move to close.
Second.
Move to close by Councilman, uh, Velez, second by Colique and Abdalaziz. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the public hearing on item number 11.
Yes, Madam President. Roll call to close the public hearing for item number 11. Councilman Abdalaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Colique?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Close the public portion? Yes, my vote is, hearing, yes, yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is six in favor, three absent. Public hearing is now closed for item number 11.
Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number 11.
Roll call on item number 11 for approval of the budget, Councilman Abdelaziz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Cotton?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Colique?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Thank you, Director. Please take note the areas that I spoke to you about, just get it moving before winter comes in. My vote is yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Not to cause any dissension, but I'm curious of the areas that Councilman Velez, the Councilman of the Fifth Ward, is concerned about in the First Ward Sid. Very disappointing, councilmembers, I've, I've been starchy against this thing, not for personal reasons, because I've been directly communicating with a number of different owners, I have yet to find one, including, anyway. The fact that, you know, my position is totally, is completely or consistently undermined it, it speaks volumes, and, and the willingness for, for councilmembers to step over into my ward, and not even, even if you guys said, listen, you know what, I went over there, Councilman, I spoke to the business owners, and I don't know of any of you who have, but, you know, the First Ward is absolutely atrocious down there downtown, and this, in this specific district, is, it is, there is no additional benefit for those members paying into the Sid. It's a, it's a travesty, as usual. My vote is no.
Council President?
Thank you.
We're voting.
We're in, Councilwoman Mims, we're voting on item number 11, that's the budget for the Sid.
Yes, and so, I hate I wasn't here, I could have seconded it second, and I don't know if it's too late to second it, but I do, I want to put it on record, and I've said it before, I commend the work of Director Cruz and the, the Sid, and, and the group, can't think of the name, that you have brought in, CDS, that you have brought in. I saw it used in Newark and other towns, and then the best model was brought to Patterson, which I thought was a great idea, and I see them tirelessly down there every morning. It's a collaborative effort with yourself, the administration, and DPW, and no matter what they do every morning, at night, because I drive through downtown, I see the vagrants, the homeless, the addicts, I see them ripping that garbage open, I see them building tents, making, putting mattresses, every single night. When we leave here tonight, give it till 12, and you'll witness it for yourself, but it's not because of the lack of work that you guys are doing, because you've done a great job of collaborating that effort to ensure that the downtown area has a good quality of life. There just needs to be a plan from the administration in relation to, how do we exit these people that are coming into our community for these different treatment programs? How do we get them back to their various residencies? And those individuals that are from Patterson, that we keep, we provide programs or resources to get them on the, the straight and narrow track. We understand and know that if people are not ready, then they're not going to rehabilitate at the time. But there has to be some level of plan of exit, some level of plan of cleanup, some level of providing resources, and something for them to do, because once you remove someone from something, they have to be pointed to something, if not, they're going back, because they have marked the territory, and so we need to put that in place. But that has nothing to do with your work, Director Cruz, I would always vote in favor of the great work that you're doing, and my vote is absolutely yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Madam President? The vote is six in favor, one against, two absent. Item number 11 is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much.
Senator, just quick, the Director's leaving, and, and I need to clarify this statement from Councilman Patterson.
No, no, no.
It's just simple, it's simple. Allow me just two seconds.
Councilman Velez?
Councilman Jackson alluded that I disrespect him about requesting something to the Sid Director, and if he recall.
So, Councilman Velez, when, when, when we close, I'd like you to make that statement, but right now, only because there's quite a few, and there's no debate here, right?
No, 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 there's no debate, there's no debate.
You guys go speak after the meeting, one-on-one.
Yeah. No, he did it in public, I can't have a one-on-one.
No, 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 I'll allow you to speak, I'll allow you to speak.
I did?
Yes. Okay? Thank you very much. Madam Clerk?
I apologize, can you, you should allow that, because he feels as if I said something I think he took out of context. I never said anything about him disrespecting, I said I was curious about what location he was inquiring about in the First Ward. I don't want this to leave with, with anybody having the wrong impression, you know.
Okay, that is duly noted, Councilman Jackson, all right, so.
Okay, thank you. And, and, and once again, Councilman Jackson, and that's the part I want to clarify, in the two workshop, and you was one, you was in here when we were discussing with the Director, you was out, and recall that we want to table this because you was in here.
Right, right, right.
Okay? Until you make your input, and what's the needs of the First Ward. And the conversation that I had with the Director that day was simple. Director, I want you to, if possible, to look into, to extend the Sid, the Sid to Slater Street, because there was some business commercial that they could get benefit of the cleaning and all that stuff. And the other item was the Washington Market back here, that they needed to power-watch, and the individual told me, can you tell them the Sid to come and put that in their plan? So, you know, it's not things that to make you ignoring the situation, but I'm there for you, and just remember, I could be the Fifth Ward Councilman, but I, I live in the First Ward, because I come to this office almost every day.
Thank you, Councilman Jackson, we know you love the First, and we know you love yourself some MJ, right?
Yeah, correct.
Okay, thank you, thank you, thank you. So, councilmembers, it is my understanding, and Madam BA, item number 12, so I want you to read it into the record, Madam Clerk.
Yes, ma'am. Next item is item number 12, resolution to amend the calendar year 2021 municipal budget, which has been approved but not yet adopted, Finance Resolution 21371.
The transitional aid, we now have, Madam BA, if you could just quickly, before you move in second, Madam BA, can you explain what that is?
Sure, thank you, Council President. Yes, this year, we actually have some supplemental transitional aid, it's additional money that's coming to us from the Department of Community Affairs, which was earmarked for certain purposes. It's not necessary for us to include that in our regular general operating budget, but under direction of local government services, we do have to amend our budget to include it into the overall total. It's not something like a grant, which could have come in after the fact, after the budget was adopted through a Chapter 159.
Council President?
Okay, thank you very much, Madam BA, for that clarification, Councilman Velez, wait, 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 we cannot, we cannot discuss this, so I need a move, a second, then a discussion?
Move.
Second.
Okay, move by Councilman?
Velez.
No, no, you did read it into the record, right?
I did, I read it.
Move by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Cotton, discussion by Councilman Velez.
Council President, if I may, our CFO has to read the entire resolution into the record.
Okay.
He had to read from page one to page two, it's required.
Okay.
And if, I'm sorry, Council President, if I could just?
Cooperation, I mean, sorry, Madam BA.
That's okay. One, one additional thing, that was the reason for the amendment, the main reason, and then while we were at it, any grants that had come in up to this point are being added at this time, and not being added as Chapter 159's later, since we have to amend it anyway. So, that's why you'll also see some grants as the CFO reads it. Thank you.
Just a quick question, Council President?
I got the floor, you better go to the question.
Well, one second, I believe that Madam Clerk said he first must read it into the record?
Correct.
And then you'll be the first person to have the discussion.
Yeah, thank, thank you.
Okay? And then, Councilwoman Mims?
Thank you.
Mr. CFO?
General revenues, miscellaneous revenues, section B, state aid without offsetting appropriations, additional state aid from zero to $4,667,000. Total for section B, state aid without offset appropriation, from $53,789,636.25 to $58,456,636.25. Miscellaneous revenues, section F, special items of revenues anticipated without prior consent of Director of Local Government Services, public and private revenues offset without appropriations, community program to improve minority health grant from zero to $4 million. HIV counseling and testing grant from $60,850 to $121,700. Childhood lead poisoning control grant from $676,522.10 to $583,652,652. Body worn camera grant program from zero to $796,858. Patterson-Grease Falls Hinchcliffe Bike-Ped Connection Phase One Project from zero to Green Schoolyard Program from zero to $20,000. Total, section S, special items of revenue anticipated with prior consent, Director of Local Government Services, public and private revenues offset without appropriation, from Total general revenues from $257,888,236.20 to $268,160.38. General appropriations, A, operations within caps, social services from $202,102 to $502,102. Total operation within caps, $214,687,233.84 to $214,987,233.84. A, operations excluded from caps, public and private, public and private programs offset by revenues, community programs to improve minority health grant from zero to $4 million. HIV counseling and testing grant from $60,850 to $121,700. Childhood lead poisoning control grant from $676,522.10 to $583,652. Body worn camera grant program from zero to $796,858. Patterson-Grease Falls Hinchcliffe Bike-Ped Connection Phase One Project from zero to $820,000. Green Schoolyard Program from zero to $20,000. Total of public and private, private programs offset by revenues from $13,831,148.20 to General appropriations, C, capital improvements, additional transitional aid for capital improvements from zero to $4,367,000. Total capital improvements from $400 to $4,767,000. Total general appropriations, $257,888,236.20 to $268,160.38.
Council President?
I'm sorry, Mr. President, if I may, Councilman, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
President? Can you repeat total, I think I missed something there. Total general revenues, was that $257,000?
Eight, 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 236.
Okay. One other question that I have, I'm not sure, maybe it falls in a different category. First page, miscellaneous revenue, where you have Patterson-Grease Falls Hinchcliffe, for the 820, and on the second page, total operation within caps, and Grease Falls is listed there, that's fine?
Yes, they're, that's the part of grants, and the social services part of, a total up top.
All right, thank you so much, appreciate it.
Councilman Velez?
Council, thank you, Council President. So, in other words, I look at the appropriation on it, okay? So, the appropriation, $268,160,338.26. In other words, we add in here all the grants that we receive to this budget, correct?
Correct. All the grants and the state aid, the additional state aid.
State aid, now, where is the $63 million that we receive from the president of this great nation, United States? Where is the, where is the money? We, last week in the meeting, they say we received half of it. Where is it? Last week, we requested a plan. Where is the plan? Meanwhile, we have residents asking us what we could do with this money, what we doing with this, and what we going to do and move forward. We don't see it here. And then we, and, and, and beside that, we don't see a plan.
Councilman?
And, 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 let me just, to wrap up.
No, just for clarification, I received an email from the Mayor's Office, they started to have meeting with us to present their plan for the $63 million. I know I have a meeting with the, with the Mayor and the BA.
Okay, to see what is our wish list, that's the meeting. Come on, let's be clear. That, don't, 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 don't interact.
Well, I'm not gonna predict, or, I mean, let's have the meeting with them, and see what comes out of it.
What, 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 what transpired in the meeting was?
You might know more than me.
Yeah, what transpired in the, in the conversation that I had, we want to have a conversation of a plan, what your wish list, what you want, what would you want us to do with that money? We all know that that money has instructions, has some rules of spending, all right? So, I don't want to miscommunicate the community regarding the $63 million that we receive or $68, but we need to see a plan. The Board of Education received 126, I believe, 112 million? As soon as they receive it, they already had a lineup plan.
Councilman, this resolution has nothing to do with the $63 million. Let's stick to the resolution.
So, okay, so, Council, you the finance here, correct?
No, I'm not the finance here.
Where's the finance here?
He's, he's not here.
Okay, so, my question was directly, I, I, I don't know, say if I could, could, could clarify that, what do we present in waste, sorry, spending? And what would we present in our taxpayers? This new appropriation, so, because I increase?
It increased by the additional state aid and by the grants, so it's offsetted. There's no increase to the tax rate.
So, how much was the state aid increase?
$4,667,000.
So, what happened with the $22 million, or something like that, that we received?
We received $20 million, $20,400,000, this is additional on top of that.
Where is it reflected?
It's in the budget, so this is just amending the $4 million that we got.
But we received the letter of award, and we received the notification of DCA, but we mean, saw it and vote on any, into today, but so, where is it?
In the budget. In the budget, you introduced.
A general budget?
Yes.
Okay, got you, all right. You're welcome, thank you, Council President.
Councilwoman Mims?
Just a quick question, Madam Clerk, does this, because we're increasing the line item, does this require six votes or five?
Five.
Five votes, okay.
If required, five. Roll call, Madam Clerk. President? Okay, Councilwoman Cotton?
I just want to ask a question.
Mike?
To the, to the BA, you know, we, we received a letter from the state about if we don't adopt the budget by July 30th, what happens?
We take another question?
Council President, thank you. The, the letter from the state was regarding our MOU in particular, and that's so that they can distribute the transitional aid, and because that was, that's part of their schedule, and if it doesn't come to us, by then it reverts back to the Treasury.
So, they want us to sign the MOU and not adopt the budget?
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Cotton, are you talking about the other item, because we right now?
Oh, the MOU? No, no, I'm asking her, we're amending the budget, we're amending, you're not adopting it, but we amended it, but I.
Well, to add, to act, is now we have the letter, now we have.
Yeah, we got a letter saying July 30th, that's what I'm trying to find out what happens if we don't adopt by July 30th.
Sure, there, there are two different things, the MOU has to be passed first, so that we Sure, there, there are two different things, the MOU has to be passed first so that we can, they can go ahead mechanically and distribute the funds. Um, and then the budget can be adopted, it will be on the special meeting agenda on August fourth.
Thank you very much, roll call, Madam Clerk? I'm sorry, Councilman Cleek and then Madam Clerk, roll call.
Uh, I heard something, uh, on the, on the amendment, that there were eight hundred thousand dollars for Hinchcliffe, uh, project, grant money?
Yes.
What is that about?
That was, um, the, a project that we applied for, for, from DOT, and it was to make pedestrian, um, kind of safer pedestrian pathways in conjunction with the county around, um, kind of the whole footprint of the Great Falls, so including, you know, kind of building on what they're doing on the Wayne Avenue Bridge, we'll be doing it around, um, you know, kind of both other sides.
Is the falls then, not the stadium?
Right, it, it kind of wraps, it wraps around the whole footprint, so going up.
I mean, if it is for the stadium, we give a, what, fifty million dollar tax credit or something?
Right, it's not.
How mu- how much more?
It's on the streets and the sidewalks, it's not on the stadium.
Okay, yeah, thank you.
Good question, Councilman Cleek, roll call, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, yes, Madam President, roll call and item number twelve on the amendment.
How many votes?
Councilwoman, five, Councilwoman Cotton? Five, five votes.
You call me, uh, Madam Clerk?
I'm sorry, I'm telling, I'm sorry, Councilman Velez, um, Madam President, he was asking how many votes it required, just five is required. Thank you.
Roll call.
Yes, Councilwoman Cotton, it's your turn to vote.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Okay, Councilman Jackson?
Was extremely disturbing is how we took the thirty-one million dollars and put it into the general budget. I thought this, and, and, and Council President, you, you rested along before I can, um, ask a question, but there's some guidelines that, that have been set forward that should have followed this, there's tons of community groups that were looking for, um, some relief, especially after COVID, we talked about various things, giving businesses some release, relief, just the places in the, in the general budget, so, so they have just more money to spend is totally, totally irresponsible. My vote is no.
Thank you, Councilman Cleek.
So this, this amendment has nothing to do with that, uh, I believe the thirty-one million we received from, uh.
ARA, the American Recovery Act.
Okay, you just adding the four million dollar grant money and, and other stuff on that amendment?
Correct.
Okay, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Mims?
So, while, so this, this item is that we're receiving four million dollars. The concern for me is that we're receiving it and we've already allocated it. That, that's a concern. And I'm not sure if, if my math is wrong or not, but it's four million, but when I do the calculations, it's about two point two million three hundred and forty-two thousand two hundred and ten of it has already been allocated with whatever the remaining balance is. Some of these items, they've already been, um, spoken that we're gonna do this, we're gonna do this, we're gonna do that, and that's a concern that after the fact, it comes to the council, um, and I think there needs to always be a discussion. Uh, while I'm grateful for funds coming in, I, I just, and I know we're not talking about the, the, uh, American Rescue Plan, but we definitely need to make sure that we have those discussions because if not, we'll be in the same situation as tonight. So I'm not gonna, um, be, uh, the person in the position not to accept the four million dollars because we, um, need it as a community, but I definitely, um, think there needs to be a more robust discussion or a outline of a plan on other opportunities within the city of Patterson. My vote is yes.
Thank you, Councilman Velez.
For now, uh, I see that we doing this appropriation, or to a general appropriation, having an increase of what we receiving to put in in different departments, but it's interested to find out what was the rules and regulation when those sixty-three million comes in? Are they supposed to go to general budget or they supposed to put a separate line item in the budget to manage those sixty-three million dollars? Not just dump it in the general budget and say, okay, we could spend it whatever we want because it's in the general budget? So if there was some rules set to create a ni- a different line item to reflect that that money is being spent wisely, I will be feel more comfortable. Uh, but for now, on this one, I, I gotta vote yes.
Thank you, Councilman Abdaliziv, we are voting in the amendment of the budget and number twelve, your vote is yes? Thank you, Madam President.
Sometimes I wonder if I'm sitting in the same room with, with, and we, we're all hearing the same thing. I know there's been some discussions and it is my understanding that the Chief of Staff has reached out to every council member to have the discussion about the ARA, the American Recovery Act monies. I don't know how many people here have said yes and already sat down. I know Councilwoman Mims, you have been talking about this for quite some time, and there's a few of us that have been saying, what are we doing? I understand that those monies, no, they just cannot just be put there and you can do whatever you want. There is, I believe, a letter that's coming with that monies to say what you can and what you cannot do, am I correct? Okay, so, and it's my understanding also that some of these monies that already came, these additional monies, were earmarked, so they were specific to, you're get, you're getting this additional money, but it's specific to X, Y, and Z. So when we talk about expending, that it's already expended, right? They're earmarked specific to certain projects. That is correct, Councilman Cleek, my VP, it was, it was over a month ago. So, council members, you know, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna vote yes on this, okay? Um, I wanna thank my colleagues who, who, um, who have voted, you know, in the affirmative, uh, to amend this budget that has these monies that are important to go into our, um, our budget. So, I'll leave it at that, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you, the vote is six in favor, one against, two absent. Item number twelve, hereby adopted on the amendment.
Thank you very much, so Madam.
I'm sorry, no, I'm not finished, Council President, I'm sorry, I have to make another announcement.
I, I'm sorry, yes, Madam Clerk.
The public hearing and the adoption of the amended budget will be held at a special meeting of Wednesday, August fourth, twenty twenty-one at eight P M. And if, I'm just placing this in the record, this amended budget will be published in the Herald News on July twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-one, so that the public can have access to it. Thank you, Madam President.
Council President, uh, point, uh, point, uh, point, uh, hold a minute.
Councilman Velez?
Yes, uh, it's not, just to clarify, Madam, Madam Clerk, the res- the resolutions to read to amend the C Y twenty twenty-one budget, which has been not approved, but not yet, have, have been approved but not yet adopted.
Adopted, yes.
Correct. Uh, let the record reflect that has not been adopted, have been approved but had not been adopted.
Yeah, but I, um, I made the announcement to say that there'll be a public hearing on the fourth, and then we will adopt the amended budget at that day.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk, I'm gonna take item thirty-nine.
Thirty-nine, sure. Next item is item number thirty-nine, Resolution Acknowledging Contents and Effects of Memorandum of Understanding Between the State of New Jersey and the City of Patterson for Transitional Aid in Calendar Year Twenty Twenty-One, Including Any Applicable Supplements, Administration Resolution Twenty-One Three Nine Eight.
So moved.
Move by Councilwoman Mims, do you have a second? Second by Councilwoman Cotton.
Highlights.
Madam B A. Councilman Velez has asked for the highlights, I will take you, council members. When you look at item thirty-nine, I asked Madam B A to, to make sure that everyone got a copy over the weekend and also emailed. It is my understanding that there is a, um, an action that we must take, I believe it's by July, can you clarify?
Sure, thank you, Council President, yes. Um, so, this year, this MOU covers both the transition year, that already happened, the six months, the end of twenty twenty, through all of calendar year twenty twenty-one. Um, they, this needs to be passed by the end of this month in order for us to actually receive the twenty-four point seven million dollars of transitional aid, both regular and supplemental that we're getting. Each year, the main body of the MOU remains the same and is consistent across transitional aid communities. That details just the procedures that we follow. What is of particular note begins really on page twenty-two, and this is the part that cha- changes, things are added on, things are taken off on any given year. Um, so, this, and this was what's particular to the city of Patterson. So you'll see some details in, number one goes through a lot of the expectations that were set around the calendar year reversion. Um, the, the rarely positive item of note you could see is under one B, that in part because of what we did, that we are allowed to use some of that money for account, for, some of the fund balance that we're going to, um, realize can be used for a capital project, um, separate and apart again from, um, kind of bond ordinances and the like. But it is the setting up reserve policies so that we have accumulated absences reserved, which is essentially the payouts that we pay out to, to police and fire and even other retirees who, um, have accumulated vacation time, et cetera. Everything else is pretty standard, number three is the council received that in letter form from the director when we were discussing the sewer. It's exactly the same language that was in, um, the letter from Director Suarez. Um, and a lot of the other items are similar to what have, what appears in the past and, um, what we've been doing. The last item on page twenty-four, you'll note that, um, they detailed the, the let, the tax levy for both transition year and for calendar year, and this is where they have approved the request of the administration, the council, to keep it at a, a flat tax levy for the calendar year twenty twenty-one. And again, because of the action that the council took to approve the change, the calendar year reversion, that's why they were, they were able to step forward and say, yes, you're creating these reserves, you took this great, this very strong fiscal action. Um, for this year, it can remain that, kind of that flat, that's not a two percent tax increase, it's the same tax levy that we did in transition year.
Council President.
Thank you very much, Madam B A, Councilman Velez.
So, Madam, Mad, I, I was going over some, some of them here. E- Every year, the MOU is different, right? And sometimes you see things that are conducted or apply during the year, and they don't even look at the MOU to continue to get the council approval on it. For example, number H on page number eight, restriction longevity pay, overtime, salary increases, promotion and transfers. I gotta take number one, for example, elimination of ordinance allowing for future increases in longevity pay or other forms of increases for electoral officials and non-contractual employees. But still, yeah, the administration come and say, let's raise the salary. You understand what I'm saying? So, let's raise the salary for this director, let's raise the salary for this and this and that, because we have an ordinance to establish, let's say we could salary increase that. But yet, the MOU say to eliminate those type of ordinance that allow this administration to move forward or to abuse um, the, the, the MOU.
Councilman, what, what section are you discussing?
Oh, I think you was following me, I'll have to repeat again.
I, I mean, are you talking about the?
That's the problem we have.
Are you talking about the hiring?
Councilman Velez, Councilman Velez, I was following you, you said, you said page eight, but I didn't know what section you were.
Section, section H.
Okay, no, 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 you said page eight. You said page eight and it's three, four, so I don't see an H though.
Page eight, with say H, letter H, like Harry.
No, no, I understand, but I don't see H, I mean, I'm looking at page eight.
I'm looking at page eight. H, close camera, please.
All right.
H.
I'm sorry, I'm looking.
Number one.
Are, are you looking at the resolution or are you looking at the actual MOU?
Memorandum of Understanding here. That they put in a hundred pages here, not a hundred, well, let me tell you how many pages they put here. I'm looking at the actual resolution, it's in the front and behind is a memorandum of understanding.
I got it, and you know what it is in my tablet, it's page nine. So I'm, I'm looking, okay, so now I see H restrictions on longevity pay, overtime, salary increases, promotions and transfers.
Correct.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, that, that's consistent, that has been there for numerous years.
It's consistent, it's happy there, but, but then you come next week and say you want to increase salaries and not contract your employees.
That's, I think what that, that section in particular discusses longevity pay, which has.
So only applying longevity pay?
That first section in particular.
We no longer do.
I know, but still, it was only for longevity pay only, it say all other. So it says all other forms increases for electoral official and not contractual employees. So if it was only dedicated to longevity, they should put it in a different part.
So Councilman, with this one specific, you know, this, this goes back to, uh, Councilman Morris and McCoy when this was a recommendation, so this is, this is just consents, consistent with at least the seven years that I've been here, I can, I can say that, so that one, and, and H, that one, that one was specific to, to.
I, I got a question for you, Council President, and I will ask this to the Madam B A. Do you, do you enjoy, or any employee from the administration have medical insurance from the city of Patterson?
Full-time employees do have medical insurance, have the option for medical insurance.
So you do have medical insurance and, and, and get the benefit from the city of medical family and medical insurance, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so, even that my title is part-time, but I consider myself twenty-four seven in this city, and I don't have medical insurance.
Councilman.
So, so this is the comparison I have. The administration had the luxury to use the, the taxpayers to get full benefit for all the, for the older families, and still we, that get the beat from the, uh, from the community, we cannot even go to the hospital because the administration locked us out with MOU saying that we cannot enjoy those benefits.
So Councilman, Councilman, um, I, I think that, you know, we, we need to, to visit certain things, let us not make it, um, you know, an individual personal thing, but I do agree, no, no, I agree with what you're saying, so please.
Council President.
But, um, let us have a further discussion in, in, in a, in. Finance.
Council President.
Councilman Abdaliziv, Councilwoman Cotton.
Thank you, Madam B A, I'm not gonna debate, I'm not gonna risk twenty-plus million dollars for health benefits for council members. But on page twenty-four, to my council colleagues, as always, to the, to residents of the city of Patterson, to my constituents, what most important with me is the, the, the taxpayers and what they have to pay, in number twelve, I, I know every year we say, and I think this is something I, I probably want to see in every year, the tax levy, and, and it reads, "The final TY twenty twenty tax levy shall be no less than two percent higher than the FY twenty twenty municipal tax levy in order to remain eligible for CY twenty twenty-one transitional aid unless a sufficient sustainable cost reduction and/or revenue generation plan is developed by the council and administration." That's new language, because every year they used to tell us we had to raise it two percent, here they're saying it could remain flat and we could possibly decrease it with their approval, is that?
That's, that's no. Yeah, that's, that's actually exactly what she said.
Okay, so, I, I hope.
And that in part was a conversation as Council President and the Finance Chairman, when they, a year and a half ago, when we went down to, to DCA, that was part of the conversation, they're saying, you know, yes, it is two percent, but in, in the reality of the world, if there's a way to create other sustainable revenue generation that could start filling the gaps that are, that when we reduce our transitional aid every year, then that is possible, that is in the realm of the possible, and they wanted to make sure they include that.
This is, this is very good, this is a step, this is a step in the right direction. I just want to put on the record, I hope this language stays in these MOUs and does, doesn't show up on. show up on mayor, mayor election years and council at large election years where you could give a flat levy.
Excuse you.
Uh, but when, when the six, the ward council people, we get the language that we always have to raise taxes by 2%.
Well, that's, that's exciting, especially as we're having these cannabis conversations.
Watch it, Council.
So, Council, Councilman Abdulaziz, if I may, if I, if I may say, you know, this was almost two years ago that we went to DCA and started this discussion.
And as Madam BA stated, if there's, they said if there's revenue with the cannabis thing, I've always thought, we always had to raise the levy. We may not even have to raise the levy if the, if we have a revenue stream coming in that there's, so this is, this is something that's good now that we're not handcuffed like we were years ago. So, to whoever went down the train, thank you. Continue advocating for taxpayers, 'cause when we go to them, they don't wanna hear that, oh, well, the state told us we have to raise it. So, thank you, Council President. Thank you for advocating for us.
Councilman Abdulaziz, the best thing you've said all night, you've said great things, but the, the last comment, let me just say, it's all about relationships, all right? And having been able to go and be in front of DCA and have these conversations were really important, we're seeing somewhat fruition right now. But I am gonna say this, we gotta continue that conversation with DCA. And, you know, I had a conversation today where I got a call from Lieutenant Governor, and we had various discussions, and I'm happy that we were able to have the discussion that we had, because I said, I don't ever want you to think that I'm disrespecting the office, the office that she leads, you know, through her director and DCA, but as Madam Clerk, Madam BA knows, when she mentions to me DCA, I kinda like cringe, because we tell DCA, there are fiscal monitors, but we, they should not be being the ones running the city, they can advise. And after today's conversation that I, I let the Lieutenant Governor know that by any means was I being confrontational in terms of disrespecting the office, but I felt as the council that we needed to move forward with a, a certain action, and she, believe it or not, she actually agreed, spoke to the Director of DCA, and I'm just happy that we were able to move forward. So, let us continue having those conversations, all right? And, you know, I, I know Councilwoman Khan has asked for the floor, so just quickly make your statement, and Madam Clerk, then I'd like to go for roll call.
Thank you, Council President. Um, I just wanna say to the BA, um, I know we changed from, we changed from fiscal year to calendar year, so within a year and a half, how much money would you have said we gotten from, um, DCA? From the six months that we used and then now for the whole year that we're going? Is it 40 million?
No, um, there's a slightly different here. The transitional aid is still the same for the 18 months, it's the 20 million, 21 million or so, plus the supplemental. But there is that other state aid that we get, that's the Comtra aid. So, we had two infusions of that over the 18 months, so that was 20 million in the fall of 2020, and that'll be 20 million again later this year. So, overall, over the 18 months, including transitional aid and Comtra, it's about 60 million.
Wow.
Yeah.
Changing from fiscal year to calendar year, it kinda like helped us.
Well, especially, exactly.
To me, it, it, I mean, I want TV to understand, um, changing from a fiscal year to a calendar year, it really helped us of, of getting more money, and, and like I, and like, you know, we said, it's about relationship, and you have to develop a working relationship in order to, um, get that. But, but with that being said, and I, and I try to tell colleagues, uh, in 2011, um, council members were having health benefits in 2011. Uh, it was changed by Governor Christie in 2012.
Yeah.
Anybody elected in 2012 and going forward, everything was cut off from council members. Had nothing to do with the city.
That's correct, Councilwoman.
Had nothing to do with the city. The city did not, they really wanted to keep the medical for some of these, uh, elected officials, but the law said no. With chapter 78, it excluded us all from medical benefits, and I'm saying to elected people who wants to run for office, if you win, you will not have medical benefits.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman Khan. And Madam Clerk, roll call, please, on item 39 for approval.
Yes, Madam President. Roll call on item number 39 for approval, Councilman Abdulaziz.
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Yeah, thank you. Councilwoman Khan?
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Councilman Abdulaziz, I, I hope this tax levy thing is not for this year only, because this is the election year. I hope you are correct. My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Mee?
So, um, before I vote, I wanna say to the community at large, you know, I'm always here to the very end, but tonight, I don't wanna miss my relationship with my son. I gotta pick him up, and he's been waiting for me, so after I vote, I have to leave, but I just wanna put it on record that I have to pick up my son, who's been waiting for me, um, and there will still be a quorum here, um, after I leave. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. Councilman Velez?
I'm happy to see when people throw jab in the ring and they just step out and leave when somebody goes speak. And that's, that's the way that my colleague is all the time. He made his speech, make his vote, walk away, but he don't pay attention what is the comparison, what I'm trying to say. What I'm trying to say is that the administration had the luxury, okay, to get all the benefit from the state, okay? And they deliver less. Meanwhile, we are on this side, we answer more calls, we out there with constituents, et cetera, et cetera, and comparing, we not a tax burden. My colleague at the end, yeah, it's a tax burden, because he put $25,000 to get aid into his, to his work. And plus in that, to get a job in county everywhere he wants, so he don't worry about 150,000 he get that he could maintain insurance for himself. So, if he gonna throw jab at me, you better not go too personal, because I know your history. I'm trying, and, and let me tell you something, I'm not-
Councilman.
That's why I'm in divided vote, I'm, I'm independent voice, okay? But if you gonna throw jabs to say that you don't care about medical insurance for your colleagues, so if I'm walking around in the City of Patterson, they gonna stab me, you gonna turn your face away and not back me up, at least calling the cops. That's a coward, Councilman. I said I'm gonna take it easy, but it's a little bit offensive what he said.
Your vote, Councilman?
Of course, we had to vote on this, as I was responsible to make sure that the MOU is finalized and we can move forward with this requirement of the state monitor and the state. But yes, I go page by page, I make what is fair is not fair for the City of Patterson. So, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Madam President?
I wanna thank my colleagues, specifically the ones that are sitting here, and still, I know that it's midnight, we had a tough day today. I mean, I thought we were right on role in terms of our agenda, uh, but, you know, we do have to have certain discussions, all right? Uh, so I wanna thank you, um, to, before I vote, to Councilman Velez, um, I'm gonna say this, as a legislative body, and Councilwoman Khan was correct, that action was taken by previous governor. We have a new governor, and there's things that are we do, that we're doing that finally we have been abiding by our MOU for the past few years. We, the body, can decide what we wanna bring back and whatnot. So, let us not care what other, and maybe, let me take that back, not care, but I think that everyone has the right to their opinion, and everyone has the right to speak, but I always talk about, you have an opinion, but facts are facts, and there's things as a council that we can do. So, with that said, my vote is yes for item 39 for approval.
Thank you. The vote is seven in favor, two absent, item number 39 is hereby adopted.
Thank you very much. So, council members, I, we have first reading ordinance, we, I believe we have four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, and they're first reading, so we can just quickly, I, we, these have been vetted through committee and everything, so we can, Madam Clerk, I want us to-
Roll through.
Roll, roll, roll it out.
Next item is item number four for first reading, no public hearing is required. Ordinance designated List Street between North Seventh and Berham Avenue as a one-way street southeastbound Department of Public Works.
Move.
Second.
Move by Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Okay, second by Councilman Kalik. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number four for first reading.
Roll call on item number four for first reading, Councilwoman Khan? Four, yes, for first reading.
Yes.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor, four absent, item number four is hereby adopted and first reading. Second reading will be held at the next regular meeting, August 17, 2021, at 7:00 p.m.
Council President, who's the chair of Public Works?
Number five.
I mean, uh, Public Works.
DPW.
DPW.
Chair.
So, um, just a note of clarity, point of clarity, Councilman, uh, did you finish calling the vote, Madam Clerk?
Yes, I did, I did.
Um, I requested this quite some time ago, and it was also, should have been partnered with Carbon.
Yeah.
Because we can't, you know, we weren't making one.
Carbon is number six.
Carbon is, carbon is-
Carbon is number six.
Yeah, number six, yeah.
Okay?
Madam Clerk? Number five?
Continue.
Next item is item number five for first reading, no public hearing is required, an ordinance designated Mercer Street between Lawrence Street and Fulton Street as a one-way street southbound Department of Public Works.
So, move.
Move by Councilman Velez, second by Councilman Kalik. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number five for approval.
Roll call on item number five for first reading, Councilwoman Khan? Uh, what number now, Madam Clerk, I'm sorry? Number five, number five.
Uh, yes.
Jesus Christ.
Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Velez? Madam President?
Yes.
Yes.
The vote is five in favor, four absent, item number five is hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading will be held at the next regular meeting of August 17, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. Number six?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Next item is item number six for first reading, no public hearing is required, an ordinance designated Carbon Street between North Seventh Street and Berham Avenue as a one-way street northwestbound Department of Public Works.
So, move.
Second.
Move by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Khan, roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number seven for first reading.
Roll call on item number six for first reading, Councilwoman Khan? Yes. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor, four absent, item number six is hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading will be held at the next regular meeting of August 17, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. Number seven?
Yes, Madam Clerk.
Next item is item number seven, an ordinance designated Dover Street between 28th Avenue and Cedar Street.
No, we just did item seven.
It was six, it was six.
We did six.
No, you said seven, and I just, I didn't, I just went ahead and said six. I didn't correct you.
No, we just did seven, didn't we just do Dover?
No.
No.
I recall you said seven, but I knew it was number six.
Okay.
So, I did said six.
Okay.
I'm sorry, it's a long night. Okay, item number seven, an ordinance designated Dover Street between 28th Avenue and Cedar Street as a one-way street northbound Department of Public Works.
So, move.
Move by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Khan, and roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number seven for first reading.
Roll call on item number seven for first reading, Councilwoman Khan? Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor, four absent, item number seven is hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading will be held at the next regular meeting, August 17, 2021, at 7:00 p.m. Number eight?
Number eight, Madam Clerk.
Next item is item number eight for first reading, no public hearing is required, an ordinance designated East 36th Street between 18th Avenue and 19th Avenue as a one-way street northbound Department of Public Works.
So, move.
Move by Councilman Velez. Do you have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Kalik. Roll call, Madam Clerk, on item number eight for approval.
Roll call on item number eight for first reading, Councilwoman Khan? Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Yes.
Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor, four absent, item number eight is hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading will be held at the next regular meeting, August 17, 2021.
Last item, Madam Clerk?
Next item is item number nine, and item number nine is, um, ordinance, item number nine for first reading, no public hearing is required. Ordinance establishing handicap parking spaces at various locations on city roads, um, Department of Public Works, and the roads are 21 Auburn Street, 151 Carlisle Avenue, 96 Harrison Street, 206 Liberty Street, 466 Park Avenue, 4, 410 Paxton Street, 57 Sassafer Street, 542 River Street, 143 Walnut Street, 45 Wayne Avenue, 34 East 28th Street, 330 East 33rd Street, 88 North Third Street, and 173 North 9th Street. May I have a motion?
Move.
Move by Councilman Velez, second by Councilwoman Khan, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Roll call on item number nine for first reading, Councilwoman Khan?
Thank you, Madam Clerk, um, for the BA, um, there's a whole lot of handicap that's missing, um, this is nothing compared to what's out there, so please look into that. My vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilman Jackson?
Yes.
Councilman Kalik?
Yes.
Councilman Velez?
Just wanna aware the community that, um, the handicap established in the City of Patterson have three processes. One is a doctor certification, motor vehicle approval, motor vehicle honor, the handicap plate. We just comply with the requirement of facilitating that handicap space in the public street in the City of Patterson. So, seeing this, uh, my vote is yes. I requested to the director, not director, the Traffic Division Supervisor to, uh, submit the ones that are, um, repealed. So, there's a bunch of them, and, um, and I just wanna let the community know that we are following the law to establish handicap, but at the same time, we are watching who abusing them and who are not entitled to have them to repeal it. So, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Madam President?
Yes.
The vote is five in favor, four absent, item number nine is hereby adopted on first reading. Second reading will be held at the next regular meeting, August 17, 2021, at 7:00 p.m.
Move to close?
Move to close.
Move to close by Councilwoman Khan, second by Councilman Velez. Roll call, Madam Clerk, to close the regular meeting of Wednesday, July 21st.
Yes, Madam President. Roll call to close the regular meeting, Councilwoman Khan?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I just have two announcements, um, I just want everyone to know that the County of Passaic is still giving out COVID relief money. Um, I just saw that they gave out 2 million, so please, please, um, if you're behind on your rent, uh, you or your landlord, please go to Passaic County COVID-19 rental relief, you can go on their website and you'll be able to put in. Also, I would, just wanna remind, um, my council, my community out there, I'm, I'm turning Barbara Park into, along with Harson Hanna and Patterson Cares, uh, into a miniature golf course for two days. It's gonna be at Barbara Park. I think it's gonna be an awful lot of fun. No matter, when I went on vacation with my family, we always played miniature golf, no matter where we went, so for, um, if you wanna give a donation or anything, you can reach me or contact me here at the office, and you'll be able to call me. Also, I have some fishing passes for fishing people out there. You have to have a fishing license, but if you ever had the opportunity to go to Point View Reservoir, which they have some really good fish, um, if you're a fishing person, View Reservoir, which they have some really good fish, if you're a fishing person, please contact me here at City Hall, but I have some passes. In order to get on the reservoir, you got to have a pass, so please, if you want to go fishing, please do. I just want to say to you all out there, TV land, tomorrow also, we're having a community event with community policing. We're going to have services out there. The streets going to be blocked off from 12th Ave. to, to, to Fair Street. They're going to block all three streets. We're going to have resource out there in the community to help people that, that are looking for help, whether it's rental assistance, whether it's mental illness, whether it's to get into a drug program. So if you can, come out tomorrow from 1:00 to 6:00, Rosa Parks Boulevard, between 12th Avenue and Fair Street. We have a three-block area that, that, that we are closing off. With that being said, please, National Night Out is coming up. What I want my community to do in the fourth ward, please reach out to me, or I will be reaching out to you all. We're trying to say, let us all come together and, and do one big National Night Out at Barbara Park, so please, I'm going to be reaching out to you by the end of this week about doing that. With that being said, Madam Clerk, I think I can't, I don't think I have anything else. I always have something, but I, I don't think I have anything tonight, but please, for those people who still have rental, they're paying up to 18 months of rent. That's a lot. So please, if you need help, please, you got to, you got to go and get it. With that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman, you derailed my, my plan. I was just going to vote yes and keep moving.
I railroaded.
But I have to say, where we at? What'd you say?
Where is he?
I have to say, I, I just want to say, I'm going to take one out of Councilwoman Cotton's book. So, council members, I don't know if you guys were part of the decision to consolidate. I know there's been talk, and I have spoken to Chief of Staff, but did you guys take part in this, in the decision to consolidate? Was that, were you?
Oh, no, I haven't, I haven't done that yet. I want to do it.
But you just talked about.
I'm doing something at Barbara Park, and I'm going to reach out to all my others.
So, so, I mean, and, and, you know, whoever needs to hear this shit, I mean, because you have to understand the community that you service. I, I mean, just in the first ward alone, and I know it's, it's identical in the fourth, but there's a group of people in the towers that was having issue with a group of people right on, on North Main. So now we talk about bringing these groups of people together, and these are the exact groups that's been having challenges.
No, no.
What's been talked about, Council, Councilwoman?
No, they can still do, they can still do theirs. They really can.
We're in the middle of voting to close.
The request has come through the administration to consolidate and possibly do one citywide and/or just do six for the ward, and/or just do, you know, that's, that's what was, what was said to me. I don't know if it was said to you any different.
No, that's, yeah.
But you have to understand the community and what you service, and that's a horrible idea. So I'm not, that's not, that wasn't so, to the community members who are being told by the administration to call you a councilperson, I mean, I support and sponsor, and, and come in as a subsponsor for a lot of these locations, but it's not, I'm not the one making the decision to consolidate. But with that being said, Madam Clerk, my vote is yes.
Thank you. Councilwoman Kalik?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. But, Councilwoman Jackson, I received an email a couple of days ago, that all the previous location are on the list, so we are not putting only six or, or seven out there throughout the city. Every person who did it previous year, their location, I sent their location on the list. I believe I received that email from our Chief of Staff. Are they, are they, they are going to be on the list, correct? They are not?
I'm just guessing.
But why the, I mean, I send it on the, on the list, on the, on that email. But anyway, we'll discuss it. I want to invite everyone, even my council colleague, to National Out in the second ward, on Edmund Avenue. We're going to have bouncy house, popcorn, cotton candy, music, and of course, food. We will have steaks as well. So everyone stop by. My vote is yes to close tonight.
Thank you. Councilwoman Velez? We're closing the meeting, Councilman Velez.
Oh.
Councilwoman Velez, we're closing.
Yes, it's, I was, I was going to refer to this, right? Yeah. Alright, so, National Night Out is going to be at the Roberto Clemente Park on August 3rd. I always do it since we are limited our police presence and all that stuff that is, you know, we're going to have one there. Whoever want to go to National Night Out at the Roberto Clemente Park, you could come and attend. We always have bouncy rides and all that good stuff for the community, August 3rd. Second, I just want to announce that finally, PCNG Utility are paving the fifth ward. Residents are asking why on one side of the road, and I got that answer. If the road was paved, paved in the three years before they break in, they could have paved it curb to curb. If not, they could only work on the side that they was working to install those new lines of gas and meters or whatever. So stay tuned for those signs on the poles. Make sure you move your car according to the signs on the pole. If you notice that they not came that day, and they don't came the next day, then they will post another sign saying they, when they going to come. But make sure you ignore those signs, especially the individuals that live in Park Avenue and that's getting paid from East 18 all the way down to Straight Street. I apologize, I got hated before regarding the insurance, insurance issue regarding the elected officials, but some people had to be in my shoes when it comes up to this situation. Thanks God that, God is over me, so and protect me to be here and work for my constituents all the way around. So Patterson, stay safe, keep on praying for each other, and let's move forward. My vote is yes, Council President.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Madam President?
So, I saw an email, and this, I'm addressing, well, I guess I would have to address the Chief of Staff, as she's been given the task to update, and I received an email from DASSL with the 2019 participants, and it was my understanding that the administration, due to lack of funds, security, that they would ask the council members to have one event in each ward. And I thought that we would have gotten an updated list, but the list that I received, I don't know if every council member here, is from 2019, which had all of the participants. So if that list has been finalized, then I'd like a copy in all council, but if it hasn't, then I can understand why we were given the 2019 list. So I guess you don't have to say much, Mrs., I'm, I'm voting right now, but I think, when do you think that we can?
We should have the list by Monday.
The list by Monday. Okay, very well. And hopefully, every council member has spoken to you and has at least stated their desire and what community agency they're working with, okay? To my colleagues, thank you very much. Today, the intention was to have a, a shorter meeting, as, you know, we all had discussions pertaining to the agenda, but I knew that, you know, having 30-plus speakers and having various items that needed further discussion. Before I close, I just want the administration, and I want to reiterate to the administration, to Corporation Council, you all heard here today what the desire of the council is. Granted, we know we're not going to get 100%, but I, I hope that we can move forward. I don't want to be behind the eight ball. I need this city to continue to grow, and I think that we can do it together, but do it right. So have a good morning, a good evening. We do not have a meeting till August 4th, so any business, right, Madam Clerk?
Yes, ma'am.
Any business that needs to be conducted, please reach out with any of your requests before our next meeting, so then the discussion will not be till after midnight. Thank you very much to the city of Patterson. Good night. My vote is yes, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. The vote is five in favor, four absent. The regular meeting of July 21st, 2021 is hereby adjourned. Good night, everyone. Thank you so very much.
We came out earlier, 12:00 midnight. That's a good, early in the morning.